Well, I've just gavelled us in and I welcome all of you to this court and ask at this time that you please rise for invocation. We have Bishop Edmund Carmody with us, Bishop Emeritus. And please remain standing after invocation for the Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America and to our Texas flag. Welcome, Bishop.
Lord, our God, we thank you for this day. We thank you for this beautiful season that we are experiencing in our life. Lord, we ask you to bless our county judge and the four commissioners who have served our county so faithfully, dedicated themselves to making sure that our county experience justice and peace and joy. Lord, continue to bless them, may they have a wonderful, wonderful Christmas season. Bless their families also. Lord, family is the most important aspect of our community. Lord, when we have good families, we have a good community and we have a good country. So bless the county judge and her family and her four commissioners and their families. Lord, protect them, give them health, give them a wonderful Christmas. Bless out the members of Nueces County. Lord, as we travel around the streets here, we see the lights on all the trees. Lord, do you remember in the ancient times, the tree represented you? And we still continue that beautiful practice. Now we put lights on our trees and bless those families who put on those lights. They accept you as their Lord and Savior. Bless the homes that have the lights on them, again saying, their home is truly a blessed home, that you're in their home and your Lord in their home. Bless all who serve this county. Bless our judges and our leaders and our law enforcement, bless them all, Lord. Keep them safe, keep them healthy, and keep them focused on doing good, helping all of us to be the best version of ourselves we can be. Lord, you call us to do great things, may we do great things. Bless all the families here in Nueces County, may they have a joyful Christmas, may they have peace and harmony in their homes, and Lord, may they radiate that joy out to others as they do by the lights in their home, a star on their roof, and the trees are decorated. Lord, here in this county, you're Lord and Master. Bless all those who have given their time and given their time to others as giving their life to others. Sometimes it's a challenge, Lord, but you know the hearts of all people. Bless them and guide them. Lord, give them all a very blessed Christmas and a wonderful New Year. Blessings in our court and all who serve. Amen.
Thank you, Bishop. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
Once again, thank you for our beautiful invocation and prayer for the families of Nueces County. At this time, I'll note for the record that it's December 14th, 2022, and we are here on the Nueces County Commissioners' courtroom. It's located on the third floor of the Nueces County Courthouse. Address is 901 North Leopard. The time is 8:46 a.m. And I do note for the record that all commissioners are present, although at this moment, one just stepped out, but all commissioners are present and therefore, as the presiding officer, I will certify that a quorum has been established. At this time, I will make the announcement on disclosures of conflicts of interest and ask if anyone has a conflict of interest or an appearance of a conflict of interest with items on this agenda, it is important that you shall declare it at this time. At this time, are there any conflicts of interest? If there were, members would have to refrain from voting and are asked to refrain from discussion. If you discover later in the meeting that a conflict does occur, please notify us and we will not only announce the disclosure but ask you to fill out some paperwork as well. All right, well, seeing that we have no announcements, I'll move straight to Rebecca, who has an important safety briefing for us. I'd ask that you give her your attention.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners, and attendees. Our safety briefing for today, December 14th, is being held in the Nueces County Commissioners' courtroom. The restrooms are located on the right-hand side of the third-floor atrium past the Human Resources Office. There is a fire extinguisher located at the rear of the courtroom and also five additional fire extinguishers located throughout the atrium area. Bleed control stations are on every floor. In the event of a cardiac emergency, an AED is located on the right wall next to the Human Resources Office. Participant for today who will be responsible for dialing 911 will be Connie. In the event of evacuation, our egress route will be slowly down the atrium stairs, proceeding out the doors located on the La Pan Street side of the courthouse and assembled in the parking lot across the street. It is important to stay together. Should there be a need to shelter in place, depending upon the severity of the shelter in place, the courtroom double doors will be secured and remain secure until given further instructions from the Nueces County Sheriff's Office or other law enforcement agencies. And I would like to tell Nueces County Merry Christmas. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and same to you and your family, Rebecca. At this time, I'm following the agenda, but I don't see Mr. Arriola. I'm happy to skip unless, deputy, will you see if Mr. Al Arriola? Never mind, he's going to come in a little bit later this morning. I'll hold on item G passed to move to Maggie. I'm also missing some of the judges as well for item H. When I do see them, I will come right back to those recognitions. Item H1 and H2 are important recognitions, but I'm going to wait for their entrance. I'll move on to H3, and the woman I just referred to to help me answer that question is the same amazing woman that I've been turning to for the past four years here at Nueces County and before that, six years at the Port of Corpus Christi. But the truth is, is that Nueces County has looked to her for the last 28 years of incredible service, and this is my opportunity to do what I do almost every court. I get to place my signature on a certificate that says the following words. "We hereby express our sincere appreciation to Margaret M. Turner, grateful recognition for four years of service with Nueces County." And it's signed the last day of your employment, December 31st. It'll be the last day of mine as well. We came in together and we shall go out together, and we made, I think, an indelible impact on not only our third floor but on emergency management, and I cannot thank you enough for not just these years of service, Maggie, but for the service that you've given Nueces County. I was thinking this morning, when all the talk on ABC News was about cold fusion and new energy and renewable energies, and I was thinking, you know, 25 years ago when we started or when you started in business development at the port, I bet you could have never imagined that all the new clean and renewable energies would be our future. But as they say, you were cool before it was cool to be cool in wind development, and so every time I see a wind turbine, I'm going to be thinking of you still. But most importantly, I'll think about all the things that nobody will ever know, all the sacrifices that you made, all the days on Saturdays, Sundays, midnight, 2:00 a.m. through emergency management in an unprecedented time in history. And although I don't believe that this certificate does it justice, I hope that you will accept it. You always say, "For love and loyalty," and you have mine. Thank you. Let me come give you this and a hug.
Are they all signed?
Yeah.
Is she? She didn't sign?
Would you all turn to the minutes on I-1 and see if you can provide a motion for the approval of the December 7th minutes at this time? It's I-1.
Second.
Motion and by Gonzalez, second by Mahrez. All, any discussion on these minutes? Hearing, none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. That motion carries. We'll move to the consent agenda. It's got A through P located on it. I know you've had a time. I didn't see any.
Yeah, correct.
Let me just, you're right. Let me just announce. Thank you, Kara. And also, we may open it when the judges come back in, okay? Would you like to wait till that agenda item or would you like to go now? It's up to you. But at this time, there is nobody signed up on public comment, but I always do ask
I'd like to go now.
Go ahead. whether online, if there's anybody that might like to make public comment?
Working.
And just, you'll see that Connie's got your clock on and you may proceed whenever Okay? Yes?
Yes.
you're ready.
Okay. My name is Erin Rios. I work for the county and I've done 36 years of, 36 years of central plant and I'm responsible
Mr. Rios would like to make a public comment? Would you like to sign up? Give us just a moment. Is there anybody online that would like to make public comment? At this time, just raise your icon of a hand by your name and we can call upon you.
for building maintenance here. I'm a foreman here and my concern is several months ago, we brought up the issue about
Erin Rios will be next.
Excuse me, Judge, we're still on consent agenda?
No, we're at public comment. And I heard you, I knew I heard a yes.
the borders, about the borders, about them being unsafe, and I don't think anybody has
Jeremy Coleman, is that you online? It's just coming up, NAACP.
Yes, ma'am.
Great, you'll be next, following gentleman here in the courtroom.
know the effect of it. The state has been involved and they've ruled the borders unsafe. And so I just wanted to make sure that, you know, I've seen incidents here at the courthouse that has, has made, you know, I actually seen stuff here that's happened and I've actually been in the equipment room and shut down equipment or had somebody shut down equipment because of that, and they don't realize that, you know, this border project has gone a year over, over that it's supposed to, and it needs to be finished. And we're still having on, going through our punch list of items that hasn't been done. You know, it looks like smoke and mirrors that they're just feeding y'all, so I'm just, that was my concern.
Thank you.
Thank you for your concern.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Rios.
All right, Mr. Jeremy Coleman, recognizing you, sir, online under Connie, the NAACP, 6168.
Good afternoon, Judge and Commissioners. I just wanted to be brief. I apologize for not being there in person, but I did want to say to Judge Canales and Commissioner Mahrez and Commissioner Zag and Hernandez and all the others who have supported the NAACP and also for your assistance with us with the program that we look to see to come into play in 2023 through our chapter, through our organization. But what I wanted to say to Judge Canales, our NAACP Executive Committee and State Office held a meeting three days ago. I called the meeting and then I shared with our executive officers yesterday, the day before, and some of them may come up to the courthouse just to say thank you to all you all personally for your support and our partnership. But I do want to share with you that we truly appreciate the service that you give and did give over these past four years, and I strongly believe that we have some great commissioners that are currently there and who are going to continue on to doing the work for our community.
Thank you so much. Thank you. I don't think we have anybody else calling online, so I think we'll move on, except for that I just saw Judge Sandra Watts walk in, so I'm going to recall item H2 and ask that... Thank you. I'm going to close public comment at this time. And again, I'm going to reserve in case somebody comes back in. So I'll direct your attention, please, to H2 in recognition of the Honorable Sandra Watts of the 117th District Court for her years of service to Nueces County. Now, I can honestly say that I have known Judge Watts when she was Mrs. Watts, and Mrs. Watts was a great mother and a great lawyer. I did not know you when you were a teacher, but I know that you gave 10 years of service as a schoolteacher, and one of the things that I loved most about what you said at your retirement party is that you've never stopped teaching, and I totally believe that. Every time I'm in a room with you, I'm learning something, and sometimes it's not necessarily the law. It could just be a principle or maybe a way to emulate a decisive action. It's always very impressive to me how you're always absorbing information and then regurgitating it and then teaching others. But after you became a teacher, you wanted to go to law school, and I remember the famous days of three days a week on Southwest Airlines, and that emerged not just a triumphant lawyer but a lawyer who was first in her class, coming home to have a successful practice of law for over 21 years as a lawyer, as a family lawyer, and as was said by, I know all your children are your favorites, but the one that I've known the longest who introduced you said that you better be on her side, otherwise you were on the wrong side in that family law case. So for 21 years, you helped men and women, you helped families go through the most difficult times in their life, and then you decided to embark on becoming a judge, and then you spent another two decades here with us at Nueces County Courthouse. And just when we thought that the accolades were maybe going to transfer to a different arena, you have been selected to be our auxiliary court judge, and I cannot think of a finer selection simply because we need you so much. And I believe that this small token of our appreciation and affection in the form of a certificate with our signatures collectively on it is but just a token of the overall just admiration we all have for you. Anybody that's had any time in the courthouse knows your dedication to drug court, to families, to mental health, to those risk assessments that really became the prototype for what we have now, which wasn't as good as what you brought us, but at least they figured out that we needed it. And I just think that this is a very fitting tribute, but we're going to have to do another one when you decide not to be the auxiliary court judge anymore. So this is your almost retirement, retirement certificate, but you certainly have made an indelible impression upon the Corpus Christi Bar Association, the State Bar of Texas, and of course, Nueces County in grateful recognition for your... It says 19, Sandy, Judge. I don't know...
It's 19 years and nine months.
Gosh, we should have put that on there.
Retired effective September 30th.
I see, I see. Well, in honor of the 19 years and nine months of service with Nueces County, we do hereby express our sincere appreciation and we invite you to the podium, but first, let us do what we have been doing since the beginning of civilization when we honor our heroes. Thank you so much.
I think the first thing I want to tell you is I'm a very punctual judge. I was told 9 o'clock and I walked in here three minutes of 9, but I do thank you for the recognition. I didn't realize I was going to get to this age so fast, and when I ran for judge, I had no idea there was mandatory retirement. And so when I ran the last time, that's when I learned, okay, I can run one more term. I would have probably ran another one and another one, but the statute says I have to retire, which is what I did. I cannot tell you how gratifying it has been to serve as a Nueces County District Judge. Been probably the highlight, although I loved all three of my career paths. I think I grew in the job and I hope that I have been someone who was able to touch positively a lot of folks in our community. So I thank you for the recognition. You're going to see me around, but you're not going to see me around every single day or every week. I do have a couple of weeks off in this new gig and I will serve as long as I receive an assignment from the Fifth Region, or as long as the grant runs out. One or the other. So thank you again.
Thank you, and any lawyer knows, they better, you all better be prepared because what 19.9 years of service does is hone your experience. So young lawyers, you're about to get the most seasoned auxiliary court judge you could possibly have in the great Lone Star State.
I don't know about that seasoned. Does that mean old?
No. Commissioner Chesney wants to add.
Add to your comments, Judge Watts, you've just always been such a pillar of this community and it's so appreciated, and as a former young lawyer who both you helped as a family lawyer as I was becoming one and as a judge, as a judge, as a lawyer in your court and as a young judge, or not young, but as a beginning rookie judge, you were always super helpful and you always, you never, you know, you, when, and people always talk about judges having to run on partisan labels and, you know, as a brief moment in time that I served, I never looked at someone who came into my court as to what party they represented from a lawyer standpoint or a client standpoint, and you were the epitome of that. You were an equal opportunity kick them in the butt person, you were an equal opportunity hold them to the, you know, and I appreciate that. I mean, there was never a time as an attorney in this community that someone could say to me or would say to me that you're not going to get a fair shake in Judge Watts' court. And that's really the bottom line in being a judge, is you want people to say that you got a fair shake and she followed the law and did it with class and dignity, and you certainly epitomize that, and I appreciate your long service to this community and you're, and just known you personally since I was a very, very young man from church. So our lineage goes way, way back, and so congratulations on your retirement. I know you would have sat there forever had you been allowed to, and we would have been benefited from you sitting there forever had you have been allowed to, but we're glad you're going to be around in some capacity and thank you very much for your years of service, not only on the bench but just to the community as a whole. You've just done so much outside of your bench to improve this community and it's greatly appreciated.
Thank you. I do want to say one thing that I ran repeatedly, I think five times, and I did not draw a Democrat or a Republican opponent in all that time period. So I do believe that I never saw labels, never. It's, you know, it's the law and it's the facts of the case.
Agreed.
Congratulations, Judge.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And we'd like to present this to you, and if you would allow us a photo, I bet all of the commissioners would like that.
Your Honor, if I could say something real quick because I'm a...
Of course.
...appointed official.
Of course.
About 10 years ago, I had interviewed for the position I'm in, and Judge Watts and Judge Hernandez that were in the interview. I really want to appreciate Judge Watts's belief in me and in being able to support me through the time I've been the county auditor. Her and Judge Hernandez were the ones that originally submitted my name to the Board of Judges for appointment, and I'm very grateful for her support and her belief in me and how we've gone through the process, and I want to congratulate her on her retirement and I look forward to working with her in the past, in the future.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
So Judge, we have you to blame for Dale? Is that what we're saying?
Oh, no, you all voted.
All right, our fault.
We just recommended.
I do want to say one thing to all the commissioners and the judge. In 20 years, I have come before you on a number of times requesting certain things and, you know, I can remember one time...
I can remember one time coming and the most, I mean, I appreciate everything you've done for the judges, all of the technology that you have in effect bespoke and bestowed on us, but I got to tell you, my favorite thing are four elevators. I came before you and I said, you know, we've gotten so accustomed to just having two elevators work that, you know, that became the norm. I says, but when we're down to one elevator, I think we need to address this problem. So, and our new elevators even talk to us. We like it. Thank you for everything you've done for the judges.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Judge.
We do date back way...
A long time. A long time.
Thank you very much.
Judge, I actually remember when you were flying back and forth.
That's a long time ago. I used to say that I was trying to develop an adverse possession claim on the right wing of Southwest Airlines.
Yes, we did. As well you may.
And because I also saw him come in the room and I know he wants to get back to his workplace, please allow me to refer you back to item G, and it's my pleasure to introduce you, in case you have not already met him, our new CEO of the United Corpus Christi Chamber of Commerce, Mr. Al Arriola, Jr. And Al, welcome. Would you just say a few words of introduction? As they say, you got here in a flash and then you started working so fast. The holidays came upon us and I wanted to make sure that Nueces County greeted you properly.
Thank you, Judge. Thank you, Judge Canales, for the invitation. Members of the commission, thank you for allowing me to be here today. I have had the pleasure of meeting some of you and also your staffs. Appreciate all the work you do for the greater coastal Ben area. Also too, want to give you guys a thank you. One of my first internships in college when I came here to AM Corpus Christi was with the county. I have served, I worked in court administration for Judge Vanyalis back then, and it was a paid internship, so thank you for that too. I appreciated the experience and honestly, it was probably a piece of the seeding of why I ended up going into this career path, so thank you for that. You guys know our doors at the United Chamber are more than open to you. Thank you for being great partners to that. I hope to continue to steward that relationship and work to advance your interest in the county and again, in the coastal Ben region. I really don't have a lot to say, like Judge Canales said, we kind of hit the ground running, drinking through a fire hose, getting to know as many stakeholders and partners as I possibly can, but we are engaging in our own strategic planning, starting in January, and I hope to share that vision with the court, what the organization's going to look like in the next three, five years. So again, thank you for your time this morning. I appreciate all you all do and I hope to see you again soon.
Thank you, and I just wanted to point out, I don't...
Okay, one, two, three.
I do want to say one thing to all the commissioners and the judge. In twenty years, I have come before you on a number of times requesting certain things. And, you know, I can remember one time-- I can remember one time coming, and the most, I mean, I appreciate everything you've done for the judges, all of the technology that you have in effect bespoke and bestowed on us. But I gotta tell you, my favorite thing are four elevators. I came before you, and I said, you know, we've gotten so accustomed to just having two elevators work, that, you know, that became the norm. I says, but when we're down to one elevator, I think we need to address this problem. So I, and our new elevators even talk to us. We like it. Thank you for everything you've done for the judges.
Thank you very much, and thank you, Judge.
We do date back way--
A long time, a long-- Judge, I actually remember when you were flying back and forth.
That's a long time ago. I used to say that I was trying to develop an adverse possession claim on the right wing of Southwest Airlines.
And because I also saw him come in the room, and I know he wants to get back to his, uh, workplace, uh, please allow me to refer you back to Item G. And it's my pleasure to introduce you, in case you have not already met him, our new CEO of the United Corpus Christi Chamber of Commerce, Mr. Al Ariola Jr. And Al, welcome. Would you just say a few words of introduction? As they say, you got here in a flash, and then you started working so fast. Uh, the holidays came upon us, and I wanted to make sure that Nuñez County greeted you, um, properly.
Thank you, Judge. Thank you, Judge Collins, for the invitation. Members of the Commission, thank you for allowing me to be here today. I have had the pleasure of meeting some of you and also your staffs. Appreciate all the work you do for the, the Greater Coastal Bend area. Uh, also too, want to give you guys a, a thank you. One of my first internships, uh, in college, when I came here to A&amp;M Corpus Christi, was with the, the county. I have served, uh, I worked in administrate, court administration for Judge Vanyalas back then, and it was a paid internship, so thank you for that, too. Uh, I appreciated the experience, and honestly, it was probably a, a, a piece of the seeding of, of why I ended up going into, into this career path. So thank you for that. Um, you guys know, uh, our doors at the United Chamber are more than open to you. Thank you for being great partners to that. I hope to continue to steward that relationship and, and work to advance your interest in the, in, in the county, and again, in the Coastal Bend region. I really don't have a lot to say. Like Judge Collins said, we, I kind of hit the ground running, drink it through a fire hose, getting to know as many stakeholders and partners as I possibly can. Uh, but we are engaging in our own strategic planning, um, starting in January, and I hope to share that vision with the court, uh, what the, the organization's gonna look like in the next three, five years. So, again, thank you for your time this morning. I appreciate all you all do, and I hope to see you again soon.
Thank you. And I just wanted to point out, I don't know if you've met Ms. Hernandez, she's our court administrator, but another important stakeholder to know. And of course, there's electeds that run, there's more electeds per square foot here in Nuñez County Courthouse than anywhere else. And so this is a good place to hang out. So we invite you back often, and of course, um, we're proud to support the United Corpus Christi Chamber of Commerce.
Well, Judge, if I could take a point for the shoot. Thank you for all your service over the years. Thank you for everything you've done. Um, even prior to my capacity at the United Chamber, you were always accessible to me. When I worked in San Antonio, you came to a forum that we had, uh, and you really articulated a lot of the excitement that's happening here in the Bend. And so thank you for all your work, too.
Great, grateful. Thank you. All right. Um, so now we'll, we do have another recognition, but as I have been informed, Judge Valdez is calling a docket, so let's, let's hold on that. And let's move all the way to that consent agenda. And then I am going to advance the, uh, the MetroCom piece. Uh, the consent agenda has Items A through P, A through P, and I would ask, uh, for your review, and if there are any that need any clarifications, or if you have--
I've got a few--
--a question. Would you tell me which one, please?
Yes, ma'am. I've got C, J-- I'm sorry, C, as in cat--
Yeah.
J, K, and L.
Was that first one, J, K, and L?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, J, K, and L, got it.
And those are my, that's the four that I've got.
All righty. Anybody else?
I've got one, too.
Okay, which one?
This is from Consent Agenda?
Correct.
I got C.
We already pulled it.
Okay. That's the only one I got.
Okay.
I got number E.
You've got letter E?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, super. Okay, uh, may I have a, a motion at this time? Commissioner Modest, do you have any?
No.
Okay. Is, is there a motion to approve A, B, F, G, H, I, and M through P for the record?
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second, or any other discussion? All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post them, sign. Let's take them in alpha order. Item C was pulled by two commissioners. It could be different bills, so I'll yield to Commissioner Chesney first, uh, and have you direct that straight to Dale.
Yeah, Judge, I only have one question on that, and it was the, the Porter Rogers bill. It was redacted. I'd like to pull that bill only. That's my issue. And, and, and be able to review that bill, uh, in executive session or privately--
Let's do it.
--with, uh, yeah.
Let's do that. We'll, we'll pull that one. Um, but that way we can approve the others. And Commissioner Hernandez, what is yours?
I've got, uh, Item Twenty-One, Twenty-Two, Bracewell, and, uh, Branscom.
Okay, is that something you want to take to executive session? Those are both law firms?
Yes, ma'am, it is.
Okay.
I also have, uh, Lake Wood Andrews Newman. And Item Ten, uh, Lockwood Andrews and Newman, which is, uh--
Number ten?
Nine, nine and ten, Judge.
Number nine and ten. Is that executive session questions?
Uh, yes, I think it would be.
Okay, is it, I have to make certain, is it, you have a legal, the other ones were lawyers, you have a legal basis for your taking that to executive session?
Well, I don't know if I have legal basis or not. I do that up to the county judge, letting me know. Uh, I'm just asking, uh, questions about it.
It may be that it's just, uh, solely a billing question?
That's what it is.
Okay, then I can't take that to executive session. But I will, I will definitely take, uh, all the lawyers' bills to executive, given that there are some redactions, and that they pertain to legal or litigation, or some contract service that they're performing. How about Items Nine and Ten? Can you direct your inquiry to Dale? Um, these are--
I'm sorry--
I'm sure Dale's looking at them right now.
Did we put Twenty-One for executive session?
Yes, we did.
You did?
Yes, we did.
Okay, thanks.
Uh, Commissioner Hernandez, I'll let you ask your bill, what is your billing question? And Dale's looking at it right now. Number nine bill, I'm sorry, number nine on the list. Dale, and number ten on the list.
Judge, I had one more, I'm sorry, I apologize.
Is it on Item C?
Yes, it is.
Okay, can you give me the number, just I'll keep it?
It's a bill. It's just, I had questions on the bill, and I was going back and forth on this bill with Lisa. I kind of needed to ask her where this all landed. This was one of it. Is she around, Dale?
What number is it?
It's, I'm sorry, it's number two, Sally Palmer. There were some emails that went back and forth this week with Lisa involved, and I don't, I never got an answer, so I kind of need her to come in.
Okay, I, we can call her on the, but let's let Commissioner Hernandez get his question in first.
That's why I was just giving her heads.
Yeah, Sally Palmer is with UTMSI, and that project, as I recall, is the Observation Deck.
Right.
And her services are within the budget of the Observation Deck, even though I wasn't included on the initial emails. I'm, I'm aware of the situation. So I, maybe we could ask Lisa to come in, so that we can solve that issue. And I believe Scott Cross is on the line as well.
That's fine, I was just saying, I just needed Lisa to come in, so you can, I didn't mean to, I was just trying to give him a heads up, because she wasn't in the room.
Okay, Commissioner Hernandez, I'm sorry, but it's back in your court. You're asking a question regarding Item Number Nine, so we can--
Yes, it's twenty-one thousand dollars of, uh, program management. And I just, uh, wonder what, uh, for ABM Energy Savings Performance--
Which one are you, which one?
It's Number Nine.
Nine?
There's, because there's several, okay.
It's not, it's not, there's no attachment to that. I don't have attachment to--
So when these, he's asking a question, Dale, that has to do with this invoice. Would it be helpful if I give you just a little bit of time, so that you can pull these, and then we can come back to them?
Yes, Your Honor, well, if, you give me a few minutes, what, all the information we have--
Yeah, let's, let's do that.
--and, uh, so get the information available.
Is that acceptable, Commissioner Hernandez? He needs some time to look it over?
Yes, ma'am, it is.
And the same thing with Sally Palmer. If you'll text Lisa, and we can get that, uh, inquiry--
And then, so Judge, we, we pulled two, nine, ten, eighteen, and which other one on this?
Let me, let me refer to it as Number Two, Number Nine, and Number Ten.
And Eighteen.
I did not hear eighteen. Who pulled eighteen? That was yours?
For, to begin with.
Eighteen--
And what's eighteen on?
I need to, that's the redacted bill that I need unredacted.
Well, that one I already pulled. I'm calling it Porter Rogers.
No, I was just--
But I'll take the number. Yeah, eighteen.
And Twenty-One.
We've got, we've got eighteen, nine, ten, and two, Twenty-One, and Twenty-Two. Okay? Kara? Those are just being on hold right now.
The attorneys?
Can I have a, yes, they're all, they're Bracewell and Branscom.
So, um, just do it clean?
Yeah, let me do it again for you.
Can we just hold all of it? You don't have to, because you may approve everything at once.
The only--
Is that okay?
The only thing about that is that I, it's fine. We can do it. Sometimes it's nice for them to start paying people, like, the minute we approve, they start going to pay.
They won't do it. That won't happen, because it goes to my office, and they'll send it Friday. So regardless, it doesn't go out today. So it's okay.
Okay, then we'll just hold on it.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, let's move to, um, and again, we're just holding for a moment. And, uh, well, the moment has arrived.
Number E.
Um, Lisa, there is a question on paying a bill. It's Item Number Two on the special motions list. It's, it's C, two C on consent. And the question is--
The Sally Palmer stuff.
Sally Palmer?
I never heard back from Mr. Cross. I can reach out to Alana or Monica to get more information, but everything that I emailed you is all I had.
So the emails basically were saying that Lisa was questioning whether or not this had been approved by the court, and that this was coming out of my COs, and we were waiting on information, so maybe Scott is on the line.
Yeah, he's online. Let me ask him to unmute.
But, but Lisa couldn't find where this was ever voted on, that it was only discussed.
During a, during a budget workshop, but it never came back to court, and budget workshop isn't actionable.
Right.
Because it's not, it's not properly noticed, and there's no minutes.
Let's ask Scott, because this Sally Palmer's work is inside the original budget for curation?
Yes.
The reason your COs are there, my recollection is that you and I both contributed to the Observation Deck. So this is a person who did curation for the exhibits, rather than using the expensive I Zone or I Museum, Museum, can't remember the name, Museum Arts.
Liza?
What are they called? Anyway, the point is, is that Sally Palmer is doing the curation for the Observation Deck. It's, it's within the budget of the original Observation Deck budget, and that's why your COs--
But she's saying it was never voted on, so I'm trying to find out if it was ever voted on. So if Scott wants to answer, we're, because we never got that response from, we were going back and forth, and we never got a response on email versus Scott. So Scott, do you have an answer? Because I don't, I can't, I don't remember ever voting on this, but--
Commissioner, all I know is that the budget that was approved to deal with the, uh, the educational signage, and this safety signage and stuff that we've actually worked with Kiwanis on, inside that space, along with the ADA ramp, was approved by y'all at some point in time. I don't know what the funding source was, whether it was CO or whatever it was, but we've been moving towards completing that mission, using those funds, you know, diligently and sparingly, uh, to try to complete this project by the end of January, which is what we agreed to do by, with U.S. Fish and Wildlife. And so Daryl, uh, in IT, Ade, Belinda, myself, and Purchasing have all been the project team that have been working on this. And as we've had costs that come up to finish the mission that we were charged with, then, uh, we would work with Teresa, and Teresa would do her magic with the budget that we had through the auditor's office. Um, as far as this being part of any budget workshop, I'm not aware of that at all. This was not part of my budget workshop when I went to budget. This was already approved by y'all, and so I've been working with the budget y'all gave me.
Right, but I guess what I'm turning it to is where did the whole Sally Palmer contract come from? I think that's what Lisa was referring to, is--
I, I honestly just wanted to know if this was, if the new was on top of what we'd already paid, or if it was, if there was, if it was in addition to what we previously paid, or if this is a separate thing, because it's the exact same proposal.
Originally, if I may interject, originally, uh, we, uh, consulted with Sally over at UTMSI, because she is doing all the curation for their space over there. That's not a, a skill set that I have with curating educational displays. So we did the historical--
No, Scott, that wasn't the question. We're just, I'm trying to get to where this came from. Like, did the Parks Board do it? Did you do it? Did somebody ask for it? I just, I'm not saying it's a bad thing. I just don't, I don't remember the court, it being presented to us. It would have, I mean, I, I, maybe I'm forgetting. I don't remember it coming forward and, and, you know, saying, this is what we're gonna do, and here's the displays we're gonna do, and that, that the Parks Board signed off on this? Did we sign off on this? Where did this--
Y'all, y'all both did. Y'all both did. Because the proposal that was submitted to, the proposal that was submitted to U.S. Fish and Wildlife, that, um, uh, Maria had worked up, uh, with the team to get us in compliance, was brought to court, and the court approved that. It was not my agenda item, but Maria from Grants brought it, the court approved it. We submitted to U.S. Fish and Wildlife, and the U.S. Fish and Wildlife said, okay, yes, we'll accept this, move forward. And so all of this is in line with that proposal that the court adopted, that U.S. Fish and Wildlife--
No, no, Scott, the, the specific proposal from Sally Palmer, I know we, I know what we did with Fish and Wildlife, but that was the, you're saying that Fish and, this was brought to the court, Sally Palmer? I don't remember Sally Palmer being brought to the court. I remember, I, I, I'm very clear on what we approved with, with Fish and Wildlife. I'm asking, when did the Sally Palmer part get approved by the court or the Parks Board?
It got approved via a PO--
By who?
From, uh, uh, the Park Board, because Kim Zahn is also one of our Park Board, or Kim Zahn Witten, excuse me, is also on a committee with our board on this project, serving the board. And so we just did it via PO, following the procurement, uh, policies that we have for a PO.
That's all I was asking. So it went through the Parks Board, and it was approved by the Parks Board?
Yes.
Park, so the Parks Board voted on this, and they voted to do this?
Yes.
That's all I was asking.
Which one did come to us?
Okay, I'm, I'm sorry--
And it's within budget.
I mean, I think it would have been nice that we would have seen it, because I, I, you know, it is--
Right.
You know, we did fund that facility, and it, it would have been nice for us to know, because, I mean, I'm glad we're using UTMSI. That's what I argued for in the first place, and not using the library system, was to use UTMSI. But I, I would have, it would have been nice if this had come to us, and maybe it did, and I'm not remembering, but I don't remember us having any presentation, or seeing it, or getting anything that said, this is what we're gonna do, and, but did, did that come to us, Scott? Did that ever get forwarded up to us? I mean, they had the right--
You know, sir, sir, I can't remember. I know we've had a lot of discussion about what we were gonna do in the space, outside of what we committed to U.S. Fish and Wildlife, so I can't say for sure we did or we did not.
I mean, same thing. I mean, y'all, y'all, the Parks Board doesn't like when they get left out of stuff by us, and we don't like when we, so it's the same, it's kind of the same thing. We didn't, we didn't know anything about, I, I don't remember seeing this. This caught me off guard. I, I was involved in those emails. I, I didn't hear a final response from you on, on that. So that's why we're having to ask questions today. And, and so I'm fine with the Parks Board doing it. I think UTMSI's a great use of it. I just would have, it would have been nice to not been caught off guard. And when Lisa sends it and said, these were Commissioner Chesney's COs, then I have to go, oh, wait a minute, I don't remember that either. So just, I would just, you know, I, I'd like to see what she's doing. I'd like to have a, you know, not a presentation, but if someone could send the rest of the court, to, so that the court knows what's going on in our facility, because I, I mean, I don't, I, people are, people are out there doing stuff, and I don't, I'd be nice to know.
Well, I'm sure--
If y'all could just pass it on to me, that would be great. No, to the whole court, sorry.
Can we, are you fine with moving on Item Number Two?
Well, I think the questions that Lisa had, we haven't answered yet, so Lisa--
I, I can get with Scott.
Scott, the, the question that Lisa has is, is this additional dollars, or this, it's, is this within budget?
Yes, it's additional dollars.
It's additional dollars, that's what I needed to know.
It's additional dollars, is--
Thank you.
Can I, can I, can I speak now?
Yes.
It, it's additional dollars, and here's the comparison. I checked what, we tried to get a quote from Museum Arts, which is a professional curator for all kinds of facilities. And that's who UTMSI, UTMSI recommended. And that's who UTMSI, UTMSI recommended. But they were going to cost about $250,000 to do what we committed to do. And Sally had committed to me, she goes, "Scott, I can do this for an extra 20K and get you almost the exact museum quality while getting you the durability you need for that kind of space because, you know, it's open to the public and it's exposed to the elements." And I said, "Well, that's a no-brainer." And, but I never knew that these were the Commissioner's COs. I didn't, I didn't know what the funding source actually was. And that's my fault, I guess. But, um...
Just send us, just send us what she's doing, Scott. I'm, I'm not, I, I'm thrilled with UTMSI. I'm thrilled with Sally Palmer. I just want to know what's going on out there.
And I'll have...
So someone sent, to send it to the whole court as to what Sally's going to be doing and putting off the wall so everybody on the court can see it.
Okay. Well, this is what I got planned. We, she, Sally's actually working on a PowerPoint that we were going to bring in January for the new county judge and, and, and the court to present what we've done to check all the boxes to comply with U.S. Fish and Wildlife, which includes her work.
Right. I would just ask that if she already knows what she's going to do and work is being done there, I guess I'm sound, like, are they, they're putting stuff up on, just send that to the court now so that everybody gets to see it. And then you can present it if we, if the, if we put it on the agenda in January, great, and we'll do it then. But I'd just like to know what's going on now and that's all. So I, that's great clarification.
And I'll, and I'll have some time on my hands, so I'll dig up the times on video when we did mention Ms. Palmer and also the meeting that happened at UTMSI that everybody's forgetting about. So again, we've had plenty of conversations, but in the interest of time, let's just move forward. And we'll get you, please get to Commissioner Chesney, everything you can regarding the signage and the curated text that will help illustrate the fish, the ecosystem, the Gulf of Mexico for that observation deck. That's part and parcel of the overall requirements, which is going to be wonderful. And that's the only thing that I think the Park Board has been, you know, working with Ms. Palmer and not just Ms. Palmer. I think there were 15 different agencies there and I know you were invited too.
Actually, no, I wasn't. I was not invited. And that meeting went on and I was not invited to it. So if that's the meeting that was discussed, then that makes sense.
There were other meetings as well.
But the one you're talking about where it was the big UTMSI was not invited to, I heard about it afterwards. So that would make sense if I didn't hear about it if it was done at that meeting. So I don't remember.
Sounds like you knew about it because you just said, you got in, you didn't know about it.
I just said, "I heard about it after," if you listen to what I say. I said, "I heard about it after" because I was called and said, "Hey, why weren't you at the meeting?" I said, "Well, I wasn't invited." Imagine that. So that's what really happened on that since you bring that meeting up.
Well, I think it's your precinct. You should know everything there is to know about it.
I'm very clear.
But the bottom line is, is that this is a wonderful project and I haven't, I have not heard any praise for the project.
Because you weren't listening because I just said how great Sally Palmer was and how great UTMSI was and how great the project was.
Could there be a motion in there to approve item number two?
Sure.
Thank you. All second. Any other discussion? Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Okay. We're going to hold on 21 and 22. Yes, who is this?
Excuse me, this is Teresa.
Hey, Teresa.
I just wanted to make a comment. The funds for that Sally Palmer's purchase order that Scott originally had came from the excess funds over in the Horace Caldwell Accessible Ramp because there are available surplus over there. So that's where those funds came from.
Yes, but the, and the ramp, and the ramp.
They did not come from Commissioner Chesney's funds.
Thank you. And, okay, thank you. Can you provide that in an email to Commissioner Chesney just so he has that breakdown?
I will.
Okay. And also copy Lisa. All right. Thank you. On items 21 and 22, those deal with two law firms plus 18. That's three law firms. And we're going to discuss those in executive session. We'll come out at executive session and, and make number or letter C more complete for the county clerk. Okay?
Your Honor, can we go back to that nine, 10? I just want to know what the questions are because the invoices and the letters from the Department approving invoices are in the, in your package. So I just want to know what the question might have been.
Perfect.
On which one, Dale? Nine and 10?
Going back to Commissioner Hernandez's question on nine and 10.
I gotta catch up.
You want to know what, Dale?
What was, what was the question? Because the, we have a, a letter from the Department of Public Works approving the request for this. The invoices are part of the package and they were approved by Public Works for submission to the public, for special motions. So I just want to know what the questions are, are, are on these invoices.
They're on the bills. Scott, I've got them too. It's not, it's, there's some time on here that's very, I'm sorry, I interrupted you. No, no, go ahead. That's your item. I'm sorry.
But, uh, well, that's my question. I mean, there's always been problems, you know, with this management people.
I'm, I'm going to, I'm going to ask that any derogatory, defamatory comments here that they at least be, he be, at least be warned. I mean...
No, there's no warning. He can say there are problems because there are problems.
County attorney, I'll go ahead and take this to executive session and we're going to have implications of liability here.
You don't want it to be heard.
I'll, I'll yield to Commissioner Chesney.
What is the question?
Go ahead, Commissioner Chesney.
I got a lot of questions on these billings from.
They've been approved by Public Works. Would you like to call Juan and discuss that in the off time so we can move on with this agenda?
If you want to pull these items, great, but I want to...
No, I'm asking what the questions are. You've had this packet since Friday.
I'm trying to ask them, but you won't let me.
What are they?
The questions I have.
No, I am. What are the questions to Dale? Please proceed.
My questions are on the billings. I don't know what Commissioner Hernandez's questions are. Mine are on the billings and some of the time. I've got questions on the time billings that I think are a little steep and a little high.
Well, but you, that's not a question. That's an opinion and these have been approved by Public Works.
I don't care who they've been approved by, Judge. I don't care if they've been approved.
Well, what is your question?
The question is, I'd like to know how these, how people justify some of this time on here.
It's called work. You should try it. It's work.
Oh, yeah. That, boy, we know that. There we go.
It's work. They work and they lock.
This is your favorite company and you don't ever want to question him and you may be getting something. I don't know.
Okay. You're out of order again with your defamatory comments.
And you won't let me ask them because you always cover up for everybody.
You're out of order yourself.
Yeah, no kidding.
Commissioner Gonzalez.
Golly, let people talk.
Commissioner Gonzalez.
Let people talk.
It doesn't ever happen. One more.
Commissioner Gonzalez.
We can talk.
I'll call on you. You have to be recognized. You're not recognized, sir.
I would like to pull the bills because I have questioned on the hours and the bills on here. So I would like to pull these bills and go through them with whoever, offline, online, wherever. But I have questions on the amounts of time spent on this bill.
Jenny.
So I'm, that we table this bill until the next meeting.
Second.
I need to know on the prompt pay policy here, Dale, how many, will this interfere with that? We have a law in Texas that when the, when the invoices are submitted, the department head has the ability to report.
Judge, there's a motion to table parliamentary procedures. There's no discussion at that point. I would make a point of order and, and...
I'll take this to executive session.
No, Judge, there's a motion to table and a second. I had the floor. I had the right to make a motion. It was seconded.
No, I, I had the motion to take it to executive.
Nope. You did not and you didn't have a second before. My, I had the floor. I was speaking. I made a motion to table nine and 10. It was promptly seconded. That is the correct parliamentary procedure. There should be no more discussion. Point of order. I call the question on the vote. If you don't want to do it, then I will challenge your ruling and we'll go forth. But I motioned to table and it was seconded because there's a lot of time on here that I want to go back and look and I want to talk to Lan and I don't, you, and I'm, so I'm, that's my motion.
Well, JP Graham will be here later in the day so that you can, you can visit with him. But I'm making a comment for the county attorney.
Call for the question.
I need to ask the county attorney a question. Number one, I need to have, I need to have you comment or react to the situation that this could violate the law. In other words, if it's a, I don't know that it is, but if it's a prompt payment policy situation, a po, a motion cannot trump what we're supposed to do. The process has already gone forward. The auditor needs to be independent and we need to have some legal, you know, discussion about that. It could affect any of the motions on the special motions. I mean, any of the payments on the special moment, motions list.
I do not have the facts to evaluate whether the Prompt Payment Act, not policy, but Act, has been triggered by any of this.
That's right. I'm sorry. The Act. Forgive me. Not the, because we have not, you haven't finished the policy yet. Understood. Is there something that you could?
If there's a question on the Prompt Payment Act that somebody is questioning the prompt, not the prompt payment, but the billing, don't we have a certain amount of time to react to it or talk about it?
The, the procedure is outlined in the Prompt Payment Act. If there's a problem with the bill, it has a cer, you have a certain amount of time to object to, contest that.
So that, that's what I think Commissioner Chesney is requesting and I'm requesting as well, even though it is considered an opinion. But that's what, that's what I'm asking.
It's not based on any facts. That's what, that's why it's different.
Well, that's why we're going to talk about it, Judge.
All right, Dale, I'm going to have you, we're going to have plenty of time today, so maybe you can work on that.
It's allowed to come from Juan. We don't, we don't, all we do is we see the invoices from the department, so it has to come from Public Works.
And since he's already approved it.
Jenny, I have to call for the question.
That's been done a couple of times. I've made a motion to table and seconded.
And continue to talk about it. I think we shouldn't even be talking about it. So I call for the question.
And Jenny, I appreciate your role, but the way it works, as you know, I know how to do it and you don't say anything. I will be able to call for the question as the presiding officer this last time. They're just intent on, you know, making today insufferable. But the, the most important thing here is that we have not only a legal question, but the table cannot be, if it's not legal, then that's my question. Okay? So that's why I want to take it into executive session. It's a question as whether or not if they table something.
One, I take a vote.
I need you to look at the Prompt Payment Act period on this particular invoice. We'll take a break here in just a little bit.
Judge, I'm, again, I'm, I'm rising in objection.
I will, I will.
I'm calling for a motion of abuse of the chair, which is also allowed in Robert's Rules of Order. I've called my point of order twice.
I'm calling the question, Commissioner Chesney.
Are you going to vote on the motion?
I'm calling it, but your, your rudeness is not, is not appreciated.
Doing what I'm allowed to do and you will, you have never followed the rules of Robert's Rules, asking if you're going to or not. But otherwise, I, the Robert's Rules.
Okay, we have a table. We have a table and we have a lot of chatter here.
The motion?
Robert's Rules requires you to be recognized.
I was recognized, Judge. I was, I had the floor when I made the motion. I was talking and had the floor when I made the motion. I know it's hard for you to remember.
I'm asking you to please, to please listen. I'm calling the question. But I'm not going to do it until there's order here. And you need to calm down.
He's the one who's talking, Judge.
Commissioner Gonzalez, we'll recognize you in just a moment. Kara, the table is for only items, they didn't even, 20, it's, it's...
He said nine and 10 and table until the next meeting. And then it was seconded by Commissioner Gonzalez. Or no, well, both of them seconded that.
He never said a date, Kara.
He said, well, the next meeting.
To the next meeting, which is January.
Okay, well, we need to have that next meeting. It needs to be complete. Is it January 4th?
Sure.
Okay. I'm concerned that that violates the Prompt Payment Act, okay? And that if that motion is illegal, it's not proper and the chair doesn't have to recognize it. Let's go ahead and keep it for now and I'll talk to Jenny about it. All right?
No, we have Judge Arnold.
So all the, okay.
I can, I have the right.
There's a concern it wouldn't violate, Judge. If we have a concern to question something, how can it violate anything?
Because the process...
It doesn't. She just makes the...
Okay, all, let's just move on.
All those in favor.
All those in favor. If you say that one more time, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 No. It's an improper motion, given that the process has already been taken. What is your question on E, Personal Action Summary Report, Commissioner Gonzalez?
I have, I have some questions. Maybe I need to clarify. I don't know if HR is here or not, but...
Could you call them, Adey? I'll move on to J. Commissioner Chesney, what is your question on the DIR renewal purchase with SHI?
I just need clarification on that one. Is that one your, or Michael?
Michael. This is a DIR renewal?
I think it's Darrell's.
Yes, sir.
Just, can you just briefly tell me what we're doing on this again? I mean, I've read this, but is this just a?
Yes, it was tabled last week per allowing the county attorney to review it.
And everything's fine? Everything's good?
Yes, sir. Everything's good.
You're okay with it?
It's year two payment of agreement that was done a year ago.
Okay. And this is in, and this is in the budget?
Uh, yes, yes, sir. It's, uh, we did the agreement one year ago. It locked in the cost for the three years that it's for. And this is just the renewal. And the, the quote for it, it follows a quote that's got today's date on it, but they actually allow the entire month of December for renewal. So everything's good on it.
Okay. Motion to pass.
Second.
Thank you.
Any, any other discussion? Darrell, why don't you go ahead and stay up there because the next one is...
And the next one's the same question.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. That's J. Now K, what is your question on Work Day?
Same. Has this all been now approved? Jenny, everything's okay? This has all been?
Yes.
Legally sufficient?
That was a huge effort. It took Kent and others in our office a long time going back and forth and it, and it is legally sufficient document that we bring to you today.
And it's not unfavorable to the county, et cetera, et cetera?
Correct. In fact, that was actually, you know, we worked with them and did get things more favorable to the county.
Great. All, I mean, uh...
Is there a motion?
Motion to pass.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
L, is the Central Square Company, it's also a contract?
Same questions.
Is it ready, Jenny?
This is...
Item L.
Central Square.
It has, it's the ASP One Solution. It's basically an annual maintenance renewal for the One Solution system that we use.
Yes. This is the item that Kent Brown also worked on in our office and helped to provide.
Thank you. And so it's good to go, Jenny?
Yes.
Okay. Motion passed.
Second.
There was an HR question, Melinda, on item E from Commissioner Gonzalez. She's ready.
I have a question on...
Let me come back to it.
Some of this, if I look in at the personnel and it's got, when there's an appointment to senior clerk, eight to 15, that's a big step. Are those monies coming in from, coming from their department? Are they paying for that? But that's a, that's really a promotion. It's a...
I believe you're looking at the temporary...
Looking at Texas Assessor Collector.
Okay. There was a temporary employee that was hired as a full-time. And so it's an appointment because it's a temporary.
Okay. But they have their funds in their department?
Yes.
Okay. Also on information technology, from a 23 to a 28. So that's also, money's coming in from their funds.
Yes, sir. It was a, it was a promotion from within the department, from a, from a position that was in a 28 and promoted into a position that was a 32.
Also, they got a district attorney's office. It's a promotion from 16 to a 22, which is six steps. And that's also money's coming from their department, right?
Yes, sir. Those are all budgeted positions. It's just a promotion from one position to, to the position that's a pay step 22.
And also on the, on the medical examiner, on the promotion for Silva, you going from a 1301 to a 2001, that's seven steps. And those monies are there also?
That was on...
This is ARPA funds, I guess. But...
Okay, which depart, I'm sorry, which department was it?
ME, Medical Examiner. It's about the third, one, two, three, four from the top.
For...
It's ARPA funds, but have we done that with ARPA funds already? That was my question, but...
I'm sorry, I'm not seeing which one. On which page?
ARPA Fund Medical Examiner Silva, Jocelyn Silva, promotion.
Okay.
301 to a 2001, seven steps. So you're going from 1,200 to 1,500. Is that a promotion within their monies or the, or the ARPA funds that they're going to get? I mean, if it's ARPA funds, I don't know why we're doing it now. I don't know. Have we allocated any ARPA funds for that, but...
Yes, there were ARPA funds used for two positions there at the medical examiner's office, for medical examiner investigators.
Are those the same investigators that we approved? I know we approved two of them. But, but I thought it was coming from somebody else's budget.
I can go back and double-check it, but I'm sure they were through ARPA funds. I can, I'll go back and, and...
Yeah, just check it out. And also in the next one, on Solis, you know, I don't, I don't, doesn't, I don't know, maybe it's, I don't know if it's a typo or not, but it's a 2001 to a 2001. So how can, how can there be a promotion if it's a 2001 to a 2001? The monies are different, but the steps, the steps are the same.
I'll check on that one. It looks like that was a, probably a typo.
Okay.
But I'll, I'll get back going to you on both of those.
I'm going to have you go check and come back and we'll come back later and we will approve item E in just a moment. You're going to check on the typo and ARPA funds, Adey, you can confirm they were given for the investigators and those were approved at the time.
I remember, I remember approving that, but I'm, I mean, I just make sure it's correct in here, right?
Yes.
The other one, the one that, it's a jailer, it's aiming from a 1701 to 0215. So it's, it's coming down?
No. The 0215, that's the law enforcement pay schedule. So it isn't, it's, it's a promotion. They're going from a, from a jailer. They've received their, they're going from a cadet corrections officer and they've received their jailer's license. So they're automatically promoted to corrections officers, one.
Okay. But probably a couple more. We've got to go. One's a constable one, deputy constable two, this is from an 02 to a 22. Is that correct?
Thank you.
Yes. He went from a deputy constable one and through years of service, he's now been promoted to a deputy constable two. So that's the 0215 to a 2215.
And there's money they have in there?
Yes, sir.
Okay. My last one is medical examiner Hayden. It says here from 701 to a 2001, it's 13 steps.
And that's going from a temporary employee to a regular, part-time, a regular, part-time medical examiner investigator.
Part-time. And that money's also there?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Just, I just want to make sure we, you know, that, that we clarify that everything. It's not really coming from general account, you know, so.
And I'll come back on the, if you would, please just come back on that. And would you send, do you have Commissioner Gonzalez's contact on email?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
Maybe you guys can work together before so that you can ask all your questions and he can be assured that all those personnel are to his satisfaction.
Thank you.
All right. In that case, that's a hold. And Kara reminds me on number L, she does not, not number, but letter L. She thinks that we need to, we had the motion and a second. I'm not sure who the second was at this time, Kara. But I'll go ahead and re, re-ask for the motion to approve L on, Gonzalez was the second? All right. Then all those in favor signify by saying aye. This is the One Solution. It was the last of the three that were brought back to court. All right. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 We're going to advance item 32, 3A2. We have an interlocal agreement between the We have an interlocal agreement between the City of Corpus Christi, the County of Nueces, the City of Bishop. It's relating to the Consolidated Emergency Dispatch Center Services. We know that to be MetroCom. And with us today is Peter Collins, who has been assisting in the operating committee. He's the Chair of the Operating Committee. And we'll ask you to take the podium and tell us about the interlocal agreement. You have worked with Jenny Dorsey, our county attorney, and this is ready to be approved today.
This is, is ready except for one small thing that we need to add. And so if the court would consider just passing it subject to, and it's very, very small, we just need to add where and to whom the remittance actually goes. It's just a small little portion that was neglected.
Yeah, we'll let, we'll make that subject to here in just a moment. Peter, tell us briefly about this good agreement so that we can put everybody together on this system.
Good morning Judge, Commissioners, Peter Collins. This is actually, has been in the works for almost four years. When I first came and I met with the Commissioners Court, one of the questions, and I think it was you Commissioner Gonzalez, asked about the smaller cities as far as being, having dispatch services being provided by MetroCom. And MetroCom is, you know, the owners are the city and the county. It's a strong partnership.
Okay.
We work very well together. The judge, on the first meeting with the board, which actually consists of the judge, and at that time, God, I forgot the mayor's name, that's, that's bad, Joe. During that meeting, what actually occurred was to request to review the interlocal that has never been changed for a number of years. So we went ahead, we formed a strong team between the county and the city. We met and we revised that interlocal. And added that interlocal, we created what was called the MetroCom Operations Committee. But it was, the people appointed to it were actually operational staff members in MetroCom or in the Budget Office, also in the Sheriff's Department, Police Department. And their mission was to go ahead and deal with a number of different operational issues with MetroCom. And this was actually one of them. And it got complex because when you look at the cost for a city of the size of Bishop or Drisco, what happens is, how do you make it affordable? And how do you put some kind of science behind it? So it isn't like you're reaching out of the sky and you say, here's your magic number. So we can bring consistency for anybody that wants to join or have MetroCom provide dispatching services, which is logical in this area to do that. That's a pretty common practice. So working closely with Chief White, a big whiteboard, drawing out different solutions, and we came up with one. We looked at the total number of call for service a year. Then what we did is you take the total budget, divide it, and that's how much it is per, per call. Drisco, Bishop have a lot less call than the county and the city. And then we applied that formula to their projected call volume and that's where the number has come up from. But this took a lot of work over the years. And Bishop is the first, the next one is Drisco. It's all in the works. So to me, this has been very exciting and I do thank the support of the judge, the Commissioners Court, and also the new city mayor because it needed to carry on, Mayor Paulette. So for a moment, Chris White, Chief White, has a word here. And any questions for me at this time?
Judge Commissioners, thank you so much for this opportunity. We started working with Bishop in the summertime, I think around June, when he requested to come onboard with MetroCom. We already had Drisco onboard. We dispatched for all in Nueces County, the ESDs, Nueces County Sheriff's Department. And Chief Day wanted to come onboard. So with the formula we had developed and what we'd come up with through the Operations Committee, we started working together. And what we presented was agreed upon by all of us in Commissioners, in the Operations Committee. So that's what we're bringing forward today. They will come onboard this week and we'll start dispatching for them. And they're looking forward to it. And I think we, we're slow to getting everybody in the county through our MetroCom system. The only ones that will be outstanding after this will be Rochester. So, and I don't know where they stand at this moment, but we're excited about this. Thank you so much.
That's great. Thank you.
Thank you for working with Bishop and the smaller communities. I really appreciate that.
Oh, yes, sir. Yes, sir. And so Chief Day, if you don't know him, he's a great guy and he's, he's looking forward to coming onboard.
Let me get a motion and a second.
Second.
Okay. And all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And just a quick comment.
Contingent upon, it needs to be a part of the motion.
Oh, right. Contingent upon Jenny's addition being done, that would be...
The addition has to do on where and who to send the remittance to. And to be honest with you, do we have those answers? We can get those on the record right now?
Yes, so just like in Drisco, they're, they're remitted to the City of Corpus Christi and to the MetroCom budget.
All right.
As a revenue.
She's gonna write that down, okay?
And so that way, that goes into our budgeting for MetroCom, which you know is separate from the Police Department. It isn't a shared budget with the county.
Right.
So we can manage those monies.
Right. Okay. And we'll go ahead and make that amendment, Kara.
Where and who?
He agrees with that amendment. Okay?
Yeah, and Bishop would be the same way.
Yes, sir. Bishop would do the same thing. Yes, sir.
I move the amendments.
The document that was provided doesn't have that information. We'll be supplying that.
That's right. It's approved subject to the filling of the blanks on where and who, where and to. And just, the comment is, is that MetroCom flies under the radar in many ways as far as the actual, you know, day-to-day because it's handled in a different building, right? It's got, it's got its own operation. And what they do there is, you know, first response to the nth degree. They are the lifeline for everybody in a 911 emergency situation. And we've taken MetroCom and we've really advanced the ball. And we've done that because the two of you, I would really wanna comment on Pat Eldridge and her amazing, you know, work ethic and the entire staff. But we hope that you will keep coming back and updating us because we've modernized the CAD system, we've modernized the salaries, and there's still, we, now in English and Spanish. There's so much work that still needs to be done. So I'd like to see you guys maybe give us another, give the court another update and I'll certainly be watching. But getting everybody in the county integrated is the way to keep everybody safe. It really is. So today's a good day. Thanks for all the hard work.
Thank you Judge.
Yeah, thank you.
Excuse me Kara, I wasn't here to cast my vote. Can I still cast a vote?
Yeah, you have to vote on the amendment.
Oh, yeah?
I'm gonna do it right now. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 I'm sure when Modest comes back, he'll, he'll give you his vote here as well. Okay, guys, well, I know you all wanna get back.
Thank you very much Judge.
Thank you. Okay, we're gonna go back. And I'm gonna ask... You know what I'm gonna do is, let's just take a five-minute break, okay? That way I can get Commissioner Modest back in the room too. And then we'll come right back into the Port of Corpus Christi's presentation. It's the annual report. It's gonna be item 3A1 and that'll give Tim the time to load the presentation. Tim, do you have a presentation on, you've got a thumb drive? Let we just take a quick bathroom break and then we'll come back. I'm gonna sign these and we're gonna get all Commissioners here and present for this presentation. Gonna gavel us back in. You know Kara, I did not give you a time, but it was 10 o'clock by my estimate on the dot when I looked up. And now it's 10:20. And we call that delta time, the five-minute break, 10 to 10:20. And we are now gonna come into a really important presentation because it's an annual report that we do every year. It's with the Port of Corpus Christi. We do have a presentation that you'll see on your screen. But first, let me welcome with gratitude for an amazing public service career himself. We've been honoring people for public service all morning. And please welcome Chairman Charlie Zahn.
Thank you Judge. And by the way Judge, we call that being on island time.
Island time, there you go.
I thought Commissioner Chesney would tell you that. Judge, on behalf of the Port of Corpus Christi and the three appointees by Nueces County, we appreciate this opportunity that we have to come before you and tell you about the unbelievable year that the Port of Corpus Christi has had this past year. We, I had somebody ask me if I, if we had any news stories from time to time with the Port of Corpus Christi. And I said, it seems like that almost weekly that we're breaking a new weekly record, monthly record, quarterly record, and annual record. And we've been doing that now for five years in a row. And so it's, it's because that you appoint people like the ones that I work with and that lets us do the job that we're doing. And it's because that we were able to go out and sneak Sean Strawbridge into Texas. And it's been kinda hard to make him a Texan, but he's getting there. But he's also put together what I consider to be the best staff that anybody could have in any company in, in the country. And that staff is why you've got the number one port in the country. I'm gonna do that, we're gonna do our presentation Judge with your permission in, in three phases. I'm gonna talk about numbers. I'm gonna have Commissioner Gully talk about the infrastructure projects that we've been involved with. And I'm gonna have Vice Chairman Hillier talk to you about our community involvement here in Nueces County. These are all really three important keys to the success of the Port of Corpus Christi and we wanna make you aware of it. I thank you for, I'm gonna go through some numbers with you that, you know, we had 15.7 million tons of LNG this last year, which makes us the second largest LNG export gateway in the U.S. And when Cheniere finishes this train that they're working on now, we're gonna move to number one there. We did 167.3 million tons in 2021, which is a 4.7% increase over our prior record year. And staff has informed me that if everything holds the way it is, we'll go over 185 million tons in 2022, which again is a new record for us. When I came on the Port Commission 11 years ago, appointed by this very body, we had 48,000 people that worked directly and indirectly with the Port of Corpus Christi. And over the last 11 years, because of the tremendous growth in, in Nueces and San Patricio County, we now have 98,000 people that have port-related jobs in the coastal bend. Our economic impact is substantial. We do $400 billion per year in the United States. We do $400 million per day in good value movement. We do $40 billion a day for taxes and $6 billion, I mean, per year. $6 billion per year for Corpus Christi. And for the first time, I can look at you and tell you that, that we moved 10,521 pieces of military equipment, equipment over 11 vessels. Makes us the number one strategic military port now in the country. I would tell you that we were nowhere near that when Hurricane Harvey hit. Our dear colleagues in Beaumont were severely affected by Hurricane Harvey and they brought a, a request to the Port of Corpus Christi to help with a movement. And our staff did such an outstanding job that we now handle most of the military cargo that is shipped through the waterways and we're the number one strategic military port. We've had a 15-time increase in crude exports since the oil export ban was lifted in 2015. We moved for a new record 16.8 million tons in October of this year. We did 167.3 million tons exported in 2021. As I say, we're projected to do almost 185 million this year. We did 48.3 million tons in Q3 of this year. And we're now moving 2.2 million barrels of crude oil per day in October. And that's as a result of the situation with President Putin. You know, the United States has responded and, and we being the number one export port in the United States have responded also. And so we're now moving over 2 million barrels of oil a day. We have some significant capital investments in the coastal bend, which not only create tax base for entities like yours, but also create employment opportunities and good employment opportunities. We have $65 billion worth of capital investments going on in the coastal bend at this time. And 12 billion of that is foreign funds that are coming into Texas in the coastal bend. The next chart just kinda tells you what I was telling you a minute ago. If you go back to January 1, the extreme left of that, that chart there, you'll see when the oil export ban was lifted and the TOT was the first, first vessel to leave the Port of Corpus Christi with oil destined for other than the United States. It went to Europe. And as you can see here in, in September of 2022, we've gone from almost zero exports to almost 2 million barrels of oil a day that we're exporting. As I said, our tonnage for October set a new record and is above the same period by almost 13%. Our year-to-date revenue is 17% higher than budget and 25% higher than our same period last year. Year-to-date EBITDA exceeding both budget, up 41%, and same period of, of 2021, up 22%. Our inbound railcar movements are well below last year due to fewer grain movements to ADM, while outbound's are slightly above last year. And our capital spending is below budget and, and above last year. I had the honor in, in November of, of representing my fellow Commissioners as I gave the state of the port. And I told people as we put that presentation together that it was gonna be a really interesting presentation because we were gonna cover our 100-year history. You know, we were 100 years old in November and yet we had the record that we had as far as, as our business operations were concerned that I just described to you. But we touched on the fact that, you know, we were formed as an agricultural port and over the period of time, we've changed that model to an energy port and we're now the energy port of the Americas. We're on pace, as I said earlier, to be, have another record year this year. I'd like to at this time ask Commissioner Gully if he would talk about the infrastructure. And we'll be available for questions Judge afterwards.
Thank you. Thank you. Dr. Gully?
Thank you. Brian Gully, I think everybody knows me. I was here last week actually. When you have, as Charlie mentioned, $400 million worth of product going out of the port every day with all our customers, it takes a lot of docks, it takes a lot of pipelines, it takes a lot of rail, it takes a lot of trucks, it takes a lot of roads, it takes a lot of infrastructure. So we're constantly taking the money that we make in the port as, as part of our, our fees and turning it back into repairing, repairing the port. I'm a little taller than Charlie. Repairing the infrastructure that we have. And these docks, as you might imagine, dock giant ships. And so when you have to start repairing things like this that are in 50-foot of water and have to support ships and barges and tugs and the like, you, it, it takes a lot of money and it takes a lot of time. So we currently have about 70 projects that we're doing. I think 20, 48 are capital, 22 are maintenance project. When I talk about a maintenance project, I'm talking about maybe rebuilding or repairing a dock. And this can be tens of millions of dollars sometimes. So this, it's, it's a big ongoing giant industrial problem, but it's something that we, we try to keep up with. Our biggest project, and the one we're probably most proud of, is our channel widening and deepening project, which we have been working on in a port and those that came before us for about 30 years now. And finally, it's come to fruition the last couple of years. And the final piece of the puzzle, which is the fourth phase that's inside the inner harbor, finally got approved by the government. And it looks like we're gonna be putting that out to bids shortly and hopefully have it completed by 2024. I've, I've given you a list of accomplishments that the ports have done and projects and stuff we've done over the past year because there's too many of them to talk about right now. And I promised Judge Gonzalez that I would keep this kind of short. The other thing we're real proud of is our environmental. We have, we've been a green port since 2007. We were the first, first port to achieve that, that designation. All of our electricity used by the port is renewable energy. And that's been that way for, for several years, long before I got on the commission. And, and we take great pride, we spend almost 22% of our working capital on environmental-related projects. We had a visit by Earthia Nance, who's the head of, the director of the EPA. And, you know, the EPA is not the kind of people that you impress very easily. But she was quite impressed with, with the cleanliness of the port and the clarity of the water. She said it was the cleanest water she'd ever, she'd, she'd seen in the ports that she'd visited. So we feel like we're doing a real good job there. Another thing I'd like to, to thank Charlie for because I, I think, and you may not realize this, but the way the port works is we work on three committees. There's, there's a security committee that takes care of the security of the port, obviously. There's an audit committee. And then there's a long-range planning committee that does the long-range projects and the real estate. And we're, your, your appointees, I think, are quite well-positioned. Catherine is the chairman of our, our security committee and it's run like clockwork since she took over last year. I served on that with her. I chair the long-range planning committee, which, which is one of the very powerful committees that, that's very important. And we, we spend a lot of money too through that committee. So Catherine also serves on that with me. And there's only three people in each of these committees. So we're well-positioned, I guess, because of our tenure and because of our chairman, who gets to select the people he thinks are best suited for the various committees. And it... And it gives us a very good position. I think you need to be proud of, of the fact that you are probably better positioned than some of the other governmental entities, appointees. I would like to thank also, because through these last two or three years, we've, we've, I think we've all worked very hard and we've done very well, but we appreciate the fact that as, as, as commissioners, you appoint us and you, and we go take the oath and we go to work, and we work very hard. And, and you guys kind of turn us loose to do that work and trust us to do the best we can. And sometimes we feel like we're not reporting back to you enough, and I would encourage each of you, and anytime you have any question about the port whatsoever, pick up the phone, call Catherine, call Charlie, call myself, and we love to talk about the port. We'll talk more about the port than you probably want to hear. So I appreciate that, what you've done for us, and I, and, and I'll tell you, I promise you we're working very hard to make you guys proud of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Hilliard?
Good morning, Judge. Commissioners, Catherine Hilliard, Vice Chair of the Port. We're going to move along to slide number 13. So I get to lead with one of my favorite things to talk about, which is our communities and strengthening our communities. So the port has always, at least since I've been there, prioritized the investment of its dollars in our community, into programs, initiatives, activities that improve the quality of life, not only for Corpus, but for our entire region. So one of the things that, that we have really strived to do is educate our community, educate even our youth. We now have, I don't know if you've seen it in the newspapers, but we're calling it the portable lab. So it's going around to different schools because we've recognized that it's not only important to keep our community and our adults and our stakeholders educated about what the port does, but it's also important to start educating, you know, our kids. The port is really the economic engine of this community, and, and we need to start educating them about that. So I'm very proud of that fact. As you all may know, we have two times of the year that we call for sponsorship. So anybody in the community who is in need, nonprofit organizations, organizations that need some help, will have two opportunities to ask for support from the port. As of December 1, the Port of Corpus Christi has invested $4.3 million right back into our community. Now, we try as hard as we can to make sure that the requests for money fit within one of the port's areas of impact. So we have five. If it relates to community vitality, economic development, education and workforce development, healthcare and safety, or sustainability and environmental stewardship, we are likely going to give you some money. We received a total of 512 requests in 2022 and approved 406, so roughly about 80%. Just yesterday, we passed a resolution authorizing the expenditure of up to 5% of our gross income in 2023 to go to the PND fund, not to exceed 5.9 million, but continuing in 2023 to invest significant dollars in our community. And if I have anything to say about that, we're going to spend every last dime of it. As Brian mentioned, I'm the head of the Safety Committee and very proud of it. We have, in the years that I've chaired it, really strengthened the committee. It's really a robust conversation and exchange of information, not only within the port, but really within the region. So with regard to safety, I can tell you that, security, I'm sorry, well, safety, safety is paramount to the port, and we take it seriously. We're investing significant time and resources in protecting our community, our customers, and the port. Super proud of our emergency management department. Danielle Hale has just really done a superb job managing it. She has really taken the lead in organizing these massive intra-agency trainings. On October 12 was the most recent example. It was a full-scale exercise. We had agencies from Nuasis and Sandpack Counties. The scenario was a tanker truck hauling hazardous materials loses control, crashes on K. Bailey Hutchinson Road, multiple injuries. First time that we had hazmat teams from Portland and Corpus Fire Departments that took part in this exercise together. In our last security meeting, Chief Rocha joined us, along with Assistant Tony Pettis, Assistant Chief who specializes in hazmat, Tony Pettis. They were so highly complimentary of our emergency management team and the port's role in taking a lead on these joint exercises and taking collaboration really with all these agencies to the next level. So just, just very, very proud of our team and their efforts in that regard, and we intend to really, we've challenged Danielle to take it really to even the next level in 2023. We also had the Assistant Chief of Police from Moransus Pass come to our commission meeting yesterday to give us accolades, in his words, for, for the port's leadership and commitment to safety for the entire region. The fireboat, it was a long time coming, but it's here. One of the fastest and most advanced fireboats in the world. And for those of you interested in engines, it apparently has four 1,000 horsepower Caterpillar diesel engines, four firefighting pumps, flows up to 17,000 gallons per minute, top speed of up to 40 knots. We invite all of you to come and have a look, maybe even take a ride. It's really a, a game-changing asset for the port and for the region. Next slide, please. Another thing I'm super proud of as head of security is the Port Security Grant Projects that we've been awarded. So in 2022 alone, we were awarded almost $3 million, so the highest among all port authorities receiving awards. Project number one, Security Command Center renovation. So we're repurposing our old admin building, and it is now going to become not only the Port Security Command Center, but it will also serve as the Emergency Operations Center in times of need. We were awarded 1.2 million for that. Project two, Southside Marine Center. So you just heard me talk about our new fireboat. We needed a suitable berth location and support facilities landside for police and fires. So we were awarded 1.3 million to construct and, and build out those facilities. Project three was a bulk materials west access road lighting and cameras. So we're going to improve and install security, lighting and surveillance camera, fiber optic work that will serve to allow for security monitoring of the new west side entry-exit point for bulk materials terminal. So, you know, this is really a testament to our staff. They've worked hard to develop a strong reputation for being good stewards of this grant money. You know, they, they are awarded it, they are able to, to really deploy it efficiently, and that's, that's a big deal when it comes to applying for future grants. So I'm very, very proud of them in that regard, and still so much to do in 2023 and beyond. So also wanted to take this opportunity to say thank you. Thank you for your support. You really have been gracious and supportive in the four years that I've served on the commission, and really, like Brian said, have given us the autonomy to do our work with no pressure and no strings, which is, which is a really big deal. You know, we took an oath to the port, and you've allowed us to carry out that oath and do what's best for the port and this region, but, but primarily for the port. And so I'm, I'm very appreciative. Again, still lots of work to do, exciting times ahead. Thank you, and we'll take any questions you might have.
Perfect. And I want to just remark on what a great presentation that is. Hopefully, well, we all have it in our, in our email box so that we can use it as we can share the good news of what a record year it is. I just want to say yippee for the 5%. I remember the days when I sat on audit and it was a stretch to get to 2%. The fights we had to get to 2%. And Rosie can tell you, she's here, how much community matters. And to get to 5% with the chairman and the vice chairman, I just know that's your leadership. And I'll, I'll be honest with you, it's, it's deserved for the community, but it's also the right thing to do because we're doing so well. And if there comes a time where maybe, God forbid, right, but if there ever to be a time that it would reverse, you would have flexibility to come back. But right now is our season to celebrate. So the 5%, which is the maximum allowed by, by statute under the Water Code, has always been the goal if the revenues, you know, showcase that that would be appropriate, and it does. And so I didn't know that that happened yesterday. So I'm just, I think the community wins, and so I hope that you guys message that. Just want to also recognize that we do have, do we still have three? Okay. Well, I was going to say, I'm recognizing Rosie Colleen, who's here with the port, and also our CEO, Sean Strawbridge, who's now the American Association of Port Authorities Chairman, and Tim Acosta, who's with the port, taking photos and making sure that this good message gets out. And of course, I'm not going to forget Omar, sitting right in front of me. Omar Garcia is with the Port of Corpus Christi. He's the Chief of External Affairs, which is a fancy way of saying that he really keeps up with that one slide where all those companies are listed on it. He really has a real relationship with each and every one of them. And by working as a team, look at what you guys have been able to accomplish. It's, as they say, it's a, it's a great day in the neighborhood because look at, look how, look how you have affected lives in such a meaningful way, from community to safety, emergency management, of course. We like to say you stole our best gal, Danielle Hale, and, and so many other good things coming down the road. I was just going to ask if anyone had any questions that I know all of you would be happy to answer if, if one does come up. Commissioners, modest?
You know, not so much a question, but a comment. I, you know, we're all busy, as y'all are, and time gets away from you. You may not have time to sit down and even watch TV, and I know I'm one of them. I don't ever watch TV. But lately, I guess because of Thanksgiving holiday and just getting ready for, for this holiday, I've been able to, to be around the TV a little bit more, maybe watching a little bit more football. But every time I look up, I see that great port commercial. It is one of the best. It, it, it's just, it's a, it's a, it's a, makes you feel good, but it gives you the confidence of, especially emergency services, talking about Danielle Hale and her team, and just the, God forbid, the port we know is ready for any emergency, natural disaster or otherwise. And y'all have responded, and I just, I, I, I've seen one commercial, and you think, okay, I've seen it, it's enough. No. I like literally, every time, I literally stop what I'm doing and just stand in front of the TV and watch it, because I'm just amazed at everything that's put together. It, it gives you a sense of, of all the team that you have, like you said, Vice Chair Hilliard. It's, you know, partnerships with other municipalities and other governmental entities here in our area that takes to have a proper emergencies, emergency response and be able just to be prepared in general. So that commercial goes a long way in making me feel good, knowing the work that y'all are doing. I hope that the rest of the public feels that way, too, when they, when they watch that. And then also the giving, you know, y'all, you don't have to do the giving that you do, and that the amount, I didn't realize it was 80% of, of giving for those who are seeking. And, and I'm, and I'm like, gosh, y'all are, y'all are advertising a lot. I didn't realize it was in the hundreds of, of proposals that are submitted, and the fact that you can, can give up to about 80% of those requests says a lot as well. So the giving that you're doing, you're not just operating in a bubble. You're, you're, you're seeing the needs that are out there and you're responding to them, and you're giving back to the community, to all those worthwhile organizations that, you know, security, public health, and, and economic development and other areas. So I want to thank y'all for, for all that you're doing to represent us. I, I assumed today, when I saw this on the agenda, we know schedules don't always work out, so sometimes we're lucky we get one, or maybe all three of the commissioners, but maybe, you know, our CEO and the, the other staff can't make it, but to have all of y'all here today means a lot. So thank y'all for coming. Chairman, thank you for you and your team.
I've got to do one disclosure, though, on Danielle Hale. I called my dear, dear friend Lloyd Neal when I saw that application, and I told him, I said, Judge, I'll never hire anybody out from under you, and he gave me permission to hire him.
Well, now, and of course, in one of your photos, you might remember, for those of you that have worked here a long time, Christopher Boyce, who's also here, is, is standing next to Danielle. So you all have, and, and we need it, right? But we need it because there's so much growth. And as awesome as it is, there's always, you know, a potential threat. And so you've got to have that protection. So you've got the A-team over there. I do love that commercial, it's great. Well, are there any other questions? We, as you said, somebody said earlier, Brian, Commissioner Gully said, you want to talk port, I'll talk all day long. So I know that we could talk all day long, but unfortunately, we've got so many other matters pressing, but if there are any other questions or comments, I'm just so tickle pink about the 5%, and I guess I hadn't read the paper this morning, but Tim, I hope you get that out.
Excuse me, Judge?
Because 5% is a big deal. Yes.
I just want to say, tell the port thank you. Charlie, thank you for what you all have done. But what I really like is the employment that you all do for our community. Okay, 98,000 employees is a lot to talk about, brag about. So thank you all very much.
Thank you, Robert. Thank you all for the opportunity to come before.
Thank you. Thank you guys so very much. Likewise, likewise to all of you all. Merry Christmas. Okay, guys, we're going to move on to item number three, and I think this is in order, but I will just make sure from Jenny's perspective, this is the inter-local agreement between Nuasis County and Nuasis County Mental Health Intellectual Disabilities, otherwise known as MHID, the hospital district. This all relates to the jail diversion, crisis intervention, and jail-based competency restoration services. Jenny, we're all good to go here?
Which item are you referencing?
I'm on number three now, just back in regular order, regular agenda 3A3.
I believe this one is not, hold on, this is the jail diversion one? Let me go back, because there were two. There is one that is the normal funding.
This is the normal one, but how about if I pass on it and you check on it?
It says jail diversion on it.
Right. This is the actual normal jail diversion program that they have with MHID. The hospital district has a normal agreement.
Yes, this is not for the build-out.
That's correct.
Yes, then that is ready to go.
All right. That's what I thought.
This is for one year only, right?
And what number?
We do it every year.
Yeah, okay.
This is 3A3. This is the normal contract, and it, I'll make a motion to approve this inter-local agreement.
Second?
Second. Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Okay.
Did y'all do two, or did you skip two?
We did two with Peter Collins and Chief White with MetroCom.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah. So I didn't check it all. I checked off the wrong one, sorry.
All right. The next one is going to be the construction, it's item number four, and we're going to get some information about the comparison on procurement methods for LA, I'm sorry, for Shelter Planners of America and the recommendation for the use of competitive seal proposals as the preferred method of construction for the animal care center. I'm going to recognize JP Graham. He's here to talk about this. So just as setting the table, let, there you go. Thank you, Connie. She's got it up on the screen, screen. This is the animal care center that we've already approved, and now we're ready to get to that construction phase. And so we're looking at procurement and ways to do it best. JP, I'll let you take over now.
Yes, thank you, Judge. Good morning to you, commissioners.
Morning.
And you're exactly right, we are looking to describe for you one of the recommendations from this team, and that is to use competitive seal proposal as the preferred method. And if I can get the next slide, please. We'll talk about three of the primary methods that are used in construction delivery, and then there are three others that we won't touch on, including design, build, construction manager agency, and job order contracting.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, just.
So I will carry on with my presentation.
Yes, I think Connie will help us.
Yeah.
Somebody's not on mute, just double-check yourselves, everybody. Okay, go ahead.
All right, Connie, if I can get that slide deck back, okay. I watch Connie on Zoom pretty regularly, and I know you have one of the most difficult jobs in the room, trying to make sure we bounce back and forth between the presentations correctly, so thank you. If you'll please advance to the next slide, we'll talk about construction, competitive bidding. This is a method that's very traditional, it's something that you've probably grown familiar with here in the county. I know we've seen it on a few of the other projects that we've managed. You hear it sometimes called hard bid. In this method, you receive a lump sum price from general contractors, and those are received only when the construction documents reach 100% completion. So we are at that point with Shelter Planners of America, so this could be. So we are at that point with Shelter Planners of America, so this could be used, but in this case, um, the general contractor is selected only based on their low price. And so if you select a contractor based on low price, there are some concerns that come into play regarding whether or not they can or can't perform construction of the building or project type that you're considering. So that's one reason why competitive bidding maybe falls down the rank order of priorities and preferences. We also, with competitive bidding, uh, know that it is good for projects with very simple scope and very completed, uh, bid documents. You'll see this used a lot of time on road types of projects, civil infrastructure projects where the quantities are known, you have X linear feet of pipe, or so many culvert crossings, et cetera, where you can define those quantities very clearly, it's a good method for that type of project. But it is poor for projects that are complex or have unknown and concealed issues, possibly you're asking for the project to have some phasing, et cetera. Makes this method a little bit more tough, uh, to implement. Next slide, please. Continuing with the competitive bidding concept, we have some graphics here that help you to understand the schedule components of this method. So you will complete the design at 100%, then the project will be bid, then you will make an award process, and the contractor will begin to construct the project. A three-step, design, bid, build process. Maybe you've heard that term in the past. Next slide, please. Here we indicate some of the pros and cons. Um, one of the pros is that it's very traditional, it's something that a lot, a lot of owners are very accustomed to. Um, it, it makes sense in the brain that it's, you know, working on a low price, and that's the best way to award a project. It does require a very firm project scope, as I mentioned earlier, and it is highly competitive from a pricing standpoint. Now, one of the cons, or some of the cons, is that there are some risks that come from cost overruns when there are gaps in the design potentially, or there is a need for some design phase input. You might, you might lose some of the advantages if you go with this method when you're working through design phase services and wanting to integrate a contractor. One of the other aspects of this process that is noteworthy is that it does tend to be a little bit more confrontational during construction because the contractor has bid the project for the lowest possible price, and what they are looking to do obviously is maximize the profitability on the job. And any discrepancy that appears throughout the course of the work does become subject to a little stronger, uh, set of arm wrestling matches to get to the, the best value for the owner.
Can I just ask a quick question?
Yeah, you bet.
And I'm kinda confused by this. I, I thought that, um, because it says Shelter Planners on the agenda, I thought we weren't using Shelter Planners anymore on this.
No, Shelter Planners of America is fully under contract, 100% design complete.
Okay, so what was the issue on this one? We reduced it because we reduced the size of it or something?
That's right, the project has been reduced to match the $4.2 million budget.
How much?
I thought, all right, I don't know why I thought we had brought in somebody else to, um, do the work on this one, maybe that was on another project, I apologize.
I think you're thinking of the Smith Group for the ME project.
I am, you're right, and as soon as I said that, you're right. So, um, so that's fully designed, and it's at the 4.2 million dollar level, which is what the court, and, and, um, I was just, and I'd, I'd asked Teresa, and I haven't, she's trying to find it out, can someone also tell me how this is being funded? Again, the breakdown of the funding, I had asked for that late, and, and I just need to know that before we go on to. So that was it, go ahead.
Sure, you bet. Continuing on with the next slide, Connie, if you don't mind, just a depiction of the team. Uh, the teams are always an important concept to how these projects are delivered, so we have the, uh, the county, obviously, at the top of the pyramid, then you've got the team of the program manager, the general contractor, and the architect engineer, all working and, and holding contracts directly with the county. The awarded general contractor would then hold all the different subcontracts, and you see those subcontracts outlined in the box below.
Okay, I mean, I've got a question before we go any further too. So we, right now, the, uh, Planners of America, which are the architects, right?
That's right.
Designers, so they're finished already with their complete? Are they're complete already, they're finished with their design and architect, right?
The answer is yes.
So they're 100% complete?
Yes.
Okay, so now the designer give, they have given us, I guess, or somebody, is that we're gonna go for that, that's probably gonna go for bid for the construction, right? So, and you said, we, we, I know at one point was a $5 million, uh, package here, and then we went down to what?
Your total allocated cost for this project is $4.2 million.
I don't, I thought it was under $4 million.
The construction amount is under $4 million, but the total project cost is $4.2 million.
Now, I think, I, I just, this is why I, I, when we reduced it, I thought it was gonna be, we're gonna stay under $4 million, but, you know, and I talked to Commissioner Modis at one point, and I, I just think that we need to kind of get a breakdown of everything in January, where are we going with this thing? Because, um, you know, for me to go back and say, or, and I told this to Commissioner Modis, I said, why, we're spending $4 million on an animal con, control of.
Thank you.
Uh, facility, but yet we can't spend that money in the senior centers and all that, but, so that's still my concern that I had last time. So, uh, I don't know, I just, and I so, and I supported the program, you know, and I, I think it's a good program, you know, but I never agreed on, on, on all this money that we're gonna spend, and now we started with under, when we did that, we're gonna stay under the $4 million. So I don't, I don't know, I just think maybe we need to come back in January and really look at this project, you know, and, uh, I'd like to meet with Commissioner Modis, you know, later on, but, you know, I, I think that, we just need, I, I just need to, I'm still not there with over $4 million, I'm sorry, but, you know, I don't know how we got over $4 million again, uh, when we were under $4 million. Now, I think the bottom line at one time, we had a three-point, uh, whatever it was, 3.4 with the judges and Commissioner Modis' input. And I think from, from, from the, from the COs or wherever it came from, it was only be a 2.2, 2.5 million in whatever, uh.
Teresa just put us, put that on the li, it's right to your left, to your left. She just brought this up. That's why I wanted to look at too, because I couldn't remember.
So this is why, I'm not, I, I just don't, I didn't want to go up on this, and that's why I brought it last time, so. I, I not, you know, I don't hate to table this thing till January, the 18th, and this Commissioner Modis feels like we really don't have to, but, um, but I mean, I yield to him, but, but I just feel we need to really discuss this a little bit more.
So today is not a funding discussion, today is to figure out how we will save money as a county on the bidding procedures.
We can find that in January, Judge.
Okay, excuse me one second, I just want to make sure that you know that what we're doing today. The purpose of today is to choose the method of procurement because every day that the, that you wait, it's going to be more expensive, and the 4.2 million was actually a motion that came either you made it or seconded it, maybe Modis made it, but you seconded it. There was a discussion about how much the architects and designers have already designed to, this court already appropriated. And so 4.2 million includes architectural fees and all of the other fees that are outlined in the Capital Improvement Plan book, I think it's under item number one in that book, and it shows you, there'll be fees, for example, for engineers, for architects, for design, for surveying, for contingencies.
I still have the floor, Judge, I, I yield to Commissioner Modis, but I still have the floor, but I, I just wanted to, Commissioner Modis, he wanted to have some input before, you know, I make any kind of motion, but, you know, I, I, you know, I'd like to hear Commissioner Modis, you know.
Yeah, I, I, well, and, and I know we're in the middle of, of hearing the, the reasons why, um, each of these, uh, methods are, are the best. I'd, I'd like to, for us to finish it, because I do think that there is some cost savings depending on what we, what we go with, but also, um, with Ida here, between Ida and Teresa, maybe she can help, uh, the court, uh, recall what we did with funding. I mean, this is a fully funded project up to this point, right?
It's here.
So that's, i- it's not about adding, right? So this, is that, is that the right amount then, the 4.2?
That's correct.
That's correct, Commissioner.
That's what we approved.
That's, the court approved 4.2 million for this project.
For the, for, so it's already been allocated, I put in money, the judge used, uh, judge's funding, and we made up the difference that the court, the court only was willing to go up to so much.
That's correct, yeah. It was reduced for 5.2 million to, or something like that, to 4.2 million.
To 3 million, right?
4.2 million total.
I know, but I'm saying before, the, the Commissioner Modis and the judge put in their, their, their funds, it was a, a $3 million, right?
No, no, they only put in 100,000 each.
Oh, is it?
Yeah, that's what this breakdown is, they put in 100,000 each, and the rest of it comes out of COs and notes unallocated and, and different funds that we, we found from, maybe it was more, let's see, 100, 100 from courthouse security stations, which was the judges, 100 from Commissioner Modis. It, it breaks it, that's why I was asking for it, wasn't back, it wasn't in the backup, and I thought it would be helpful for everybody to look at it.
You want to hear it? I don't have a problem with that, Commissioner, but I, I'd say, at the end, I'd probably like to see it in January, the 18th, make sure we.
And the, 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 so the item today that's on the agenda is to discuss and consider to procure, so if, if y'all vote to procure this, then that means Michael's gonna go forward and spend all his man hours and woman hours in doing all this. So, that, I just want to make sure, because this isn't just comparing ways of doing it, it's where, the, the agenda item is to ask for us to go out for bids now, which is, so if you, if you vote, yeah, if you vote on that today, then we can't, you can't keep, you can't.
Well, this court, this court has voted for a fully funded project, and you now have your architect who has finished his work. The next course of action is to go out for construction. And what we're trying to figure out here, so I think you should finish, is which way is the best way to go out and save the county dollars, and he's showing you the two different ways. So today's decision is important because it says, do you want to do it A or B? And the recommendation is B, and we're learning about it right now. So I'm gonna let you go back on course here, because we've already made the decision, and you've already spent lots of dollars in designing it. You can't, um, be pro taxpayer and say, I'm gonna go spend all this money and then not design it, and the longer you wait, the longer, the more expensive it is. And also, I think the important thing here is that the competitive sealed proposals, in this case, what we're trying to learn is why that one will save us more money in the long run.
That's right.
And go ahead and take us back there.
Is the land fee in the 4.2 million?
Yes.
Okay.
If I could get the next slide, Connie? All right, under the competitive sealed proposal method, which is the one that we're recommending for this project, you do still receive a lump sum price from the contractor at 100% design. So the design documents reach 100%, just as they would with a traditional hard bid project. The one difference is that you will then have the opportunity to incorporate qualifications in the selection process.
It was mentioned, I think, by you, and I know I just heard the judge say that this design has now been done. Where, where is that?
The design itself?
That's what the judge just said, that the design was complete and it was done on that.
It's in the hands of the architect, and we can furnish a, a copy of it. It's, as they say, shovel-ready, it's on the shelf waiting for this approval to take place so that we can advance it to completion.
And we've seen, we've seen a presentation here in court already of the design.
Yeah, several times.
The 4.2 million dollar level, that was.
Yes.
Okay, and so can you provide, can you get them to send that over?
Yeah, absolutely. And also, just so y'all know, I mean, I, I don't sit in every weekly meeting, but I, I've gotten in on, on most of the meetings that we've had, virtual meetings where the entire team has been a part of this project and the discussion and the lead-up to this, so, um, we, we as a court have had a set of eyes on this almost all the time, and if I'm not there, Ida is there, and so we've had participation and oversight, so, um, I, you know, I, I, I heard y'all, I think we all heard from the beginning, let's keep it under what was the original proposed amount, and so that has very much been my mantra moving forward with this, and, and I think, you know, we've heard that from JP and, and his team, uh, every week. Yeah, absolutely. And the team's been working very well together to stick to the budget that's been assigned for construction and overall total project cost. In the case of this competitive sealed proposal method, again, one of the other reasons to recommend this method is when you have a project that does have some complexities to it, this is one of those jobs. We have a lot of systems, uh, related to HVAC, related to finishes, related to, um, some of the access control, it'll be a part of this project, that are fairly complex, and what we are trying to avoid is a situation where we award a project to a contractor who doesn't have the capabilities, qualifications, and experience to do these systems thereby creating more cost events for the county. So it's a risk management strategy that has been very successful for us on other complex projects that we've, uh, implemented across the state. So that's part of the reason why we're recommending it to the county here in this case. If I can get the next slide, Connie? It's a similar timeframe to the traditional hard bid method. Again, we're taking the design to 100% completion, we will bid the project, and we will hire the contractor. The one difference being that in the selection of that contractor, you're receiving a price, and you're receiving a statement of qualifications, putting them into a rubric, points are awarded for cost, points are awarded for qualifications to award the best value provider for the county. And that's the key term, best value being something that may or may not be the lowest initial cost, but certainly, generally brings us additional value in terms of minimal change orders, et cetera, that we can benefit from. Next slide, please. And I won't read all of these because they are, you know, the same words that I'm using largely, but we're benefiting here from, um, the, the fact that there are contractor qualifications considered. We don't have a situation where perhaps a firm that has no business building a $4 million or a $3 million project is now in, entrusted with the project. We are able to screen, if you will, for firms that have that capability. From the con side, um, very, very few in our perspective for this type of project. There are some opportunities, uh, that we miss, just like we would with hard bid, to have the contractor's input. Um, we also have a little bit longer total schedule, but I think in the case of this project, which's got a nice, um, clean set of drawings, we'll be in, in good shape going forward. This also has the benefit of reducing some of that adversarial relationship that I mentioned, uh, and that's important. Uh, if we pick a quality contractor, we tend to find that they are better at managing those obstacles that come up in the project and less likely to try and seek recovery from the county. Next slide, and I'll call this the last slide, if that's okay, we'll skip the construction manager at risk in the interest of time. Competitive sealed proposal, the org chart, the team is very similar to the design bid build method, the traditional method that I started with. The only difference, again, being the contractor is selected based on qualifications and their price component. All the subcontractors continue to roll up underneath the general contractor. So I will skip the construction manager at risk method because I don't believe that, um, the court, that this is really a suitable use for that project to be discussed for the court, and again, the, the advocacy for competitive sealed proposal is, is where this agenda item is residing.
Okay, um, so the bottom line is, is that it's your recommendation after understanding and working with the architect that, because of all the things you've just mentioned, the list, right? And I mean, I hate to say this, but it's everything from, like, the air system, because it's animals and you've got to work on the smell.
Smells.
Right, it's the ventilation, this is not your normal HVAC, it's not your normal, you know, there's gonna be almost like, from drainage to everything is unique because it's like a little hospital for animals.
That's exactly right.
And, um, so because of that, you recommend that the county will be better off economically?
Economically, uh, for sure, and also from a quality standpoint, we tend to believe that competitive sealed proposal delivers a more high-quality project, more sustainable, long-term project.
Okay, so, so I'm gonna make the motion based upon that to make this CSP the preferred method of procurement.
Excuse me, Judge, I have a question.
And ask for a second.
Second.
All right, and go ahead, Commissioner Hernandez.
By pulling the 100,000 dollars from the security, courthouse security, does that set back the budget on that courthouse security? What was that?
What are you talking about?
It's one of the funding sources. It was one of the funding sources, I guess, that you.
I think we took it out.
Yeah, they already took it out.
You said you took it out of the, out of the courthouse security. I'm just asking if there's enough money in the courthouse security to continue.
Yes, yes, I'm leaving, I'm, I have, first of all, I placed in courthouse security over a million dollars. We have expended all of the funds that have been required. We even just did one recently in court not too long ago with the McKenzie Evidence Room, you might remember that. And there is a million point two in ARPA. There is, I don't have it in front of me, actually, here it is. There's, there are sufficient dollars everywhere. And also, when we made that decision, the court voted on it. So when we did the unallocated amounts and when we did the Commissioner Modis's precinct funds along with mine, we wound up approving that here as a court. In other words, this is a fully funded project and.
That's, I just wanna make sure courthouse security is gonna be funded.
There's hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars. I think six hundred and fifty thousand dollars left with no request at this time. And it, trust me, we just put in a few kiosks, just not kiosks, but what do we call them? The access codes on floor five due to the auxiliary court being put on there. So things have come up, but we have been able to address them comprehensively.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So there's a motion and a second.
Question.
And there's a question from Commissioner Chesney and then Commissioner Gonzalez.
Okay, and comments too. And I've been fully on record on, on not supporting the way we're doing this project. And I remain that way for many reasons that I wanna restate. One, I don't believe we have the infrastructure, proper infrastructure in place to, to build this facility. I don't think there should be a build it and they will come. Two, I think we should continue to, or I think we should have had and should need to have conversations with the city about some sort of consolidation where we would rehab the current facility at a significant amount, but not four million dollars as part of a consolidation effort. That has not been done. I think that opportunity certainly exists and should be done before we build another four point two million dollar facility. I think this agenda item fully commits, not fully commits, you can always backtrack, but it makes it very hard to backtrack because if we pass this today, because I agree with Commissioner Gonzalez, we should wait and look at this in January. But I believe if we pass this today, we're, we're putting Michael and his staff through an inordinate amount of work to go forward, to do more time, more energy, more effort. And it's gonna make it harder to backtrack in January on it if the court decides to go a different method or refund it lower or do some of the things that, again, and I'm okay, I'm in the minority on it, I get it. But I believe fully that we should have had a conversation with the city to consolidate our efforts and use the facility that we have there in a much less of a capacity than we are doing. I, I truly do not believe we have the infrastructure in place. I, I think we got all kinds of problems out there that we're still investigating and looking into. And to just build a four point two million dollar project with all the instability that we have in that, in that particular department right now, I think is putting the cart before the horse. I've said this for, it's been a year, I don't know when we started discussing this, and I am gonna continue to say it because I wanna make sure that I'm on the record, cuz it is never too late. A fully funded project is not an excuse to go forward. A fully funded project, it is, that is an accurate statement, but that doesn't mean you have to do it. The money that has been sent, spent so far pales in comparison to the money we're about to spend. We've spent, I don't know how many, a couple hundred thousand dollars, we're second to commit to four point two million. And, and just because it's fully funded and just because we've spent money on design doesn't mean it's too late. It becomes too late and we go out to bid and award a bid, that's when it's too late and we're not there yet. So I will vote no on this for those reasons and would like the minutes to reflect that. I do believe we need a strong presence in that area. And I think we could, again, spend some significant money rehabbing the facility we have, go, try to see if we could consolidate with the city and still have that as a satellite office and, and use that for the outlying areas because we absolutely have to have a facility in that area, and I'm aware of that. We have to have a facility for large farm animals, and I'm aware of that. And we have a facility that needs rehabbing. We could go talk to the city, consolidate, and not just build it and hope that, that we get all the problems and the situations out there that are gonna be under, we're gonna be under a lot of review in January. The county manager's been charged with bringing us back a detailed investigation of what's going on out there and what's, what we need to do and how we need to change things, staff, board, anything. And there maybe, she may come back and say nothing's wrong, but we don't, we haven't had that presentation yet. So to commit to procuring something that, quite frankly, I don't believe we should be doing in the circumstances we're in, it's just the timing is not right. I think we should have this presentation, have our, have the animal services presentation that she's gonna do and also, and then talk about that facility, have the conversation with the city and then talk about that facility. Again, I get it, I've been outvoted before and I'll be outvoted again, but I'm still gonna speak my piece.
Did you have a question? Those were, you said you had a question. Okay, Commissioner Gonzalez.
But I would support any motion to table that Commissioner Gonzalez makes or anybody else makes.
Commissioner Gonzalez.
We're not doing that now either.
Commissioner Gonzalez, I thought you had a question, I just wanted to make sure.
Thank you.
No question, go ahead, Commissioner Gonzalez.
I just, again, I'm concerned how we do this, we says, when we've got program management there. And I know y'all did a good job, JP, of putting all this thing together, you know, and I really appreciate the fact that, you know, but y'all, I mean, you're, you're, this is, this program management here has nothing to do with what you're doing now, it's putting this together. You know, it's a separate bucket of money, right? I mean.
Not sure I understand your question, Commissioner.
Your sixty-three thousand dollars here includes everything you've done so far.
I, I'm not sure what you're looking at, so I'm having a hard time following.
Y'all putting everything together, like in the past, put it together, but then you become the program management of the project, you know? And I have, I have a problem with that because, you know, I don't mind paying you guys for doing the work and doing, staying with the architect, doing, you know, and whatever, whatever has to be done. But when it comes to program management, you know, I think that it should have been an open item here where we go back and select the program management team to, to, to do the project. You know, I just don't think that somebody is putting it together, working together, all of a sudden they become the program managers automatically, right? And, and I'm concerned because we've had issues with program management and I don't know what the, how the contract would read, whether you're here every single day, whether you're here twice a week, whether you're here once a week, because we have, we've had those issues, you know? And you know better than anybody else, you know, because you have to be called, you know, that ain't, nobody's here, you know? Or you, we call somebody, have to come down from, from San Antonio or come down from whatever. So I, I have an issue with that where automatically y'all become the program managers of the project when we.
We already are the program manager for the project. This doesn't change that unless there's an action to jump over.
For the designing, for the designing team, for the architect team, everything else, but not for the construction, you know?
Yeah.
And this is, this is, this is where, this is where, the sixty-three thousand is for the construction, right? You know, but this is where I'm, you know, automatically you become that program manager, I guess. But I have a concern with that, and this is why I don't wanna move forward now, because I need to know, how can we actually look at that and come back and say, well, you know what, maybe we, maybe we need to go out and look for RFQs, RFPs, whatever you call it, you know, for program management.
We work at the will of the court, sir.
Right. And this is why I'm saying this, this is my will, right? And so I'm just saying that I don't agree with what's in here on the program management. You know, we've gone through this before, where, you know, we work in projects and automatically it, it's labeled program management and, and it stays. So, but again, we've had so much problems, you know, with, with, with program management that is not here, you know, when we need them, or we're not monitoring, when it should be monitoring, you know? And this is probably why Shane's not here no more, but, you know, but.
I, I would like to ask that any comments regarding employees be held confidentially, if it's okay with you, sir.
I always pick your wish.
This is, this is, I think there's been a lot of misinformation and we, we want to get on the record correcting that if it's possible. But can, this agenda item is about approving a method and not about program management.
And I wanna improve, and I wanna improve the methods, right? This is why I'm bringing this up, because I wanna improve the methods, the way we do things here. So, and I never had agreed with that before and I still don't agree with that, the way we do it. So I think if we're gonna do anything, that I think we need to pull out program management from there, you know, and then come back and see what we do with program management. So whatever we pay you for what you've done and that's your price, you know, we pay you. So, but I, as far as the construction, I think we need to look at it and say, what do we, what do we wanna do as program management? So this is.
Seems like that might be a separate conversation from the one here.
Well, this is a convention that I have now because I wanna pull, I'm not ready to do it with the program management in that contract. So, you know, this is.
Commissioner.
I'm sorry, but thank you for, for what you've done, you know, appreciate it, and you've done a good job.
Commissioner Modis.
Thanks, Judge. You know, I, I hear the, you know, the concerns and they've come up before and I understand and appreciate Commissioner Chesney's concern and, you know, not gonna point fingers, but we all could have our own separate conversations with the City of Corpus Christi or any other entity if we wanted to or work with I day to direct staff to do that. And, and the fact that this conversation doesn't come up, I mean, now granted, you, you've stuck to, to the same perspective all this time, so I appreciate that. But this, this has been the same concern and if, if no one's acted on it, it's not my fault, we're ready to go, we're ready to move, we've been moving forward on this. We've had updates to this court several times over the last, what, two years at least now? How long have we been doing this?
Yes, two years.
At least two years. So I, I get that these are some of the same concerns and I wish we would have had them addressed or dealt with earlier on. Nothing changes today, what the way it's proposed to us today is, is to move forward. I, I think this is taking at least two or three steps back if we were to make any changes. I, I understand and appreciate always wanting to be resourceful. I understand in consolidating, I'm, I'm one of the ones that I've always talked about consolidating services and partnering with, with other governmental entities, whether it be cities or other forms, to be inclusive and, and the best use of, of tax dollars. I, I know that the issue of, should we consolidate with, say, City of Corpus Christi and CCPD with their animal control and services is an important conversation to have, but doesn't change the fact that if you look in my backyard, there at my office, there at, at forty-five fifty FM eight ninety-two, you'll see that this is a, an old facility that's in need of use. And that location for pretty much every facility that's there, we have public works, we have my office, we have animal services, all need to be updated. Those are several decades old with, with little updated at all. This project allows us to have that update, to fix a, a facility that will help reduce the chance of, of, of keeping disease, the spread of disease, under control because of the best technology available. This provides a better location that, yes, can one day in the future work in partnership with City of Corpus Christi, but is also rural enough and not into the city itself that allows other municipalities or our unincorporated areas that we serve to be able to have these animals brought, delivered, and serviced there. So, I mean, there's, there's a lot of arguments that we can make back and forth on this item, but the fact is that we've, we've, we've had ample updates. It's not like we talked about this one time two years ago and now here we are, ready to move to step two. This is, this is step five or ten in, in, in a multitude of steps that we've had oversight and control. And this court had already agreed to move forward. This court had already agreed that five million was too much and, and, and we reduced that amount down and found other ways to, to, to support that funding with old COs that we've been told time and time again by auditor that we need to get rid of our old COs and that's, this is one of the ways to do it. So I appreciate all the concerns that we have, but this is a step to move forward today. This is a step to make this happen. I definitely want conversations to have in the future of, of how do we operate? Do we go more under a, a, a one-tiered system rather than city or county? Maybe that's something that we look at. But to stop this whole process today is, is just, it's just counterintuitive in my opinion. And since, this has been something we've heard, but we voted upon. I appreciate, you know, Commissioner wants, I believe, wants to support a, a new facility, but feels that this is maybe not the right time because we can partner with City of Corpus Christi. But we've, we've voted on that, we've made that happen as a whole. And I think it was a four-one vote that we voted on to make this. So I, I, in keeping with that spirit, I, I want, I want to, I want to be able to have that conversation. Just because we decide today doesn't mean this is where the project stops or just because right now it's gonna be maintained as a county facility, that in perpetuity that it will. It could always change, our focus can change every year as we saw change with the city county health department. So I think that can happen and still allow this product, this process to move forward. I, I wanna save money. I always hear, I mean, I'm not, I don't know if any of us are in the construction business, but we, you know, we are told always that it's cheaper to build now typically than it is in the future, right, typically. And so that's what I'm wanting to do. This is a cost-saving measure that I think we all want to help save money now. It's gonna be cheaper to build it now. And I think that the recommendation that, that you presented, JP, and then I seconded on here, allows us to do that. And, and that's what, that's what I'm in support of, that's what I'm in favor of, is, is allowing us to move forward and to, to have this project happen. And I'm more than happy to meet with, with Commissioner Chesney and, and I day and anyone else in City, our partners at City of Corpus Christi, to see how can we make a better partnership in the future. But I can guarantee you, one thing's not gonna change is, is the, the, the distance between our current location in Corpus Christi is not gonna increase or decrease. It's the same amount of miles today as it ever will be. So we need, we need to make county services, one of the reasons why they're there is to be able to make it easier, more accessible for people that don't live in the City of Corpus Christi to be able to access that. And, you know, there's partnerships that we may have with City of Robstown. From time to time, they're in a cycle that they are down personnel and they don't have the personnel that we gotta try to help them with. And we are now seems to be in that cycle ourselves. And so there's back and forth, I think there's ways to improve that. And if that includes also partnering with the City of Corpus Christi one day, let's do it. But I don't think it has to be an either or. I think we can move ahead, allow this process to take place, and then continue that conversation and see how can we plan it out. I don't, I don't see it as one ending the other's opportunity just because we, we vote on this today with a competitive sealed proposal. We, we've agreed to it, we've supported it, we have found the funding, nothing is changing that today. It's just authorizing to move to the next step. That's all I'm asking from the court is to allow us to move to the next step, which we had already voted on previously.
And John, I just wanted to, just let you know, the reason that conversation never had was cuz the court told me not to. The court voted that down.
Never, I never told you.
No, no, I did, I made a motion to do it, I didn't get a second, so I was not allowed to go have, I, I'm not gonna go have a conversation when the court.
I don't think anyone ever reprimanded you or told you not to.
No, no, reprimanded, but there's no point. If the court's not interested, I'm not gonna go waste my time or the city's time and go have a lengthy set of conversations when the court has, and, and I'm okay with that, but the court's outvoted my request each time, and that's why there's been a conversation.
That's why I'm saying, that's why I want you to know, I'm okay with it. I'm okay with that conversation in the future. I don't think this is something that will happen overnight, even over the next few months. I think this could be years in the making, so that, it talks about, it's gonna deal with budgeting and personnel and all of that. It's gonna take a long time if we ever get there. And I'm not saying let's turn it down, I'm just saying, we're here, we need to build this facility. Let's build it now while the cost is cheaper and we can save money.
And we respectfully disagree on that, I just wanted to explain to you why that conversation with the city hadn't happened because I tried to do that, I tried to make a motion and it never got anywhere. And that's okay, I just want you to understand that I'm not gonna go spend time on something that this court doesn't, I know this court by a four-one vote didn't wanna do, so that's why it didn't happen.
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna bring us back home here after some lengthy discussion. Again, the purpose of today and the item that we're on was simply to receive the comparison, which we did. And just so you know, while it's a comparison on this particular facility, you should keep these notes because they could pertain to other opportunities in the future as to which type of procurement. The reason there's six that exist in the code is cuz that there are times where each of them are better than the other. And you, that, that's non-debatable, that is why they exist sometimes, and we've used them, not all of them, but we've used quite a few. So whether it's JOC or job board or contracting or, you know, competitive sealed proposals, construction management at risk, design build, different facilities that you're building, infrastructure merit different looks at what type of procurement is best. And that's all to do one thing, get a better job quality-wise and save money. And so that's the, that's the issue before us here today. I just wanna remind the court, since we've kind of gone into this, is that there's a reason that this building was needed. And that's because a feasibility study was done before the architects got into the design by our own vote. And that feasibility study said something that was not flattering. It said that the rural communities are overrun with stray animals. And they are, they rank you in the country and unfortunately, we're the third worst in the country. And this feasibility study also gave us a blueprint for what we needed. So it doesn't matter who operates it, you can have that discussion whenever. And it doesn't matter whether you've got board members that aren't getting along and it doesn't matter, all of those things can be worked with or through at the appropriate time. What we're talking about here is how do we get a quality project on, on the budget that the court has already voted on and keep it on time? And that's what it's about today. And so I think it's important to have all these conversations, but for clarity, this is a project that the court has already said, we are going to proceed and to stop it now is going to, quite frankly, as Commissioner Modis said, I'll use his analogy, you're in step five already. We need to go forward so that this county doesn't lose out. And that's the whole thing, but you still have plenty of time to do all the things you wanna talk about in the future. This amendment, amendment, this agenda item is just. This amendment, amendment, this agenda item is just to say, hey, is this the best one for this project that you've already approved? This is the one that will be better money-wise and quality-wise. So, I'm asking you all to support Commissioner Modis's.
Judge, I have a comment.
Plea, I'll be right with you.
Thank you.
To do, just to choose. That's all it is today. You can have other discussions next year about all the things you want to talk about, but today it's about saying, this is the type of procurement for this building that's already been approved and is already in step five that needs to get done. And I hope that you guys will choose the most economical one because that makes the most sense. Commissioner Hernandez.
Thank you, Judge. I agree with Commissioner Chesney. You know, we need to see if it's feasible for us to partner with the city. And I think that's a good idea to wait and talk to the city, talk to the people, see if we can. My whole thing here is trying to save money for our community, for our courthouse because we're always seen to be looking for money because we're always short on money. But if we can do something that will save us money, like partnering with the city, I'm willing to do that.
And which city? I'm just curious, which city? Corpus Christi or Robstown?
Well, whether it be Corpus Christi or Robstown, Judge, either one.
Right. So, just so you know, Corpus Christi is filled to the brim. That is why we have a problem. You can't even, there's no place to take cats. And by the way, I know you mentioned large animals, Commissioner Chesney. This facility is not meant for large animals. So, this facility is meant for small animals or medium-sized animals, but it's not meant for, it's not designed for large animals. So, I just needed you to correct that.
You know, Judge, if we're going to spend money, there's plenty of space in the old show barn building, and that was meant for large animals.
Right. The show barn is not a, is not a facility where animals can be kept. It's a complete, we have actually upgraded our show barn and it's great. And we have, as you remember, a program with RISD, and we've done all of those upgrades already. This is an animal care facility. This court has already voted on it. We're in the middle of this project. This is to get the procurement right.
But you mentioned large animals.
I didn't. Commissioner Chesney did. I just wanted you to know that this.
You were repeating what Commissioner Chesney said. So, I'm saying the outside of the old show barn is plenty of room to where we can build stalls to keep those animals and see how we can save money, Judge, not just be putting money out.
Yeah, okay. I think there's a disconnect. I just want to say this for the last time. We don't, in our animal care and control, unless it's a dead hog or, you know, on the side of the road, we do not house large animals in our animal care facility. That's what I'm saying to you. This new facility.
So, how did we do it before?
Okay.
The county has responsibility that the city doesn't have, that has been that debate before, and that was all I was referencing.
Right. I think there's confusion here.
And the reference was that the county has responsibility for these, some of these large animals in respect that the city doesn't. And so, all I was saying was it would be advantageous to be able to meet with the city before we built this facility so that we could see what, if anything, they could do and what we could use this existing facility upgraded for in respect to the bigger picture. So, the reference to the big, the large county or the large animals, which has been brought up in debate by this court before, has, I was just acknowledging that we have a responsibility that the city doesn't have because they don't work.
I'm trying to get him to understand that that's not what we do. Will you make sure? I think if you say it, maybe he'll hear it. We don't do big horses or cattle inside our facility.
Right. But if they're loose or if they're stray.
Right. But we have a, but we have.
But we have responsibility, all I was trying to say was we have a responsibility that the cities, the cities don't.
Right.
Because there aren't usually large horses running around.
Right.
The City of Corpus Christi, they're in the county, so.
Understood. But that's not what this facility does on a day-to-day basis, and it's not what the need is.
It has responsibility for.
That's, that's correct.
It does have responsibility.
But that's not what this facility's for. This facility, there is a great need, and again, we've already expended a tremendous amount of dollars. This project has already been approved. It's almost as if you're trying to time-turn here. We've already had this debate. We already voted for one to go forward. Commissioner Hernandez, you voted to go forward. All we're doing here is keeping going forward.
But what I'm hearing, what I heard back then and what I'm hearing now, I've changed my opinion to where we do need to try and partner up maybe with the city or whoever else is close to us to we can do this. And I just don't know how to.
Right.
The county used to pick up large animals, Judge.
Still, they still do.
That's not the, yeah, but that's correct. We don't have a debate about that. What we're saying is this facility is designed for dogs and cats. That is where the terrible statistics are. And just so you know, we have already explored with all of the people for over, Commissioner Modis, how long have you been working on this project? Three years?
Three years.
Three years. So, the ship that you want to embark on is possible, but that doesn't change the fact that the facility needs to be built. This project is already going forward. If you are, if you were going to stop this now, you are going to not just stop the progress of the actual, but you just literally wasted three years of time, which all has a dollar figure to it, plus all the money that we've already put forth. It's like saying, we're going to stop the ADA project because we want to reexamine whether or not ADA is a good thing. We've already made that decision as a court.
Or the mental project.
Yeah, any project. We're in the middle of it. You've already gone there.
Wish we don't have money for, Judge.
What?
Wish we don't have enough money for the mental people or project that we want to do.
Well, we actually.
Mental illness.
Yes, sir. We have a fully funded, that's, we're getting off, but we do have a fully funded project for that, so.
You know, I know that we voted for it, but, you know, at that time we voted with four-two, but I didn't see.
Four-one.
The breakdown we have here, we actually included program management. You know, that wasn't, that wasn't talked about when we voted.
It was, sir. It was. I know, I know you think that, but let's just vote. Let me just tell you something. Each and every time we have, you did. And just so you know, we have project management on every single project that we're doing in Nwasis County that is of substance.
You mean program, Judge? You said project. You mean program?
Wait a second.
You said project. Did you mean?
Yes. No, I meant project. If you'll just allow me not interrupt. Project management, when there's more than one project, it becomes a program. When we embarked on our capital improvement plan, we decided to have certain arenas. Our court voted on it. I know what you guys are trying to do. You're trying to undo everything that we've already done, and you do so at the peril of the taxpayer, and it's just not cool. You can do it all day long and you can continue to manipulate this court, and I actually feel sorry for you, Commissioner Hernandez, because I think what you are is being manipulated. I think at the end of the day.
Judge, what I'm trying to do is save money for our county, Judge. You throw money around like if it was candy, okay? And as far as project manager's concerned, I've had my terrible experience from your project managers at the dog park. Wish you gave three hundred thousand dollars to for doing nothing.
Okay. We're way, way off base, and you make not only no sense.
No, he makes a lot of sense, Judge. You just don't like what he says. When you say people are getting manipulated, people respond to you, and you don't like when people respond back to what you're saying. No one's manipulating anyone. It's a debate. It's called a debate. I know you don't like to debate because you want it your way, but the rest of us have opinions. Commissioner Hernandez has opinions. You cut off Commissioner Gonzalez midway through his again, yet again, and you say, I interrupted just by answering a question, but Commissioner Gonzalez can't even finish anything without you interrupting. You chastise Commissioner Hernandez on a regular basis. This is debate. If the court wants to change their mind, now's the time to change their mind. It's not, it's not after we go to procurement and spend another gazillion dollars. If the court's not going to change their mind, then great, I'll be outvoted and move on. But I'm willing to accept that, but not without continuing to express my opinion. That's not manipulation. That's debate. When there's an item on the agenda, that means we get to debate it. You don't like what we say and you call it other things and you use words like manipulation, et cetera. So, that's okay. You get to do that. But at the end of the day, the rest of us get to have opinions without being criticized for our opinions. Well, you get to criticize us because you do that regularly, but I'm going to continue to have them no matter what you say about me or how you criticize. But you can't sit here and say to Commissioner Hernandez, he's getting manipulated or whatever and not expect him to get mad, or you can't cut off Commissioner Gonzalez and expect, or say what you're going to say. Yet we can change this at any point. That's exactly what we can do. And it's not a farce to the taxpayer. It's a savings. If we don't spend four-point-two million and we spend two-hundred, that's a savings of four million dollars. So, you're looking at it in a complete wrong way. Just because it's fully funded doesn't mean we have to do it or do it this way. They may not, they may still like it, but they may not want to spend four-point-two million. They may want to spend three-point-five. I don't think we ought to spend anything right now until we talk to the city, but they may not agree with me. I'm okay with that. I'm going to keep expressing my opinion.
Commissioner Mars, I'm just going to call for the votes so that we can move on, okay? But you can see the problem that you have, and I know that you will work diligently to try and rectify it. And the situation is, is that the COs that we use, Dale, were twenty-fifteens. They do need to be expended.
Just twenty-nineteen.
And, I'm sorry, not twenty-fifteens. It was, no, no, it was. It was, it was twenty-fifteens and twenty-sixteens, and they're very, and the fact that we committed those funds was absolutely not only appropriate but needed. As you know, you've got the three years, and it was very important that we committed those funds. If you decommit those funds, Dale, I think you should be, you should look into that because that would be.
That's already been used, Judge, because we've spent that much money already.
I'm not talking to you, Dale.
Thing's already been used.
I'm asking Dale, you need to look at that because that was committed to the project in and of itself, and that could be a problem with the IRS. So, at any rate, it's very clear what's happening here, and I'm, you know, going to let.
I don't want to vote something that's going to commit program management, so.
Well, program management is, you can get an agenda item. That's done. We voted on that in twenty-nineteen, just so you know, in twenty-nineteen. Iday, you're going to have to get, maybe you can work with Kara, because clearly, it's just, they need to get refreshed on how we, we did this through RFQ process, and then we literally brought it to court and we chose which projects were going to be benefited by it. It has benefited by it. We have been able to take a project that was this and move it down to this. And we did so based on data, like real data. That's how real government officials are supposed to make decisions. They make policy decisions from data, and that's what we did.
Remember that, Judge.
So, that's, that's what's unfortunate is that the feasibility study tells you that you need it, and this court already is in the process of doing it, and you're stopping forward motion for no reason really whatsoever, except for Commissioner Chesney was the one vote, and now he's taken the four-one vote and reversed it.
Well, I've always felt like that about program management, Judge.
Well, it's, you can change program management. That's your, that's your business. That's not what we're doing here, Commissioner Gonzalez. What we're doing here is just trying to get the ball moving so that this design can get to construction. It's going to take a while, but this gives the authority to procure. It has nothing to do with program management. If you don't like it, bring it forward. But this gets.
I'm doing now, bringing it forward.
But that's not an agenda item.
And you don't like it.
No, it has nothing to do with liking it. It has everything to do with it not being germane. All you're voting on here is whether or not the procurement is X or Y. That's it.
Well, X or Y at four-point-two million.
Yes, sir. We've already voted on that. You said you liked debate. You lost that debate.
I'm just clarifying.
You lost it. No, it's not a clarity. We, you don't, we already voted on it for one, and now you're undoing it.
You're going to go for four-point-two. You've also heard, if you'd listened, if you were listening today, you heard Commissioner Gonzalez saying he was concerned about the price. You've heard Commissioner Hernandez say he's concerned about the price. By moving forward today, you are moving forward at a procurement of four-point-two million.
Right. One that's already been authorized by this court, Commissioner Chesney.
I agree. Don't agree, disagree. But I'm just saying, it's not just moving forward, it's moving forward at four-point-two million.
No. It's all, it's doing exactly what this court has already done.
But that's, that's all I'm saying is, but it's moving forward at four-point-two.
No kidding. We voted on it.
No kidding.
And Commissioner Gonzalez, you actually, when you look at your tape, you'll actually see that you said, I can live with that. That was the number that you worked out with Commissioner Modis from this dais that you said was appropriate.
I told him that I would support it.
You did. And you said you thought that was a number that you could live with.
I want to tell you again, Judge, you can think whatever you want to think, but I can tell you again, but the program management, again, to me, wasn't part of that discussion. So, you know, and I'm concerned about that program management because we just continue to have problems with program management. You know, and I'm not going to go through that again like we've been doing all this other time. So, I'm sorry, but I feel that way, you know.
Again, this.
We came back in January to see how we're going to handle this program management thing. I would rather wait, but if not.
I'm also going to bring this a little bit into executive session, just so you know, Jenny, based on those comments. But on this item, it has nothing to do with program management. It just has to do with procurement. Has nothing to do with program management at all. Has to do with what type you're going to use. That's it. So, you can feel all the way you feel about everything. It's just about the type. It's a yes or no as to whether or not you think this type will get you a better price for the county, yes or no. There's a motion and a second. All those in favor of using this type competitive seal proposal for this Shelter Planners of Americas design for the animal care center.
Is there another type or what?
What?
Is there another type?
Yes, sir. The type that.
This is to procure, but this is also to go out.
Excuse me, Commissioner Chesney. Chesney.
This is to go out for procurement.
Commissioner Chesney, you haven't been recognized. Commissioner Gonzalez, let me ask JP to answer that question again. He asked a question. Please help him answer it without Commissioner Chesney. Interruption. I'll call on you next so that you can influence.
Will you please repeat your question for me?
Boy, you've been doing that well.
So, I can make sure that I give you an answer.
Okay, we're going to this procurement thing. Is there a different kind of procurement thing and other kind of methods that we can go to or what?
Right. So, the first method that I spoke to today was a hard bid, a true bid process rather than a qualifications-based selection. So, those were the two methods that are most applicable to this project type. And so, we're recommending competitive seal proposal because we believe it offers the best value to the county, both from a quality standpoint, from a time management standpoint, and from the fact that this project does have some complexities that other jobs don't have. And so, unlike other places in the county where we've used hard bid, this is an application where we believe competitive seal proposal is the best method to use.
But you were also asking to go out for bids today with this, correct? That's what this agenda item is for, JP, right?
That is, the next agenda item, I believe, is an order that comes along with it. So this is the selection of the method, and I don't want to get in Michael's lane here exactly, but I, we're selecting the method here, and then the order follows, I believe it's the next item, and that's what I'm scrolling to find.
Yeah, the first one is just a presentation, but then the second one is, this would be sending this out for bids under the concealed, under the, excuse me, under the CSP process. So it's not just picking a process, it's going out for bids. This is what we're doing today.
Utilizing the method of competitive seal proposal.
Right, but going out for, this is asking to go out for bids under the CSP process. Number five.
That is true.
And is it written yet? Because typically it takes some time to actually write the CSP, so for example...
It is not written.
Right, so getting it out to bid is really a, that's a little bit, that's a little bit of a stretch. It doesn't go out to bid. It, it basically has to be written up first, right? And normally, that process is seamless. But if the court wanted to, they could choose the method of procurement. You could write it up, and then they could make choices on when they wanted to release it. But the idea here is the agenda item was simply just choose if this is the best method when you go out for construction.
So four, we can choose four. Say yes, go ahead, four. Five, we can say we need to hold off on five.
No, four is just a, is just a presentation. Five is what we're being asked to do, which is go out for bids. This is not just choosing a method. I'm sorry, Judge, you were stating this incorrectly. Respectfully, this is, this is choosing a method and, and going for bids. Michael doesn't bring it back to us once we tell him to go for bids, right, Michael? You go for bids. You don't come back to us.
I just said that you could pause because you needed to write it up first. You can choose the method and hold on the release, but you need to know, it takes a lot of time to put together these bids. And so, the concept here is, are you going to, um, you know, choose this good method or not? And, and the answer is, is, you know...
Jenny?
I don't know.
Is it too late to table this? Make a motion to table this?
Four is not a, it's not an action item, but you're still on four. Number five is the action item, and you all have not gotten to it yet.
That's what I'm asking you now. Can we do four?
Four is just a presentation.
Yeah, four is just, there's nothing to approve on four.
So, it's just a presentation. So, so you threw with four, so now we go to five?
I've, I've been, I've been through with four for a while.
Okay, let's go to five.
But it obviously didn't sink in since there was no understanding of the choices, okay?
Because you made, Judge, you made the motion, so it must not have sunk in with you. You made the motion, Judge.
You don't get it confused, Judge.
So, you know, I guess you didn't understand.
I got everybody confused, JP. I apologize to you. I got everybody confused.
Yes, you did.
Okay, so, they're all confused.
I think you were combining...
Kara, thank you.
I think you were combining four and five.
Thank you.
That's what we said, but...
Thank you. All right, um... Commissioner Modis, I guess, had to step out, so we can, we can wait, or I'll just take the vote, and then he can add to the vote. If it's, um, where I'm thinking it's going, it won't matter, so, um... I don't know where he went. Only because it's his, it's his project. I'll tell you what, since four is just a presentation, we won't, we'll just skip over five until he gets back, okay? I know, I'll just have to suspend, I guess.
Judge, if you're going to five, I'd make a motion to table five.
Well, I've already, I already have a motion on the floor.
Oh, okay, thank you. There is?
All right, um, Commissioner Modis, um, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
What are we voting for now? Am I confused?
No.
It's the, it's the procurement to choose the construction services under competitive sealed proposals.
And go out for bids.
Yeah.
No.
Okay. I'm a aye. Uh, there's a no. Commissioner Gonzalez?
No, I would, I'd bring it back in January, the 18th.
You want to make a motion to table?
Well, that's, there's no motion at this moment. Just give us a second. Let me get the whole vote. Commissioner Hernandez, you're a no.
I'm a no.
And Commissioner Modis?
Aye.
Okay, aye. All right, so, is there a new motion on this?
I'd like to make a motion. We bring this back in January, the 18th.
January 18th. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
No. All right, um, all right, um, we'll move on then to all of that. Let's see. JP, there's a lot more here for you to do. I'm trying to organize our time.
Do you all need to take a vote to extend the meeting because it's supposed to end at noon?
Um, yes, we'll make, we'll take a, we'll take a vote. Let me see what the quick ones we can get done.
I'd like to make a motion. We just say to 1 o'clock.
All right, motion to extend the meeting to 1 o'clock. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, let me just call some. Hold on, JP. I'm going to call some so we can get things going that'll be, that are important and are easy. They're under Human Resources. C1 and 2 is discuss and consider reclassifying the chief executive of the County Judge Public Information Group, Pay Group 38 to Pay Group 36, effective January 1st, 2023. And the second one also relates to advertising the position to the chief executive of the county judge, and discuss and consider the approval of advertising the position for the incoming, um, judge-elect, uh, new county judge, Connie Scott. I spoke with her myself, so I can assure you that this, these are her wishes. Other than on item number one, um, there was, you were going to visit with her, Ida, about whether or not the job description for the public information officer, uh, Tyler Thorson, included emergency management. It was my understanding it did not, so, you might, and we're going to do this today, but it may have to come back. She thought that it included it, and I told her it did not. You are going to get her the backup documentation.
In fairness of time, also, Judge, because even if, we're not going to continue, we're going to, it won't be done. I'd like to table number seven.
Well, can I, I need to get a vote first when I...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, let's do C1. It's to reclassify the chief executive. Just so everybody knows, that's the current position held by Maggie Turner.
So moved.
Second.
And second. And again, the only discussion is, I want it on the record. She expressly told me that if it did not include the emergency management PIO, uh, if the, if the current PIO did not cover the EMPIO, they may want to revisit this. So, okay, so I just want you to know that. All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, post same sign. And then the second one is the position that is the, um, advertising of the position of Executive Secretary. This is something that's done as part of protocol.
So moved.
Second, but you need to, we need to remove that PIO next to the judge.
Well, I cannot do that because...
I'm talking today, but...
Well, I can't, I've already informed her, and she was told that, um...
We can do whatever we want. That's why we put it on.
Yeah, I mean, I, I'm...
On item number one?
No, two.
Number two.
Advertising the position of chief executive to county judge slash PIO.
Oh, remove PIO in that second. Okay, I just, I wanted to make sure it's not in the first, because the first one, that is exactly how it is.
All right.
All right, so again, these are the advertising pieces, right, for the two positions in the county judge's office? So if there's no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
As amended without the PIO out, yeah.
Yeah, and just so you know, um, these will get advertised and hopefully be placed in the new year. Okay, in the effort to get to item, I also am going to call another one that I think we can do quickly. It's Public Works Juan. Their change orders for all these county roads. I don't think it should take long. Uh, their approvals for county roads 67, 69, 77, and Bow Road. Those are our CVVGDR roads.
That, that's correct, Judge. This is a, just a quick, um, clean up on some paperwork. Uh, it's just a deduction of, of $2,000, and, uh, Public Works is recommending the change order.
So moved, Judge.
Second, okay, and all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Let me just go and give you what I got, Judge.
Okay, and excuse me, I'll call on you when I'm ready. But that doesn't work that way.
You gave what you had, let me give you what I have, okay?
Excuse me, sir. The way it works...
Why is it only with good what you want, Judge, and not what we want?
Commissioner Gonzalez, you're going to have four years to do all the interrupting you want, but for now, for the next hour...
I probably won't have to.
Well, how wonderful for this wonderful, how wonderful for the court. You're not going to do it because I'm, I have to recognize you. That's the way it works, sir, okay? I'm sorry.
Why am I here?
Because you have to follow the rules, and that's the way it works. I have to recognize you. So I'm working on D1, the approval of the budget change orders, number four for the fiscal year, and the change order number 114, it's item D1 and 2. Dale, I know these are important to get done, so let's get those. Tell us about number four for the year.
For a budget change order number four, this is very quick. We only have three departments requesting funds. The largest one is for road and bridge. However, the road and bridge just needs some increase for some, some, uh, uh, janitorial services. When we did the last contract, uh, few, uh, months back when we did the budget, uh, it was excluded that we didn't include a little bit more that we should have for road and bridge. So that's why there's a $40,000 increase. Those funds are needed. For the county, they have some vacancies in their office. They need some temporary services to cover these costs. They have the funds available to do the transfer. And for the county clerk, they had some overtime due to the last constitutional, our last election services. That happens every two years. They have the funds available in this temporary service to cover these costs. These are the requests for the, the department's submitted, and they meet our requirements and submit budget change order number four for your acceptance and approval.
Okay. Is there any, um, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
All right, thank you. I'll second. Any questions for Dale? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Okay, how about the project budget change order number 114?
Yes, Sheriff, I wouldn't, uh, you all approved the contract for, uh, ALight and Workday. Uh, there is some costs associated with that, that cost. Uh, we, as y'all know, we went out for a proposal for a PFCO 22 series funds. Uh, we're going to allocate $2.4 million for the ALight side of it. Now, when we actually had the funds received, they, we were told that, uh, some of the costs for our operations, Workday wouldn't be allowed to do, be funded through this. So now we're going to, uh, ask your permission to allow some of the, uh, equipment for Public Works to be paid through this, this, this particular funding sources. So you'll see that we're going to allocate $2, uh, $300,000 for Public Works at this time. This way, we can still fund the, the funds that we need to for Workday through the general fund, and reducing it by the transfer we're going, you have to transfer to 120. So at this time, we're submitting those requests for the 2022 series BPSCO for $2.4 million for ALight to, to move our software in, forward, as well as buy equipment for Public Works. Uh, I'll answer any question you may have.
So moved.
I won't lie, if anybody understood all that, that would be really impressive. So I think there's a little bit of faith going on right now. Uh, I believe what you meant to say was that this is necessary in order to produce the dollars needed fiscally and responsibly to purchase Workday.
That's correct.
All right, I like that one. I'll take a sec, I'll do a second on that. And all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, now I got auditor, I got all those done. Let me ask you this, because this is going to take us potentially into executive session. Do we need the county game room policy in executive? That's number 15.
Uh, I don't think so unless you have specific...
Is it ready to go?
It, it is ready to go. I anticipate that as it gets started, that we'll find problems that need to be addressed and, uh...
Right, and then you address them. Right. Just as a matter of just interest, I just got an email that was interesting on the listserv, and you know what? It literally said exactly what you said. It was to Doug, it was to, um, my goodness, Jim Allison, almost to Doug Allison. It was to Jim Allison, and it, and it basically said, "Jim, uh, will you look over our regulations?" And he said, "I will." He said, "There are standards out there that a lot of counties are using." He said, "But basically, you're going to find out almost when you find out," so to speak. And that, you know, that there are some pitfalls, so I don't know what to say here except for that I know that you've been working on it diligently, and if you think they're ready, and do they, may I ask sort of the broad question to cover us? Do they comport with all that the court directed?
Yes, I believe so. There were some, um, changes with the new work, um, game room administrator, some changes there, and, uh...
But they all comport with everything that, that we've, we've been doing.
Hours of operation. It still doesn't make gambling legal in the state of Texas.
Absolutely. And, and do you believe that it would be in our, is it important? I know there was some timing. Is it important to approve them today? Would you like to punt them to next year? It's important, right? Will you tell us about that?
It's important. When the court voted, I believe, in May, um, May of this year, it was announced that, well, at some point, it was announced later on that the game room regulations would become effective January 2nd.
So that's why it's important. I just want to let the audience still in the court know that, all right, so, um, if they comport to what our directive was and all the finalizations have done, is there a motion to approve such policies? Okay, yes, I've got a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, there's a second. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Question, question we're...
Yes, yes, of course, of course. Go ahead.
Um, so we had a big working group. I mean, we had a lot of people involved. Uh, when we first started off on this issue, I was the one that asked to have this after hours because we knew a lot of people were working and wanted, wanted a big turnout, and we had that on at least the two public hearings that we had based on this issue. Uh, so what, what other, what other, um, what other times have we brought in any of those individuals? Or is it just been exclusive to you and your staff and the sheriff to work on this, or...
I believe early on during the first half of the year, people were coming into the county attorney's office, but there were also people having meetings with other people in the community. So, um, I believe those people were then encouraged to come to our office. Some people called, never came in. Some people came in multiple times. Um, we listened to everybody. We dealt with people who, um, at first understood it was making gambling legal in the state of Texas or in the Nuasis County. We've always tried to convey that that is not something that the commissioner's court has attempted to do, nor could it do. Um, and then we have also dealt, uh, interacted repeatedly with people who represent the bingo room community, uh, trying to make sure that everybody has been heard and put together the policy within conjunction with the sheriff's department.
Okay.
Commissioner, how do you feel about this? Ready to go? You're good?
Okay, all right, thank you. And of course, once you get a result from this court, you'll publish it, so it'll be on our, our website and, as they say, for all the world to see. Okay, um, in that case, if these county game room policies meet with your satisfaction, there has been a motion and a second, and all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Judge, I had a cleanup, I had a cleanup on one, on Human Resources.
A cleanup on one that we've already done on HR? Go ahead.
Yes, ma'am, number one, um, on the, the, um, Nuasis County job description for the chief executive on education and experience, uh, was requested to change the word "and" a minimum of 10 years of increasingly responsible to or a minimum of 10 years of increasingly so. That would be on education and experience, so I would just need to amend the job description to change the word.
And, and really, it's number two, right, if it's job description?
It's number one. It's the...
But, but the job description is inside number two.
Sure.
Okay.
Number two.
So let's do number two.
And then it's changing the word on education experience.
I'll take that amendment as a motion. Kara, did you catch that one? It's on three, it's on C2. It has to do with the actual job description that's going to get posted, and it has to do with an amendment to the job description itself.
Yeah, and it's education experience, and it would change the word or related field from "and a minimum of 10 years" to "or a minimum of 10 years."
Just a, okay, and or, instead of, so, or instead of and?
No master required.
Okay.
That was the motion.
And there's a motion, and is there a second?
Second.
And there's a second by Gonzalez, and is there any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, and, um, all right. Okay, now what I'm going to do is, there are some other ones that are super important for time, and Louis, I'm going to call on you. They're related. 12, 13, and 14 are all related, and they basically, um, well, I'm sorry, they're not all related, but they're, they're related to your department and to, um, emergency services, so...
I'm going to make a motion, Judge. I make a motion.
On number 12.
Table 13 and 14.
Okay, well, hold on one second. I've only called number 12, and we're going in order here.
Motion to pass 12.
Okay. Kara, I'll, let me get, hear from you, Kara.
I have a story. I have a question. With the game room regulations, for our backup, we did not get a copy of those regulations that you need to sign. So Jenny, what is on the agenda, but we usually get a, uh, a original, if you will, from the office?
Okay.
Yeah, so we have, how, we'll bring, we'll have three copies delivered, like now, so the judge, she needs to sign them. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, okay, so on item number 12, um, this is an interlocal agreement with the city of Roptown to provide fire and emergency rescue services. There's already a motion, but I'd like to announce it for the clerk. And it's basically not living, um, they're living in Nuasis, but they are, um, in unincorporated areas, and they're not in the jurisdiction of ESDs or not in any city boundaries. And so, this is all in order. Louis, you've been working with Jenny.
So on this one, Judge, I have not, but I do know the situation on the, on incorporated areas and the need for fire and emergency services outside the border of Roptown.
Wait, so I...
But the interlocal agreement hasn't been looked at by you, Jenny? I thought we had. I think, maybe I didn't say it correctly, but I think all I meant to say is, is it ready from the county attorneys? I thought we had already checked on this.
Is it ready, Jenny?
The document is legally sufficient, uh, and I believe it has been done in the past.
Just want to make sure you've looked at it. I, I thought you had. That's why I made the motion.
Yes, I think this one has.
Okay.
Okay, so, motion, is there a second? I think there was already, Kara, sorry. Okay, and all those in favor signify by saying aye. And I'm going to let you do your table, but please listen, just for a moment, on item...
I'm sorry.
Yes, we did.
Well, no, nope.
We did.
Sorry.
Okay, I did. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, on item 13, "These folks are paying their own way, and we're on a time situation for hazard mitigation action plan." Please allow Louis, before you table, please allow him to at least let you know that this isn't costing you any dollars. This is needed so that the plan is sufficient, and it, this is something that we're required to do, uh, for the state, and this is not costing us dollars. Louis, is that correct?
That's correct, Judge. And even more importantly, uh, Water Control District number four, Water Control District number four has a, uh, a mitigation grant on the table that they need to be able, need to be a part of the county's HMAP to, uh, exercise. The reason why they can't move forward is because they are not a part of the county's, uh, hazard mitigation action plan. If we table this, we already asked for one extension. We may not get another one. So I'm asking that we take this on the advisement before we table.
Yeah, I, I, this one is absolutely critical. All the IL, IIJA grants, all the FEMA grants, everything having to do with mitigation, so that your areas that you represent can have the chance to get federal funds to do good things, have to be in the HMAP plan.
And, and is there funds for engineering also included in those?
Yes, that's what they're paying for. The HMAP gets, gets produced.
$22,770. Where's that coming from?
From those two, District 2, 3, and 4.
You're right, Judge. So the water districts themselves, the jurisdictions that we're bringing into the HMAP right now, they're going to pay their own way into it.
And again, this, this is a charge, Nuasis... And again, this, this is a charge Nuones County acts on behalf of all the jurisdictions, and.
Well, they're paying their own way, Judge, so I move.
Thank you so much. Motion and second. All, is any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. I'm sorry, on item thirteen. Thank you, Kara. Aye. Please signify by saying aye.
We did. Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
I'm going to move to table number fourteen.
Well, number fourteen is number thirteen. It is the companion. It's why, how we get the work done. They are doing the HMAP work. The court already authorized them to do it. This gets, that's what they're paying for. Two, three, and four.
They're paying for it.
They're paying for it.
So we're not paying for that? The districts paying for that is what you're saying, Judge?
That's correct. That District two, three, and four are paying their way, so the plan is complete. Number fourteen says, we're going to amend their agreement to include them, and they're paying for that inclusion, for the work that's being done.
But then it says, and number four, notwithstanding any other provisions of the agreement, cost of service shall be provided will be one sixty-two, and unless authorized by subsequent written agreements. So in other words, is it increasing the amount
It, it does.
because of the increased pay by the entities?
That's correct.
Okay, so this is no additional cost.
No additional cost.
I'm just, okay.
No additional cost.
So this is no additional cost to Nuones County. This is just amending the land agreement that's already in place, that we've already approved and paid for, and we're adding this in, but we're not, it's not costing us any more money.
That's correct. That's what two, three, and four are paying into. They have to have the agreement to change it.
Just clarification, I mean, is that, is that right? Jenny, anybody else?
That's correct.
Louis, somebody, okay.
As well as, I want to point out that we are still in the process of getting the GLO to fund this project for us. So we're really close to kind of finalizing that as well. So it may not cost the county any money at all to get our HMAP.
You may not, or you're not?
But, but, hold on, Louis, because there's, this gets confusing. Let's just stick to two, three, and four, then I'll let you go back to the GLO. On two, three, and four, they're paying their way, period.
Exactly, Judge.
And that's what fourteen does. What Louis is talking about is our portion. We applied for a grant initially from FEMA, didn't get it, then the GLO said, hey, why don't you apply from us? We've got extra funds. That's what Louis is saying, is the money that we already voted on, we may get back. That, we're very close to hearing from them. They typically tell us, like, in, it should be any day now, that they'll tell us whether or not we're going to get our money back for Nuones County. But that has nothing to do with two, three, and four. Two, three, and four is guaranteed money.
That's money we've already spent.
That's correct. We may get money back that we've already spent. That's the best way to say it.
And again, thirteen and fourteen, Jenny, this is all legally sufficient, right? Everything? You have no issues with any of this from a legal standpoint, thirteen and fourteen?
Correct.
No cost of money.
And it's not going to cost any money for the county? It's a pass through?
Yes. Each county will, each, each district will pay twenty-two, seven, seventy, I believe, to cover the additional sixty-eight, three, ten.
Okay.
All right, okay, therefore, for Kara, item number fourteen. Did I, I think I need to get a motion. I'll make the motion to approve the supplement to make certain that
Second.
District two, three, and four are included in Hazard Mitigation Action Plan. Motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. I'm going to go back to, Melinda was here, just so we can finish it up. It was, I'll bring you right back, Louis, but let me do a little quick housekeeping. Melinda, you were coming in to answer a question, so that we could go back to that consent agenda and get item E. Remember for Commissioner Gonzalez. Go ahead. What did you find out?
The two ARPA positions
Yes, ma'am.
for the medical examiner were approved in budget for this year.
Sorry, which one are we going to?
Remember, Commissioner Gonzalez wanted Melinda to find out if the ARPA was approved for those two investigators, and she says it was approved for the budget, those two investigators.
For the ARPA, that was, yeah, that was a three-two vote that, yeah, that was, I remember that now.
The investigators.
And then on Solis, it, it wasn't a typo. She was a part-time medical examiner, or medical examiner investigator that was promoted to a full-time. So the pay groups are correct. It's just twenty-nine hours a week versus now forty hours a week.
Okay, thank you very much.
So is there a motion then from you? I've got a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, and any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Post same sign. Okay, good. All right, now, I'm going to, Louis, I am going to bring you back up, but I'm going to hold on some things and just try to get the things that are most important in order to fulfill our need to make sure we have temporary generators. I need you to address item number eleven, and also Michael's here as well, but this is the extension of the ROMCO equipment for a very short amount of time for standby generators while our generators are finishing up.
I'm going to move table eleven.
Okay, I would ask that you please let Louis again finish, just like the last one.
I don't want to go into discussion, Judge. I want to move.
But we will not have generators. We will not have generators.
We've got generators. They haven't been doing a good job with the generators.
Oh, my God.
We've got generators.
I feel like I'm, I'm like having contractions here.
Generators, we shouldn't have to spend, you know, but I mean, you don't seem to understand that either. But anyway, I mean, I'm table number eleven, whether I lose or not, I don't care. My news to table number eleven until January the eighteenth, second.
You're putting this county at risk by not having, we do not have generators.
The boilers are at risk, and you all put the county.
This is not the boilers. This is the generators.
But everything we do is at risk.
No, it's not the same thing.
And what you do is not at risk.
It's not the same thing. You know what it is? It's called, this is completely irresponsible. Please allow Louis to explain before you table. I'll hear your table. Please allow him so that this county is not at risk. We had a winter storm that was unexpected.
Remember that one?
Chief Cook, I'm asking for some concept of, please call Sheriff Hooper. We will not meet jail standards if we do not have generators.
You have generators, Judge?
They're not, they're not operable right now.
Generators, they can't even fix. They got brand-new generator they can't even fix.
Okay, you're wrong about that, sir. You're confusing equipment.
Why do we keep renting, renting the old generators?
Okay, you're, we are in the process of fulfilling a construction. There's nothing wrong with the generators. They're under construction right now, and we haven't had one problem with the generators, not one. The issue you're thinking of is some other equipment. The generators will be complete very soon, but until we get the certificate of completion, we need to make sure that our jail, in particular, always has generators because of the danger that exists when you don't have them, and then you have a thousand inmates that you have to move at an unbelievable cost to the county. We've been having generators, temporary ones, until the new ones can be installed.
Judge, before, again.
Please listen to it, please.
Before I make my decision on the motion to table, which should have no debate, I have one question.
What is it?
Juan, please. Juan, can you please come? I have a question before I decide what I'm going to do on this, and I do not want to have debate because we're not supposed to, but I do have a question.
Yes, sir.
So do we have generators that are currently functioning for the jail and the courthouse?
Yes, sir, we still have our generators functioning for, for the, for the jail. Yes, sir, and for the courthouse, for the EOC and some other smaller, other areas.
And tell me why we have backup, are these backups to the backups?
No, these are backups to the new system that was installed with the, with the, that they're installing right now. That, if I'm not mistaken, that was called the summer job. Is that correct, Judge? So that was part of the summer job that was done.
So if we have a storm, we have generators?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's all I needed to know. Thank you.
Juan, excuse me.
Excuse me, I, I feel like we need.
This project on time?
Oh, so the generator project? No, sir.
They're not?
No, sir.
How far back are they?
Okay, that's.
I think, I think they were supposed to be done by December, end of December. Well, construction was supposed to be done in February, but the actual generator for the ground was supposed to be done here in December.
Okay, ho- hold on one second.
Thank you.
We, since we're asking questions, we have, there's, there's been some, there's misleading information. JP, can you please answer the question about the backup generators?
Yeah, so the backup generator system that's been designed, engineered, and is under construction right now is to provide full 100% redundancy to the jail and courthouse facility. That's the difference between the system that's currently in place, which is providing, I'll call it spot power to different parts of the building. This generator system provides 100% redundancy. The generators are already purchased. They're in Houston waiting delivery for when this construction work is completed out here, outside of the building, and that work is to wrap up in February.
And how much have we spent on backup generators to date?
I don't have that number in front of me, sir.
Okay.
Do you know, Juan?
Sir?
Do you know how much we spent so far?
I think the last time I lived, Commissioner, we were monitoring, we're already about eight hundred thousand.
How much?
Eight hundred. Probably eight hundred.
When we have generators, you're saying, JP, if we have a storm, generators, we don't have generators right now? Are you saying that? Are you contradicting what Juan said?
No, I think we're saying the same thing, but differently. So there are generators that supply a portion of the building with power, not the entire building, 100% redundancy, which is what the system that has been engineered, purchased, designed and constructed, is designed to, to provide.
So when we had winter storm.
So, hold on, I'm asking the question. So if we have a storm, and something goes down, when, if we have a storm, do we have generators that will supply sufficient power to the jails? Because that's the main function. That's what I'm going to ask that first. Do we have sufficient, right now, to back up the jail?
Now, there's power to the jail.
So right now, we have generators that if, if, God forbid, a horrible storm comes, those generators will, will supply that sufficient power to the jails right now?
Yes, a portion of the jail will be supplied with power.
What portion of the jail?
I don't know the specific areas and functions, but it's designed to keep the cells locked, step number one, and provide a little bit of lighting and security functions throughout the jail. The system that we've designed, that is under construction, that's already been purchased.
But that's not the backup. That's a different system.
It's a full backup system.
But that's the.
100% redundancy.
That's the one that's coming.
To say it's coming, it's, it's here. I mean.
No, no, but this ROMCO is the one that's on the thing today, that they want to table.
And all that is, is an extension of the temporary portable generators until the final installation of the permanent generator solution.
It's, it's the insurance that we have, but, but just to be clear, when we say we have, for, for those of you that remember winter storm, it was thirty degrees inside this building. There was no power. We could not function. There was no power here in this building sufficient to run this building, and there was not sufficient power to run the jail, except for, as you said, what we call the emergency emergencies. It's like the lightest, we could not function EOC here in this courthouse. We couldn't. That's why we moved to Tower Two. We could not run EOC during winter storm in this building.
I'll be honest, I'm not super worried about the courthouse, because if it's a storm, then everybody's not going to be here. I'm asking about the jails.
I agree.
I asked my questions about the jails, and, I mean, and he's telling me we have generators, Juan's telling me we have generators that are going to keep it open, then, then that's what matters to me the most, and continuing to spend hundreds of thousands of dollars for these backup generators
Yeah.
do not make sense to me. We've now spent eight hundred thousand dollars, maybe a million dollars, because you're saying the last time you looked, because what does this cost? Is it a hundred, two hundred thousand a month? What does it cost? I don't even.
They're about eighty thousand a month.
Right, so I, I just, I'm.
But I just want to make sure the air is clear regarding the purpose of the generators Juan's talking about versus the generators that have already been purchased, are sitting in a warehouse in Houston and being constructed right now.
That's not the backup one.
Completely different systems.
The agenda item is about, is extending the backup.
And it's extending it for, for a small amount of time, because we believe through, we will finish these generators in February.
That is correct.
And, and just so you know, this court literally just approved, I think in, was it October, Michael? September, October? We literally just hired the construction folks to do this project in the fall. I mean, I, I don't think it was too long ago, so there's nothing about this being not on time. They just started the job in Octo, maybe September twenty-second.
I'll call for a question, Judge.
September twenty-second.
Take a vote.
All those in favor of tabling this to January fourth?
Eighteenth.
I would ask that you at least.
Second.
Yeah, he already made it.
Did he say the eighteenth?
Yes, sir.
He said the eighteenth, yeah.
Boy. I don't care if I get three votes or not. I'm going to call for an emergency meeting, and I'm going to call TIDM, and I'm going to call jail standards, and I'm going to ask all of you guys to come in here. It's unbelievable.
Just do whatever you want. Just take the vote, please.
All those in favor of this terrible decision, say aye.
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 No.
No.
Louis, can you help us through item, actually, you know what? I'm going to, you can, but really, I'm going to defer to Jenny, because I think that some of this is, is both you and her, but it is the school safety technology project, and some of it is, is just also time sensitive, so that the products can get to the school by the second, by the, you know, when they come back to school in January. Which ones are ready, Jenny? Which ones need to be subject to, or is it easier for you to say that there should be, I'd like to make a motion to approve the school safety technology project agreements with the following school districts, Bankett, Bishop, Driscoll, West Oso, and I'm going to say this, subject to whatever it is you guys need to finish, but just that you use the rest of the year to finish it and get it to the schools by the, by the first of the year.
B, Bishop, we still need a, a number from them to fill into the documents. Everything else is ready.
Okay, so how about if I just say approval subject to your finishing the agreement with Bishop? Is that better? Or?
Yes.
Is that okay?
Judge, that's second. I just had discussion.
All right, ready to go. Ready for your discussion?
Jenny, I think when I called you on these, because I have similar ones that I'm going to bring at some point too, but I'm going to do it a little differently, I think. You had said you needed some more time for some more justification, so I was going to add, or some, some word you used to make sure that this was all qualified, and it was all good, and I'm all for this. I just want to make sure that we do it all right, so I can't remember the word you used when I asked you about it. Can you, do you remember?
We, yeah, well, we would feel more comfortable if we had more time to review the structure that we've had. What we've created is an agreement with the schools, so that the schools will independently contract with AT&amp;T. I believe AT&amp;T is negotiating well with the schools, so.
All it is, this agreement, Jenny, is that we're giving money to the schools, and they're going to contract, and they're going to hold the license, and they're going to hold the annual maintenance. All we're saying is we give you this amount of money so that you can go purchase this equipment.
Again, Jenny, that to fill out, they should have filled out the application with the, with the date, to make sure they're going to qualify for all that money, but also, they have to understand that it's a one-time deal. I know the AT&amp;T is working with them, but the thing is, AT&amp;T has a, a lot more to do than, because they're going to come back and say, well, you know, you're going to do it next year, you're going to owe this much money.
Well, I, I think that discussion is, is something that the schools are expressing that they have concerns about the renewals, but I think the court has made clear, there's a certain amount, and that is it.
Yeah, they, they are all, they are all 100% on board that we're getting them a head start.
I haven't finished yet, Judge.
All that we're doing is giving them this agreement.
That's somewhere in the country that they signed and agreed to that. They have to, we don't want to come back later on and say, you're going to have to give us more money.
No, I mean, it's clear from the con, you know, from the agreements with the schools that that is the sole, that is one group, one set of money, and that's it.
And, and the other.
And they have been qualified, to answer your question, Commissioner Chesney, and there is actually a narrative and a, and a justification under community policing and safety under ARPA. That's what you were asking, whether or not that had been done, and that has been done.
Jenny had, right, but Jenny, when I called Jenny and asked about these, because like I said, I had similar, set aside similar money, and I'm, and I'm going to wait, because I may do mine differently now. She had indicated to me that, that fine, like I am and you are, fine with the concept, but needed more time for, to make sure that we're doing it right. So all I'm trying to say is, I don't want, because we pass it today, that someone just signs it tomorrow without, I'm putting this back on you, right, because I'm, what I'm thinking I'm going to do now with the money that I set aside is just come back and say to the court, with the new court manager, or not court manager, the new ARPA manager, and say, look, I want to just give this money for school safety to the schools that I allocated for, and I just want to do a real simple agreement that says, this is a one-time deal. Here's your allocation. If you want to use it for AT&amp;T, you can. If you want to use and I just want to do a real simple agreement that says, this is a one-time deal, here's your allocation. If you want to use it for AT&amp;T, you can. If you want to use it for somebody else, you can. So I'm going to do it a little differently. I'm not saying this, I'm not saying that on this, because Judge wants to do it this way, I'm fine with that, but I, I'm just saying, I want it to be clear in this motion, that just because we pass it today, if, you, you can't come back and have, in other words, I don't want you coming back next year going, well, if I had a little more time, I, I wouldn't have agreed to this. I want you to sign off on this, and I want you to send it to the court, to the court, that you have signed off on this, and that you are completely comfortable with it, because I didn't get from you that, I, I got from you, you, you needed a little more time, and I'm not trying to delay this, because school safety is important and we need to do it, but I don't want to do it wrong, and then we end up having to pay the money back either.
No, if, if I could take the, the issue that I have into executive and explain, um, the legal question that I am balancing against the time constraints, uh, I would ask to do that.
Okay, well, that's, that's fine with me, if that's okay with the judge.
That's fine, I'll ask Jeff to join us, because you're really the one, not Jenny, who's been working with this, um, you know, a hundred percent. And I know you're, I'm saying to you, I'd like to bring him in, because representing your office, he's the one that's been working with this for a month, you know? So, I mean, that's fine, but these agreements are nothing more than we're giving you this amount of money. The doc, it's recepsa, the document speaks for itself. You don't have to invent things that, that are not going to happen. But what can happen is that we can get another school shooting, and that's what I'm upset about, is that we have absolutely had, we've absolutely have had lots of time for this. All this is, is an agreement to say, we're going to, you're a sub-recipient. You're going to, we're going to give you this amount of money, and you're going to turn around and use it for this particular program.
And Judge, I'm, I have asked to take that into executive, so that the court can make the business decision based on good information.
Okay, sounds good. Let's do it.
All right, um, I'm going to, uh, hear from, um, Louis, we're going to, we're not going to have the time that we wanted, but I want you just to take the, the TIDAM pieces of it, and just give, like, literally the briefest, the briefest explanation that you can. It's in your packet, everybody. Um, let's start with, this is item, um, this is item nine.
Did we do number seven?
No, no, we have not. I'm on item number nine. So, I'm on item number nine.
I want to table number seven.
I, I hear all the noise.
Count before nine, Judge.
I hear all the noise.
I want to table item number seven.
And when I call it, I will let you do that, but I'm not there yet.
Second.
So on item, Louis, go ahead and please proceed.
Judge, I would like to make a motion to table this item.
You know, you know what I'd really like? I would like for us to have twenty minutes of peace.
We can't, Judge, because you won't let us.
No.
He's been asking for an hour to get to this item, you've skipped over it sixteen times.
And if he were, if he were deserving of the courtesy, it might be extended, but it's not going to be extended, because I'm calling the item.
I make a motion to table this item.
Well, and when I call on it, I'm going to call on you, Commissioner Chesney, so you can do that. There's others that are going to have to be tabled as well.
I'll call for the question.
Well, I'm, we're not there yet. So, Louis, please, I've got to make sure that we get this for TIDAM, it's very important, and then we'll call. So...
I'll call for the question, item seven, Judge.
I'll tell you what we're going to do right now. Hold, hold that thought, Louis, okay? Hold that thought.
Judge, you skipped boilers, we skipped, we kept skipping around on this agenda. It's hard to, it's hard for people that are here that expecting it to be called at a certain time, and we keep skipping it around, and you keep calling the ones that you want to call, and you won't let anybody else have anything that we want to put up.
We're going to keep, we're going to keep to the way this works.
We've been wanting to do the boilers for an hour. We're not even going to get to the boilers, because we're going to have to leave it once.
The work that needs to be done is called by the presiding officer, and for the next twenty-five minutes,
I think so, Judge, I think we...
I'm going to be doing it the way I see fit to do it, which is to try to get the information that we need to do.
Judge, and I motioned to, I motioned to table item nine.
Commissioner.
I made a motion to table nine.
Commissioner, I can't, you can't receive a motion until I call for that. I know you'd like to bully me all the way out the door,
Judge, we're on this item.
but we're not going to do it that way.
You called the item before, you can't...
I'll tell you what.
You called the item.
Okay, I'm giving notice that Commissioners Court is going to go into executive session at this time to discuss matters listed on the agenda when authorized by the provisions of the Open Meetings Act, Chapter five, five-one, the Texas Government Code. We do so, um, inside, uh, this executive session, uh, to discuss with our lawyer in accordance with the government code, sections five, five-one, oh-seven-one, seven-two, seven-three, four, five, seven-six, eight-six, and eight-seven. Uh, there are matters that have been listed and matters that we have discussed on the agenda, including those listed in the special motions list, as well as those that have come up here recently regarding, um, the order of business. Nonetheless, uh, we will discuss with our lawyer what matters relating to litigation, real property gives, personal matters termination, county advisory bodies, security devices, economic development negotiations, and any other matter that may be discussed in executive session. We'll come back on the record, uh, as soon as we can, and it's twelve, it's twelve thirty-six PM. Connie, go ahead and take us off. Okay, thank you so much. Okay, we're back on the record. It's twelve fifty-six PM. For the record, because we record, there was not a quorum for executive session, but the good news is, is that on item A, we already passed item A, and on item, I mean, earlier today, that was on the county game room policies. We had that there in case we needed to consult with our attorney. Uh, and the second one is B, consult with the attorney on county policy-related donations, and I was informed that, uh, that did not need to be brought up at this time pursuant to five, five-one, oh-seven-one. That's our, talking to our lawyer. Um, and so there was, the only matters that would need to be addressed in this court would have to do with the ones that we skipped on the consent agenda, so I'm going to have you turn to that for the, uh, purposes of, um, bringing them back. It would be items eighteen, twenty-one, and twenty-two. And, uh, I would entertain, um, since those questions did not get answered in executive session, you have two choices, Court. You can, I can entertain a motion to table, or I can entertain a motion to pass these, um, special...
Make a motion to table.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. So that has to do with eighteen, twenty-one, and twenty-two. Nine and ten were tabled earlier, and two was passed, okay? The rest of it needs a clean motion, Kara. The rest of the motions on item C, I make a motion to approve the special motions list, obviously with the exceptions that we've already been given. Uh, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, and all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye?
And abstain on item eight.
Okay, abstention on item eight for modest.
Line item eight, sorry.
Line item eight.
Now, it's not clean at all.
So it wasn't very clean. I tried. Okay, let me go back, let me go back, okay? Sorry about that.
Okay.
Um, my motion, Kara, was to approve the remainder of the special motions list dated December fourteenth, twenty-twenty-two. We've already excluded some. I will add one more for exclusion. Oh, no, 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 I don't exclude it, it's just an abstention.
I'm just abstaining on that one.
Can you just do eight right now, and then go back and do the others? That way you can abstain from eight.
Okay, I'll call item eight within, just to help you. Item eight for special motions list, I'll make the motion.
Is that, is that the school safety?
No, no, I'm still on the consent agenda, item C. All I'm trying to do is get a clean motion from Ms. Sands. We've excluded some, and I'm trying to put the rest of them in the record. So the first motion is to approve everything, um, but item number eight. We're going to vote on that, uh, separately, and that includes all the ones that will be tabled for the future, and I'll make the motion, and is there a second?
Second.
Second, and all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
That does not include the tabled motions.
That's correct. And then now, we're going to take item eight as, as a courtesy. The clerk wants this one cleaner. So line item eight, is there a motion?
Commissioner Chesney isn't showing up.
Okay, Cameraj?
He needs to vote, he needs to show up.
Kara, Ms. Sands, the county clerk wants you to, please turn your video on, so that it's counted as a vote. There he is. All right, and now for i, line item eight, for clarity. Um, there's a motion, is there a second, to approve line item number eight on special motions list? Still working on C, consent agenda. Okay, I'll make the motion, is there a second?
Can I second if I'm going to abstain?
Yeah, your vote could be an abstention, but I, I need a second. Commissioner Hernandez, will you second it? Okay, and all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Abstain.
Again, this does not, this does not include number eighteen, correct?
That's correct. I called it as only number eight, only line item eight on special motions list dated December fourteenth, twenty-twenty-two.
Right, so I'm just saying, your previous motion to this did not include eighteen, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, and nine and ten, I'm just making sure.
That is correct. I have that on the record. This is correct.
Thank you.
All the, all those in favor signify by saying aye? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, and there's an abstention. Right, that does conclude that piece of it. And then, um, there is the matter of... Give me one second. We already did the E. Okay, I'm going back to the schools. I think we might have a solution. It's item number eight, and it's school safety technology project. There is one item on item little B, Bishop Independent School District. It's missing the sams.gov number, and we would approve these contracts subject to that number being filled in. In fact, I will even make the motion, until you feel like it's a hundred percent ready, don't release it, but this way Banketti, Bishop, Driscoll, and West Oso could have their agreements, and these agreements, once again, are, um, with them. I will also, in light of just, in the light most favorable to everybody, uh, so that it fulfills all the eligibility, also put a caveat that, uh, the county attorney is going to, uh, consult with and check with the sheriff to see if he needs to have any, I don't know if the word involvement is, is okay, but if, if that's broad enough for you, Ms. Dorsey, involvement, to make certain that, um, that this school safety project not only is fulfilled, but that, um, it's done in the right way. For instance, you know, when you're working with school safety, you want to make sure that the right, uh, law enforcement is intertwined. How about that? And so I think that the sheriff will have, uh, some opportunity here to weigh in with the county attorney on this agreement, in case there's any language he deems necessary to make sure that it comports with what we call law enforcement duties for Nueces County. And if there may be none, there may be none, but if there are, you've got it. All those, any other questions, discussion? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye? Aye?
Aye.
Okay, that's item number eight. All right, that leaves us with, um, uh, all of the FEMA stuff and the boilers. It's one oh-five. Does the court wish to adjourn at this time? If so, I'm going to need some tables. If you don't, let me know.
I would move that we table items nine and ten.
Second.
Okay, well, I'm not going to be here in the new year, so I can't, um, deliver number nine, but I can address it in about one minute by telling you what your packet has, and then you can table item ten until, um, the new year.
We can receive it in writing, Judge. It's been motioned and tabled. I would just like to table, please. We're past the time, and we've made people wait on the boilers, that's important, so I need to do that one. Thank you.
Second again.
Motion and a second to a table, the emergency management report, no big things, just all the FEMA stuff that needs to be relayed to everybody by the end of the year, federal emergency management, American Rescue Plan Act, Emergency Rental Assistance Program, and other man, other related matters. So that's item number nine and ten for table for, I'm not sure when he said. He didn't.
I said, we'd receive the, the written reports, and, and then we can put it on accordingly.
Yeah, I'll just receive the written report is what his motion is. Okay, this is not a written report. It, it was meant for discussion, but the item number ten does have quite a bit of documentation that could satisfy. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
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 No.
Judges need also a motion to table number seven.
I've tabled to number seven.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
No?
Aye.
Okay, I mean, I'm happy to work, and there's nothing going on this afternoon on our schedule here. Um...
I believe that's the only item left is number six. Is that correct?
Item, item six, and we are past the time, so I would need a motion to receive information if you want to do that.
Make a motion to table.
I would motion to receive number six only if that's the only one left on the agenda. I was just checking with the county clerk. She usually keeps a pretty good tab on that as well. Do you see any others that are on the agenda unaccounted for?
No, we've already gone through the rest.
Just making sure. Then I would make a motion to extend only to hear the boiler presentation. An action item?
Okay, I've got a motion, and is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye? Aye?
Aye.
All right, um, so the last item for the day is going to be the boiler installation project, and this is an update only. I'm sorry, that's not true. There is a receive update and discuss and consider any needed action, and we are going to hear from JP Graham on this matter. And before you, before you start, I was going to say, is there a slide deck?
The answer is yes, and she's...
Okay, great. And also, I'm going to have you think about this as you, uh, start your presentation. This morning, when you had not arrived yet, you did not have the benefit of hearing unless you were listening on the road. You may have, uh, did you? You did. Okay, never mind. I would ask that you address that matter that was brought up about that concern of safety. Okay.
All right, great. Thank you for bringing up the presentation, and I will give you the next slide instruction at the appropriate time. Um, and so here we are again. Uh, last time we presented to the court was about a month ago, on the sixteenth of November, and so the actions that we'll talk about here are updates that have occurred since that time, as well as some pending activities that will take place in the next, uh, couple of months with our contractor, ABM. So if you'll go to the next slide, please. So, since we met with you on the November sixteenth court meeting, we did confirm that, uh, there was a question about whether or not changing out the pressure relief valve would change any warranty conditions relative to these boilers. We did receive written confirmation from the manufacturer that there is not going to be an adjustment or change to the warranty for the boiler. So that's good news, considering, uh, some of the questions that you had on that item. Also, during the last period since we met in November sixteenth, ABM did complete a significant portion of the building automation controls. The reason this is relevant and important is that you might remember there was discussion that the lack of control was causing some concerns on the blowdown and, and, um, um, the, um, some excess water, uh, leaking out onto the floor. Um, so completing these controls is a step in the right direction, so we're correcting that item of concern. However, um, ABM still does have some additional work to complete their controls, and that'll be going on for the next couple of weeks, and we can, we can get some specific updates from ABM relative to that, and when the time comes. We did also work with Ron Wheaton to clarify some prior statements that had been made, and I've categorized them here as wrong boilers. Uh, there was questions as to whether or not the boilers were properly specified, ordered, whether they matched the existing system and so on. So Ron Wheaton was able to provide us some written confirmation that the, the boilers that were ordered, uh, and now installed can be accommodated to, uh, meet the needs of the county system. So he's given us some written clarification on that. And by the way, Commissioners, I, I believe you should have a package from me that was delivered to you on December fifth, and it contains some of this clarifying documentation for your benefit. Uh, there was a question at the last Commissioners Court meeting about the water quality, and the water quality system has been reactivated by ABM. Uh, we have asked for water testing samples to be delivered, uh, and so that is an ongoing activity for ABM to get water samples taken, delivered, and verified, that we do have water quality that meets the expectations of the engineer of record for the project. That's ongoing. We also did, um, receive what we call an ultrasonic pipe testing report. They went around the building in numerous location and tested the pipe thickness. The reason that this item was brought to your attention is that one of the previous meetings, there was some discussion about whether or not the, uh, TDLR or the state inspector was satisfied with the condition of the piping, and he in fact asked for some testing, and that was actually something that predated, uh, Ron Wheaton had actually previously asked for as well. So that work was completed in the normal course of business, and good news is that the, the piping has not shown any deficiencies that cause any concern for anyone along the way. Um, there is some additional testing going on for what are called, uh, steam vessels, and so that work is ongoing. We are expecting a report any time now, but, uh, the main thrust of the question was about the piping itself, and that testing has been conducted, and no deficiencies have been identified. Lastly, on this action since the last court meeting, um, the state did grant a sixty-day extension to complete the work that was requested. This, you'll remember that the state asked for two things primarily. One, that the pressure relief valve be modified to be a fifteen PSI valve to operate, to match the operating pressure of the boiler. And then secondly, they wanted the, um, um, pipe thickness testing that I just mentioned to be conducted. So we have, uh, made progress on, on both of those items, and I'll talk about on the next slide, some of the upcoming activities. All right, so I mentioned on the previous slide that we will complete the installation, and I say we, I mean as a team here. Uh, ABM is our contractor, but we, as a team, county, ABM, Gov'n, all observing this work, will complete the installation of the building automation systems. There was a section of pipe that needed to be rerouted, so ABM has that on the schedule to reroute their, a little bit of piping work along the way, as well as install an isolation valve, so that we can have some additional control... as well as install an isolation valve so that we can have some additional control and the ability to isolate portions of the boiler and water tank system from one another. We will additionally be retesting the water quality for the project. I mentioned that in the previous slide as something that needs to be attended to. So ABM is scheduling that water quality testing. Getting near the end here, as you wrap up, any project that involves mechanical systems and equipment, you will go ahead and do what's called test and balancing. So that would be hydronic, and in this case, hydronic means water pumps, making sure that those are flowing and operating according to the design engineer standards. Then lastly, it's called commissioning of all equipment, where there'd be basically a proof test that the systems are designed or are operating according to the design that the engineer of record has designed and implemented on behalf of the county as a part of this important energy savings project. So those are some of the upcoming activities specific to the boiler. There are, I will tell you, there are 1,000 other little things that take place on any project as you bring it to a close, but these are the main elements of our work as we work to complete this project for the county. And if there are any questions, I think I see Commissioners raised a hand.
I think Connie's trying to tell me that, I can't see right this minute, but she's gonna get me back on. There we go. We'll recognize Commissioner Chesney.
Thank you. Just a few questions, and really, mine are kind of for Gov'n if he's in the room. I'd like to ask him a couple of questions, if that's okay. And Juan, I'd like him to be available too, so if y'all could kind of get up there. Would you mind? There you go, perfect. Thank you, Connie. Okay, so Gov'n, y'all up there? Where's Gov'n?
Who is this question for? Gov'n, could you approach the?
And Juan, both, yeah. Gov'n and Juan.
They're both here.
Juan, you up there too? Gov'n, get up there.
They're there.
Okay, so what I really need to know is, when did the county last meet with the state? And what did the state say as it relates to this January deadline? Gov'n, Juan, were y'all in on that meeting? Or was there one?
The county and ABM and Public Works and Gov'n met with the state on November, November 10th. And it was during that meeting where the county received, and ABM really, received the extension that I mentioned, Commissioner Chesney, 60-day extension to complete the work that was requested by the, by TDLR, the state.
So, but what I didn't hear was, I'm sorry, what was the date? November what? I couldn't?
Yeah, I misspoke. It's November 15th, excuse me. November 15th.
So they've given you 60 days from then?
60 additional days, which takes us out to February, January 23rd. And what TDLR wrote, Commissioner, is that the TDLR indicated that the valves were changed out to be 15 pressure, PSI pressure than the previous notice issued by Terry Hewitt, who is the TDLR inspector in this case, would be resolved. That was on November 15th.
And Juan, do you and Gov'n, I was gonna, I wanted to ask Juan and Gov'n. I'm okay if Jeffy's gonna answer, but if y'all have a different opinion, if you're standing there silent, I'm gonna assume you're agreeing.
No, no, no. I'm gonna let Gov'n go.
Oh, go ahead.
Go ahead and move it down, Gov'n.
I think what the statement was made about the TDLR and the boiler chief inspector of giving the 60 days, what he has done is, is they have come up and showed the concerns about the issues with the boiler. And so they said that, okay, we normally allow you to have 60 days to make the changes and the required certifications for the boiler by the EOR or the manufacturer. Get all of that lined up and taken care of within that 60 days. If you don't do it, and I don't know whether the letter says it or not, but normally, the response from them is, if you don't do that, then we are going to red-tag it. But that's their term of red tag.
And so that's, that was my, yeah, that was my next question. If the deadline isn't met, that's what happens, right? They red-tag you?
That's, it's not stated that? So I have not seen the letter from the state inspector. It went straight to the ABM.
Okay, we're getting some extra information since what you're asking, Gov'n, has not even seen. JP, can you answer the question regarding what happens after 60 days?
We don't have information.
I was just gonna ask, hold on just a second. If I could stay on my line here. Juan, did you have anything you wanted to add to that? Do you know any additional information? I really wanted Juan and Gov'n.
Yes, sir, Commissioner. I mean, I haven't seen a letter yet from the state from the time that we met with them, so I haven't seen any document from him today.
Right, but I'm saying, do you know what happens?
And normal standards, I agree with Gov'n. Normally, what happens is, after the 60-day, they do red-tag you. I know I talked to some of my staff, and normally, if you don't take care of the issue within the timeline, that's a normal process, Commissioner.
Yeah, and we're speculating a little bit on what their reaction would be. And I say that, Commissioner, because the state did previously inspect these boilers back in March and again in August. They found no findings in the month of August. That was on August 31st. So, you know, I would hope that there's some leniency should we need it. But ABM has been given a 60-day extension, and all the information points to them being able to complete the work that was requested by the state in the amount of time. So that's where we stand, Commissioner.
I have a question.
And Juan, let me ask you a question again, Juan, real quick. So based on what we're, what's been happening with all this, and if the ABM person wants to come up, that's great. And I've got a couple for Ron and Wheaton also. It is, I mean, what is your, like, this has been problematic. So do you recommend that we continue to make these payments to ABM? What do we do here to get this, you know, where we need to get it? In your opinion?
Commissioner, in recommending payment to ABM, there are some items that have not been completed, not only along with the boiler, but other projects that they're working for the county. I know that for the past year, they've pretty much, some of it has been some of the work that needs to be done, but at the same time, some of the work has been rework or work that, you know, we have some of this equipment that either needs to be redone, or I say redone, right, but it needs to be fixed. So most of it's fixed work, if that's correct, contain. In a normal process like this, Commissioner, you know, I know that the schedules of these projects, I mean, they're late. These projects were supposed to be done since last year. The boiler was supposed to be done since last year. The chillers were supposed to be done since last year. The parking lot for the Galahad was supposed to be done since the middle of this year. And has progress been made? I'm gonna say no, because most of it's been just rework. So at this time, Commissioner, as a professional engineer, and a normal process of, if I were the one saying, you know, should the contractor get paid at this time? I would recommend to court that payments need to be stopped until we start seeing more progress from ABM.
So, and I'll, you know, certainly make a motion to that effect at some point, so we need to have that discussion. You know, we're already way past the time we're supposed to be here today, but we need to have that discussion, so we need to, I definitely think we need to pull those and take a look at them. So any of those bills, Juan, that you're disputing based on progress and proper progress, then you have an obligation to bring those forward to the court, and I know you do on lots of occasions. And I would certainly like to see what the heck has been going on on this too. And then, y'all were all kind of talking at the same time, but on the letter, did we get a copy from ABM on that letter? Did someone, did the county get a copy of that, or what do we?
I think we got the, we got the initial letter from the state. I know they pretty much hadn't delivered that letter. I haven't seen the extension letter, Commissioner. We hadn't gotten a copy of that letter. I know that we were just told in the meeting that they were gonna give them a 60-day extension, but that I know of, I don't even know if there's an issue of that letter to date, giving them that, from the state, giving them that 60 days. You do have one? Okay.
Yeah, we don't have a letter.
If there's, if someone has them, then we need to get them. But again, before we, before we move on to that, I do wanna, you know, really, if I need to make it in the form of motion, I'll do that. But I, and I think we need to really take a look at these bills and this progress, because there's just there have been multiple projects that have come into question that ABM's got involvement in, and that's just a reality. And there, maybe there's good answers to all of them. So I think what we should do is suspend all of these payments until the January agenda so that we have a chance to get them all in, and Juan can come forward, and we can talk about them in executive session, or whatever we need to do with Jenny. But just continuing to pay bills where, yeah, I mean, the ones you rattle off, I mean, I'm aware of most of them. I mean, it's been very frustrating, to say the least, and I get. Everybody gets a chance to cure, and everybody gets a chance to mitigate. I'm all, I'm great, that's great, but we're bringing this back over and over again, and it can't continue. So on that letter, JP, do you have a copy of that letter? Is that where you're getting back up there?
Yeah, so the reason I stood back at the mic, Commissioner, is there is not a letter. What you see is that TDLR has a portal where they indicate the status of each approval, and so they've reset the status of the approval to extend the duration out 60 additional days. So you can go to the TDLR website and see the extension that's been granted.
So there is no written letter, and that's why none of us have a copy of the letter, but it's inside the portal that's available to all?
That's right.
Right, but I mean, if it's inside the portal, right, couldn't we print that out and provide that to us? I mean?
Well, it's inside.
Yeah, absolutely. And so, Commissioner, I would also point, in the documentation that I gave to you last week, there's a copy of the meeting minutes from ABM prepared with, in the meeting on November 15th, held with TDLR. And if you look through your package, you'll see a document that is, doesn't tell you a whole lot, but it is the letter that I'll be referring to. And let me find the page, Commissioner, for you. It is simply.
While y'all are all standing there too, I'd like Ron to come up and address some of these engineering things that we've had over the last few meetings. I'm trying to move this as fast as I possibly can to get everybody out of here. But, I mean, I appreciate Ron being here, so I really would like to hear from him next on some of the valuations he's made, some of the things he's, you know, talked about, and let him tell us where he thinks we are today, because he's the engineer of record. He's the one that I really need to hear from probably the most today.
You bet. Page 93, though, of your report will give you an example of the letter that we're, letter, that's probably an over-characterization, but it's a document that talks about the date.
And so Ron is at the podium, as well as ABM is also here with us. But there's three things that, before we leave here today, need to be established. And so I don't know if this is gonna be Ron to answer, as Commissioner Chesney said, engineering questions, or if JP wants to chime in. But there has been an accusation, an allegation of safety. And there's also been an allegation of wrong boilers being ordered. And there was an allegation that somehow the state wanted us to test the thickness of the pipe. That has already been done, and there is no problem with the thickness of the pipe. There was also another test that was done that also came out favorable. So when we talk about the state and extending the 60 days, that is not for anything but the 15 PSI, as I understand it. But I want to make sure that I understand that. And then I'm, I'm gonna wanna make sure that the 15 PSI, the 15 PSI is gonna be done in time. Those are the things I'm gonna be looking for, and if, in the interest of time, if you can answer those questions.
I have a question real quick, Judge.
That would be great. We're all talking at the same time. It'd be helpful. Everybody just needs to hold on just a moment.
Again, I had the floor.
Everybody needs to hold on. Everybody needs to hold on. Everybody needs to hold on. When everybody's quiet, we'll start again. Hang on. Hang on.
Judge, you keep interrupting.
Everybody will stop. Everybody will stop.
Judge, please, can I finish? I'm begging to please finish my last question.
If you can just, everybody stop. Everybody needs to stop.
That's what's called a diversion, Brett.
Everybody, please hush.
I'm begging to please finish my question.
Ron, will you go ahead and come on up?
Can you turn back to the, to?
There he is.
Okay, Ron, Ron, so could you just give us a, no, 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 Ron, please, Wheaton. I'm asking the questions. I'm trying to get this done as fast as I can, but I keep getting interrupted. So Ron, if you could please comment, I've read all your updates. I've read, we've talked about a lot of this during the meetings where you weren't here, and I'm not saying that negatively, you just weren't here, you didn't, you had a conflict. I get it. No, so I just need to know where you believe we stand. This is my last line of questioning, and everybody else can have their time. But I just need to know, my last line of questioning is, where are we from a safety standpoint? Where are we from a, over, you know, the productivity standpoint? Where are we as our engineer of record on this in regards to safety and performance and so forth and so on? And I get, land has their role, your role is to necessarily say what ABM has or hasn't done, unless you want to. I'd be happy to hear that too, or what land has or hasn't done. I don't, I just wanna know what the heck we need to get done. So if you could give us your opinion, I'd appreciate it. And I'll probably have a couple of follow-ups, and then everybody else can jump.
So let's talk about boiler safety. I think that was the initial topic. It got everything started. The boiler you have is rated for 150 PSI internal pressure capability. Under the normal ASME code, that means it has a four-to-one safety factor at 150 PSI. You're operating it between 8 and 12 PSI, which basically means the safety factor on the boiler as it's running is almost 40-to-1, which is extremely high. So the safety within the boiler and the boiler equipment itself is very good. The question that the state brought up and that I had asked for back from October 21 is to survey the piping, which was already discussed today. We've found that those results indicate that the corrosion and the integrity of those piping systems are intact, which means that they are intrinsically safe. Piping is not designed for 15 PSI. And I'll give you an example. The main headers in the boiler room are Schedule 88-inch pipe. Under new conditions, that pipe is rated to operate up to 740 PSI. So we're nowhere near the bursting pressure of the pipe, but it had to be checked. There are still some items that need to be checked, and there's a third-party engineer that will provide you a sealed report on that. So from the standard and the safety basis, I think you're, in my opinion, in good condition. What was your next question, Brett?
What was your next question, he asks?
Sorry, my main concern was safety. I'm accidentally muted, I'm sorry. My main concern was safety. You've answered that. If you're telling me as an engineer that you feel those boilers are safe to operate currently while these fixes are being made, then is that, is that what I'm hearing from you say?
So basically, there's four stages of control on the boiler, so they have intrinsic safety basis and the pressure control of the boiler itself. Those have all been set down. That was one of the first modifications we required after we stopped them from operating when they were originally set at 150. Those are all locked in to run at 8 to 12 PSI. The maximum pressure the system could produce would be 30 PSI, in which case the pressure relief valves go. The reason for doing the study on the piping and the vessels is to make sure that 30 PSI won't affect them. So even if we overpressure the boilers to the 30 PSI, not overpressure them, but exceed 15 PSI, the system can never go past 30 because the valves will open and relieves the steam pressure at that level. Will never get higher than 30 PSI. And the probability that that will happen is extremely low because the controllers in the fuller stages will try to shut the boilers down or stop the production of steam beyond 15 PSI the way they're set now.
Thank you, Ron. I'm done questioning. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I have a question, Mr. Wheaton.
Commissioner Hernandez.
Did you ever write a letter or make some kind of a statement to Juan or somebody that you had concerns about the boiler?
We've written multiple letters.
But did you have concerns about the boiler? You're stating that you, did you have concerns about the boilers?
The boilers themselves, no.
You didn't? Okay.
It's the controls, the firing system, and the pressure relief valves that are in question.
That made you concerned about the boilers?
Correct.
And did you, the piping itself, is it still shaking? Does it still shake, or did you fix that as well?
That's a totally different area, and to my knowledge, there hasn't been any steam hammers occurring in any recent months.
Okay, considering the, how old the pipes are, and are you saying that they're still safe? They're not weak at all? They, you know, they might go burst at any time?
That was why, no. That was why the ultrasonic thickness test was done on the existing system, which LAN just reported. That was done by a third-party where they go in with an ultrasonic gauge and actually measure the thickness of the piping to find out if you have corrosion or if there's any potential. And none was found, that I'm aware of. I have not seen the final report. That's still pending under a review of another PE. But everything that was indicated so far and the data that's available shows that there's no issue there.
All right, may I ask, who was this third-party company?
I believe it's Brian Mendy with Bath Engineering.
They're from Corpus?
Yes.
Okay, I just wanna make sure that what we've done, what you've modified, it's gonna, is, is any of that work that you've done, is that under warranty or anything like that?
Uh, the warranties would be through the boiler manufacturer, and LAN just reported to you that the boiler, that they have written documentation that they will support the warranty, so...
They will support the warranty to the boiler, but I'm talking about the modifications you've all had made.
It's the same letter.
Is it?
They're supporting the modifications in the warranty.
When was the last time that these boilers were inspected?
Or what, by the boiler inspector?
Uh, yes, whoever, when, when was the last time that you know of?
I'd have to refer to ABM on that, because that's not something I'm controlling.
Didn't we just state earlier that August was the last time the state came in, and then most recently, they came in to give us the sixty days?
One.
Back in September, Commissioner, back in September.
Okay.
October timeframe.
Did you talk to those people that came in?
Yes, sir, I did. I, I talked to the state, yes, sir.
Okay, and you're satisfied with whatever answers they gave you?
Uh, from the, from the state, Commissioner, or from...
From whoever, whoever talked to you?
I think, I think from the state, I know when we had the meeting here on the last, back in November before the holidays, I know that they did mention that they're still considering the, the boilers unsafe until when this retro fit is gonna be completed, based on the installation of the relief valve.
So, they're still consider, considering the boilers unsafe?
Yes, sir, that's what the statement.
Okay, uh, back in, back in November, did anybody come by and inspect the boilers?
Uh, from the state, no, sir.
Uh, but from somewhere else?
Uh, you know what, Commissioner, I think LAN mechanical engineer came by on the first of November, November the eighth or the ninth, somebody came and did an inspection from LAN, a mechanical engineer.
And did you get to talk to those people, or...
No, sir, I was not aware that, that the LAN was on site, a mechanical engineer was on site.
Did any of your staff talk to them?
No, sir, they weren't aware that a mechanical engineer was on site from LAN.
Have they gotten your report on...
Uh, I got a report, um, when the, they last submitted an invoice, I noticed that Samantha Peterson had submitted some, uh, some hours and, and some, uh, some, what do you call it, some expenses, airport expenses, uh, for, for November the ninth, and I questioned it to, to JP, and also there, there were people that were sending the billings, and they had informed me that there was a mechanical engineer that was on site on November the eighth and the ninth.
Is it normal for anybody to come in and inspect boilers without you knowing about it, or anybody?
No, sir, I wish they would have let me know that there was, there was a mechanical engineer from LAN, we've been requesting this since the beginning of the project, that there be a mechanical, mechanical engineer on site.
Well, I wish they would let you know too, because this bit about, take my word for it, you know, uh, doesn't fly with me.
Yes, sir.
Uh, I think people should report to somebody when they're inside somebody else's building and present themselves, who they are, leave a card or something, to make sure that somebody knows they were there and what they were doing, you know? So, uh, I don't think it's right, and I don't know how you're gonna, uh, how you're gonna represent, if you're gonna accept to pay this bill, if they're billing you, billing us?
Yes, sir, I submitted a letter to, to court, and also to, to, to the county attorney, and also to the, to the court manager, recommending that the bill not be paid, uh, because we were not aware that they were having a mechanical engineer on site. I, I mean, like I said, I wish they would have come by my office, because I had not only one question, but I had a million questions about, you know, the, the project itself, not only because of the boilers, but because of the chillers and other mechanical equipment that's being installed by, by ABM.
Well, I wish they had done the same thing too, Juan, then I wouldn't be asking this type of questions, because this bit about, you know, it's very unprofessional. I mean, I'm sure anybody here that goes to somebody else's building is gonna go present themselves to the reception or somebody, say, I'm so and so, you know, and this is what I'm here to do.
Yes, sir.
And that's very unprofessional on any company's, uh, deal. So, I don't agree with that, and I'm, I don't accept, just take my word for it, you know, we did it and paid for it.
Yes, sir.
So, thank you, Juan.
Yes, sir.
I have a couple of questions, sir.
Commissioner Gonzalez.
Juan, was there any findings in that report from the chemical engineer?
Uh, I know that I reviewed the report, Commissioner, there were some findings about some of the equipment that my staff has, has brought up to, to ABM's attention, but in regards to the boilers themselves, uh, I don't think there was a lot of information regarding that, um, but it was more of the, the piping system and some valves and some similar things that my staff has been talking to me about that needs to be taken care of, um, but, but nothing about, directly about the boilers.
But there were some deficiencies found?
Yes, sir, there were deficiencies found in Samantha Peterson's report.
Mr. Wheaton, may I ask you a question? The, way back then, didn't, I recall, you made a statement, that's what I understand, about saying that we bought, or y'all bought the wrong boilers?
The boiler, it's kinda like buying a Chevy, you, you buy it with certain accessories and that type of thing on it and size of engine, so we got the right Chevy, but we got the wrong engine and the wrong accessories, and we need to correct that. So, it's not the wrong boiler per se, but it's got the wrong accessories on it, they're going through the process, changing out the, the pressure controllers and the pressure sensors, that's already been done, uh, so they have to do the pressure relief valve, it's already been reduced from the hundred and fifty to thirty, so it needs to go to the fifteen, so that's the modification. The boiler frame itself, the style of boiler is, is all as specified.
Is that the reason why ABM changed the tags on the boiler?
You have to change the tag on the boiler by law to meet ASME code if you modify the boiler and you have to recertify it, that's why you change the tags. The boiler manufacturer has to change the tags, and they're the ones that did it.
They will, and the manufacturer came down and do it?
Yes.
They came down and did that?
The manufacturer had a representative or themselves that came down and did the modifications to the boilers, yes.
Okay.
And they will have to, again, to change it to a fifteen PSI relief system, and recertify it, and re-tag it again.
Okay, is that something that's going probably through Public Works Office when they do that?
They're, they'll be aware of it, I'm sure, and I'm, we'll be making them informed, obviously, they'll be there for a little while, so they'll know that it's happening, and they'll be informed that they're doing the work.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Are those all your questions?
That's it.
Okay, I'm gonna bring back ABM, who wants to make some comments, and then I'm gonna ask a few things for clarification, so that we can understand where we are.
Thank you, Judge, just wanted to go back to Commissioner Chesney, some of the statements that were discussed about what happens after the sixty days?
Yes, go ahead.
Um, during the meeting that we had with the state, you know, there was speculation here that says after sixty days, it goes to a red tag, but the reason of the sixty days is when we spoke about the thirty to fifteen PSI, we talked about, you know, there's a P seven form that needs to be updated with the state, we need to go through with the manufacturer, which would be with Bryant, you know, to get the certification of the thirty to fifteen. We get the right valve, we have to order the valves, so at that time, the chief inspector, which is Mr. Trout, along with Mr. Stanford, who is with the state, Mr. Trout indicated, at this time, let's provide sixty days, due to lead times for equipment and such, and for ABM to stay in contact with Mr. Stanford, so we can keep him abreast of what the progress is. During that call, he did indicate, you know, we felt at that time, the sixty days was sufficient time, he indicated to, you know, get back, keep in touch with the state, if they need to evaluate that, to do an extension due to lead times, we would discuss that, but the sixty days wasn't an automatic, red tag was not even discussed during the phone call. I just wanted to clarify that, just as a statement. Uh, the other thing I just wanted to clarify was, as far as payments, you know, the county has their decision of what they want to do, any payments that are invoicing that is submitted by ABM is progress billing, that progress is based on work that's completed to date. So, if there is a discrepancy or anything, that's why it goes through with LAN, through the county, to be reviewed, um, you know, if the county's gonna make a decision just to stop all payments, you're stopping payments based on work that has progressed and completed, uh, and it's not just stopping payments, so that'll be something that we will discuss at a later date, depending on what the position in the county is.
So, thank you for your statements. So, the big questions that, I guess, still need, in my mind, in summary, since we've heard from at least four different individuals, and there's been, again, a lot of questions, and it seems that even when we hear the answers, somehow there's still more questions. So, I'm going to try to create a summary here, because it's, it's obviously very important. Number one, um, the most important is that there was a comment made that the state deems these boilers unsafe. Is that your, do you agree with that statement, that they are unsafe? Because it seems to me if the state thought they were unsafe, they would do something about it right now. Are they asking you to take it from thirty to fifteen, and that is the request of the state, so that it can be forty times safer, as Mr. Wheaton said?
It was a group discussion of the thirty to the fifteen, uh, so that if the operating temperature was set at such, that we would not exceed the fifteen PSI. So, as a group, we discussed and said, we, based on our team also, that we were gonna change it from thirty to fifteen.
Okay.
The four-to-one ratio that Mr. Wheaton is discussing, that's a safety factor, whether it's the way the boilers are, correct? It's not just the fifteen?
ASME.
Right. So, the bottom line then is that the boilers, if you bring them to fifteen PSI, will satisfy what I call the team, and the team is ABM, Govind, LAN is the program manager here, and Public Works, everybody agrees, oh, and the state, everybody agrees that if you bring it to fifteen PSI, and again, that's not a ma, that's not a function of the equipment, that's just a function of how you set the equipment. Is that correct?
Correct. With, with the relief valve, the most that would go up to would be thirty PSI.
Right, so these boilers, and then if you don't mind, let me come in, because all of this has happened, Govind, would you mind coming in? Do you concur with that, that if you, that these boilers, in their current state, you all have made a team decision to take them, if you will, throttle that relief valve down to fifteen PSI, and that will meet with everybody's satisfaction?
If manufacturer comes up and uses that fifteen pound, and all the other things that has to bring it down, just only changing the relief valve alone to fifteen pound is not going to work.
Correct.
So, if you take the whole, so, let me, let me go back, everybody's just concentrating on boilers, that, that boiler is a hundred and fifty pound boiler, and so you read, need only twelve or fifteen pound pressure requirement, so the boiler is six-hundred times safer. I hundred percent agree, but nobody's looking at the overall total system, that system is designed for fifteen pounds or less pressure operation.
Mm-huh.
That is where the safety issue comes up in the picture.
Right, but...
So, if, if all of that is reduced down to fifteen...
Then we're good.
Then, once the certification is done, everybody is agreed upon, which I think I would be part of it, hopefully, then we would come out and say at that point, rightfully, that yes, your system is safe at that point.
Okay.
I have a question, Judge.
So, that, as soon as I'm finished, thank you.
Okay.
So, so that is your recommendation, so that we can all, because I think what the court wants to hear is that there is a, not just a team approach, but a consensus, that that's, that's where you're headed, that you're moving toward, you have sixty days to make this modification, manufacturer comes in, just like the manufacturer did before, and does that certification. We're all in agreement that that's what the plan is, is that correct?
That's the plan. We gotta go see how it works, and I'm going to...
Right, but we have...
Make one other statement that ABM made, I was asked the question, and I gave my experience, that if state or city or any other jurisdiction, authoritative jurisdiction gives you a timeline to finish in certain time...
I agree.
And if they don't finish it, you automatically get the red tag, unless you go back and try to help or ask them to give you another extension. So, I'm just wanting to make clarification.
You'll only get no disagreement here.
I just wanted to make it clear.
You're basing that on your, on your experience, there's nothing wrong with that, all we're saying is, is that, all we're saying is, do we have a plan? And the answer is, the team in this courtroom does not disagree with each other, there is a plan, and once that plan gets executed, it sounds like that is, as they say, step one into finishing these boilers.
That's correct.
Okay, second...
Now, may I ask a question? Okay.
No? Second, okay, Mr. Breslin, go ahead.
Just to, to clarity, and I agree with what, what he indicated, the red tag is correct. If, if everybody just stopped, stopped in their tracks, didn't do anything, in sixty days or sooner, a red tag would take place. But the discussion that was taking place was, we'll provide sixty days, we all know as an industry standard, if you don't do anything, you would have a red tag, but it was providing sixty days due to lead times and the process of getting all the certifications to provide to all the team members.
Correct.
At that time, we would keep updates with the state, if that needed to be elongated due to lead times, they didn't seem to be that sixty was a cutoff, let's talk and see what we need to do, go through, so that, I, we're on the same page.
That's fair, that's fair. Okay, so I think we've kind of achieved that piece of it. The second piece is that it was in JP's announcements, as they say, from the PowerPoint, and Commissioner Hernandez also asked you, but I want us to be very clear, JP, that, that, the testing that was done has indicated that our pipes are intact and okay, so any of this discussion about rattling and bursting and is, is not factual. This, this testing, that everybody, the team, I'm gonna go back to the team, the team agrees that the testing was performed, no one's disagreeing that they didn't really come, and that they really did perform this test, and the report shows that the pipes are indeed intact. And again, that's very helpful, because that would be very concerning if we had to go replace pipes.
You're correct on all those statements, Judge, and in your package of information that we furnished to you, you can find a copy of that report, which shows the wall thicknesses all in compliance with normal standards, as Ron Wheaton has mentioned to you.
Right, okay, and then there's this, the last thing was this idea of, you know, we ordered the wrong boilers. And Ron, you have tried your best in engineering lingo to explain that you ordered the right boiler, but there are certain accessories, that's the word you used, accessories, that need to be, um, modified, is that, because here's the problem, you get soundbites here, and then those soundbites translate into, um, statements that quite frankly, I get worried about, and so what I want to know is, do we have a plan? And it sounds like we do, and it sounds like a very good one, if everybody does their part, and, but going back to the beginning, which is, these accessories, are you inside this plan satisfied, or do you need more time to get satisfied that everything is done correctly, and again, I'm gonna use the word you used, in terms of the accoutrements, right? The accessories? I changed the word on you, I like it better.
So, the accoutrements?
Mm-huh.
So, the, we're still waiting on some information on the accoutrements, so we would be able to review those, um, and, and obviously, review the submittal process, the, the method of installation of the relief valves and things of that nature. So, it's an ongoing process, it's moving forward, but we will be involved with it, and I think there's a, a hundred percent chance that everybody will be put, able to put that together as a team and agree on it.
Great, okay, so we're gonna go back, Commissioner Hernandez has a question, and we'll make some, we'll try to get out of here, uh, by two o'clock, but Commissioner Hernandez has a question or a comment.
Thank you, Judge, and the only reason I'm asking this question is because I do have the best interest of the county, okay? So, the gentleman from ABM, you, you were talking about when you spoke on the phone with the, the state inspector, and there was never any mention of a red tagging? Was it ever brought up?
Thank you.
Uh, was this during your sixty-day allowance, or was it after your sixty days?
Uh, the discussion that I'm referencing was the meeting that took place on November fifteenth, that included the county, LAN, engineers, along with ABM, and the mechanical engineers, and Govind as well.
But the discussion, did it, did you still, did you still have sixty days, or were your sixty days already, uh, gone?
No, we're, we're in the sixty days now, we were still within the, we were still within the first thirty days, and that's why we set up a phone call with the state and all the parties to discuss, uh, and then we discussed what the plan was to move forward, and at that time, we talked about what the steps would be with certification from the boiler manufacturer, ordering of the proper relief valves, submitting of documentation to the state, and at that time, that's when Mr. Trout indicated, I'm gonna be granting sixty days of an extension.
Okay, and that sixty-day extension still exists?
Yes, and I think, um, JP, I, I have January twenty-third, yeah?
January twenty-third.
Yeah. Yeah, January 23rd is what the 60-day timeline would be at.
Okay, I'm still concerned, I'm worried about those pipes that y'all said you all did all these inspections on. Did anybody, whoever did the inspection, that third company, did they give you, they're still good for a year, they're still good for six months or? So we'll never know if they will bust and when they will bust.
Yeah, I don't think you, the statement they'll provide is what the integrity of what the piping thickness is today. They do not have a crystal ball as to how systems are going to be and how things get deteriorated in a short period or long period. But sitting here today, the thickness that is there is in good shape.
One, are those the original piping from the boilers? Mr. Wheaton, Mr. Wheaton is nodding yes.
Yeah, they, all indications are they match the original plans. They've never been changed. They would be assumed to be the original piping system that was installed in the building.
And this other consultant that came in and took all those inspections, did they tell you, well, they're still good for another 10, 20, 30 years?
They're not going to tell you that. What you can do, once you get the report from them, is look at it. If it says the pipe thickness was originally three eighths of an inch, for example, and you still have at least a quarter inch left and you've used it for 40 years and you're good at another eighth inch loss, then you should be good for another 40 years. So you can make that calculation. I don't know that anybody's going to make that calculation for you, but you can look at it.
Then being, something that what you just mentioned, them being the consultants, you know, when you hire them and to do this, there, I guess you would get, take it as them being your consultant, I would think they would at least advise you, look, this is how thick they are. They can expect to, for them to last another 20, 30 years?
Yeah, that's something that ABM will need to discuss with them, see if they can give you that report. We're not directly involved with that, but you could estimate it as I indicated to you.
Does ABM have any plans to discuss those?
We can discuss it with the engineer and the party that did the scanning. I can probably tell you, any kind of statement that's going to come is going to have a list of qualifications, but they cannot predict how the county is going to move forward from this day beyond. So there'll be a list of qualifications as to, it could be good probably for X years based on X, Y, and Z. But I'll be more than happy to reach out to see if we could get their interpretation of where the piping stands today, assuming that the piping was what was installed, say, 40 years ago and what they think is what could happen over the next 40, based on past experience.
Mr. Govind, Juan, would you say, if you're going to replace those boilers, would you say it's safer to replace everything? Pipes and all?
Can you repeat that question again, Commissioner?
I'm saying, when you replace the boilers.
Yes, sir.
Just like somebody said analogy about a car, Chevy and all this.
Yes, sir.
When you replace a water pump in your car, you got to replace the gaskets, right? You don't replace, leave the same gaskets.
You replace the whole system.
That's right. So I'm asking, you replaced the boiler, wouldn't it have been safer to think that might as well change the whole piping? I don't know if that was included on the contract or not on the scope of work or what?
My understanding, Commissioner, is that it wasn't part of the scope of work. There was only a certain limited amount of piping that was part of the scope of work. And I want to go back to the Ford and the Chevy and this other stuff. And let me go back to that part. And I think, I think we're kind of missing the point here. I think if you buy a 650 horsepower motor and you put it in your car, right? And I want to say cars because I want to offend anybody. But you put a 650 pound horsepower motor and now you got to treat that 650 horsepower motor to 250 horsepower motor, what's the efficiency of that motor? And that's the question that I got.
That's like everything is, you got to, if you're going to be racing, you got to change the rear end and to hold up to the speed you're going to go to. But anyway, that's, I'm just concerned about the piping and if it's going to hold on and for how long.
I believe I may have the proper information here, but we can go back and double check. The, as Juan indicated, the scope of work was not to replace the piping. However, I believe during the development of the project, which was presented to the county, there was condensate piping, I believe, which may have been presented with a option, which had a cost related to it. At that time, the county did not accept to change that piping. But again, I, I'm going based on what I've heard. I would have to verify exactly what was presented to the county during the development time.
I wasn't here when you all, you all did the assessments to the buildings, right?
ABM did, yes.
Yes.
I was not personally here.
But ABM did the assessment to all the buildings, what type of work needed to be done or what they were recommending?
Correct.
And they didn't recommend the piping then?
As I indicated, my understanding is that, I don't know if it was all piping or condensate piping, which was discussed along with the price, but the county did not elect to take that measure to be incorporated into the actual contract scope of work.
Mr. Govind, are you content with the explanations that we're getting about the piping?
Well, I was not involved in the contract side, so I don't know what was discussed between the ABM, Ron Wheaton, or the Public Works.
Are you talking about the testing, though? Are you asking him if he's content with the testing?
To replace the piping, should have been, if ABM did the assessments to, about the work should be going on, the county, I'm just wondering why they didn't mention the piping in the assessment?
I think if I understand your question correctly, is when the original contract or the original inspection probably was done, and again, my answer is going to be, because not being part of it at that time on the contract, I can't really truly answer the question why it was decided or not decided to change the piping within the, within the scope limit of the project.
Well, then let me ask you this way. You and your profession, for as long as you've been in your profession, would you have changed the piping?
I would have done the thorough inspection of the, of the system and depending on what the system results would come, inspection results would come out, then I would have made the decision whether I need to change it or I don't need to change it. I cannot answer truly whether I would just blanket change it or not.
I understand, thank you. Sure.
Yeah, and just to kind of answer, going back to that 650, 650 horsepower motor, if the 250 horsepower motor was bought originally, then you wouldn't have to be messing with the piping system and controls and all that stuff because if it would have been bought correctly initially, then you wouldn't have to be messing with the rest of the stuff.
Yeah, something, something's going to affect something else.
Yes, sir, we wouldn't have to be going through this process.
The integrity has been tested of the pipe and the pipe is intact and has integrity. So all these hypotheticals are very interesting, but what is important, the question that was asked, is that a independent engineer has looked at it and they are performing the tests that are standard tests and that they have shown that the pipe is intact. That's my, that was the question that, and it's been answered and so all of those other issues seem to be, as they say, Monday morning quarterback. The real concern is, is the pipe has, does the pipe have integrity? Is it intact? And the answer from your report is that it is.
Yeah, I don't know.
Judge, we do have the best interest of the county here, okay? I'm not advocating for anybody else or what, but I do have the best interest of the county. Make sure that our money's spent well and everything that's being done is safe for employees and the people to come to the courthouse.
If I can provide a different way of looking at the boilers. Look at it as an item that you buy with different trim packages, okay? The boiler that was specified was a Bryant model number RV Romeo Victor 700. That model is the same model that's installed, the Bryant RV 700. So the unit itself, as Mr. Wheaton indicated, the body itself is the boiler. The trim, call it the trim package, trim level that came with it, at that time, the package came with 150 PSI relief valve. During startup, prior to operation, during the startup, it was noticed with the relief valve at 150 along with the control, internal control panel, the way that trim package came. It was determined at that time that we needed to change the control panel and then in turn, they did change the relief valve down to 30, 30 PSI. So at this time, going through further review and with the discussions that were made that the existing system was operated or designed for 15 PSI. We know that piping is designed for more than 15. We looked as a team and said, what we'll do is we'll take 30 down to 15. And again, look at it as the trim package. We're not talking motors and horsepowers, but we've taken a boiler system that came with a different trim package, controls relief valve, bringing it back down to 15. That will be designed, documented by the boiler manufacturer along with creating the new ASME stamp that will go back on the boiler that represents what the exact equipment is. That's the process that's taking place. We don't have something that was this, this large that was designed and this big that was delivered. It's the trim package that came with the equipment. I'll keep it as simple as that. I don't know if I'm taking out of hand, Ron, but that's.
Okay, thank you. All right, well, we sort of extended the court to the limit here. And if there are no further questions, we will just move on and we stand adjourned at 2:03 PM.
Go ahead.
Is, is there, is it related to what we were just talking about? Okay, can you, can you be brief?
I've been here more than 20 years. So the testing on the piping, I haven't seen the results, but after I see the results, I can point out about areas of, I know that's damaged and I thought it was going to get replaced with this project. Just to let you know, we're going to come back and ask for money.
Okay, you can deal, you can report that to Public Works, who you work for, and share that with him and then he can share that with the court.
It's okay, thank you for your information, Bobby, appreciate it.
Thank you. All right. 2:03 PM, this is the season to say Merry Christmas, but I cannot tell you how much it means to me just to say the word hallelujah. We are done for today and as they say, this has been a a very interesting meeting and it really sums up exactly what, what really government is to do and not to do. And because we missed the most important piece of it, which was the end of the year FEMA closeout report, I'm going to ask Iday to maybe have a briefing with each of you so that you can have it because it's not something that you can just read, I think, and you've got to be able to ask questions. So we'll make certain that Iday gets fully versed and then they can, she can maybe verse you. And with that, we're wishing everybody happy holidays, Merry Christmas, and we're off to new adventures. It is 2:05 PM, we're adjourned.